Good morning. Want to welcome all of you to the Tuesday, December 6th, 2022 meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. Want to thank those who've joined us in chambers and those that will be joining us remotely as well. And I know we have a pretty full agenda today, so we'll see some folks, I'm sure, in the afternoon as well. All right. With that, I'm going to turn to our clerk, Florence Evans, Flo Evans, to call the rule, make some announcements. We'll do the Pledge of Allegiance, and then we'll get rolling.
Good morning. Supervisor Serna?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Desmond Frost?
Here.
Natoli?
Here.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, December 9th, at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. The Board of Supervisors fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use of courteous language. The Board does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, gestures, or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant. In compliance with the directives of the county, state, and Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, this meeting will be livestreamed and open to public attendance pursuant to health and safety guidelines. The practice of social distancing and wearing a face covering mask or shield is recommended for the health and safety of all persons participating in person during the meeting, although it's not required. Seating is limited and available on a first-come, first-served basis. Members of the public will be given three minutes to make a public comment and are limited to making one comment per agenda item or off-agenda matter. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted or disconnected while making your comment. To make a comment in person, fill out a speaker request form and hand it to Clerk Staff. The chairperson will open public comments for each agenda item or call for off-agenda matters, and when the chairperson calls your name, please come to the podium to make your comment. To make a comment by phone, dial 916-875-2500 and follow the prompts to be placed in queue for a specific agenda item or off-agenda matter. Please refer to the agenda or watch the meeting to follow along to determine when is the best time to call to be placed in queue to make your comment. Clerk Staff will transfer calls into the meeting accordingly. Each agenda item queue will remain open until the public comment period is closed for that specific item. You may be on hold for up to an extended period of time, and your patience is appreciated. You may also send written comments by email to boardclerk@saccounty.gov, and your comment will be routed to the Board and filed in the record. If you need an accommodation pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act or for medical or other reasons, please see Clerk Staff for assistance or contact the Clerk's office at 916-874-5451 or by email at boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding of the meeting procedures.
Thank you, Flo. For Pledge of Allegiance, we have our Sacramento County Assessor in the audience this morning to be doing a presentation later, and I ask Christine if you'd lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you. All right. We do have some folks signed up off-agenda items, and then obviously we'll go into our consent. We have some presentations this morning, and so with that, let me move to our off-agenda speakers. I have Ryan Harris, followed by Chuck Shaw, followed by Sharon Duchessy and Gigi Dagari. So with that, Mr. Harris, good morning.
Good morning. Just going to make sure you guys did your job. I'm going to call the attendance line or the line for public comment.
I'm going to start in just a minute. Put his phone down. Okay.
You have reached the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors' Public Comment Line. There are seventy-nine items on the agenda. Please enter the agenda item number on which you would like to comment, then press pound.
So I want to comment on off-agenda.
Please enter the agenda item between zero and...
Seventy-nine.
Between zero and seventy-nine. Start at zero.
You entered an invalid agenda item number. Agenda item numbers are between one and...
Seventy-nine.
So now the agenda item numbers are now between one and not zero.
Item on the agenda.
So I guess I'll try one.
Enter the agenda item number on which you would like to comment, then press pound. When the public comment period begins, you'll be transferred into the live meeting.
So I have to press zero, then I have to press one. It doesn't tell me what to do like it did before. It doesn't instruct what to do if I want to talk off-agenda. Get that off of there. So you guys semi-fixed it, I guess. Almost got there. Nonetheless, I'm going to play this video as I mentioned, there was an officer that was telling me to smoke around kids. I'd like to thank the individual that sent me this screen footage. Good morning. So today I'm going to apply for welfare. Waiting for it to open.
No ACs, right?
Yeah.
What's up? What are you doing out here?
Oh, I'm going to be applying for welfare.
Oh, okay.
But a lot of times, they swarm into a statement, and he lied, which is perjury.
Right. So you're just here to...
I'll be applying for food stamps.
Oh, okay.
But I can't smoke inside, right?
Negative.
All right. So...
You can use the patio if you want, or you can smoke out.
I'll smoke out here.
So you're going to apply for benefits? Is that what you said?
Yeah, I got to.
Okay. You're at the wrong door. You didn't snap it.
Yeah, but I want to distance people from the smell of the vapors. I saw children over there earlier.
Oh, okay. Yeah, there is a long line there.
Yeah.
Okay. Are we good then?
Yeah, I'm fine.
All right.
Thanks for checking on me. That's the officer. No, I'll smoke out here.
So you're going to apply for benefits? Is that what you said?
Yeah, I got to.
Okay. Well, you're at the wrong door. You didn't snap it.
Yeah, but I want to distance people from the smell of the vapors. I saw children over there earlier.
Oh, okay. Yeah, there is a long line there.
Yeah, so I had to repeat there at the end, so that way you're aware that the officer did acknowledge that there are children there, yet he wanted me to. And since I refused to give children cigarettes or smoke around children or condone things that may involve that, I brought these cigarettes here for you guys to go ahead and distribute them how you will. The reason that I also bring this up and that it's so important to me is that when I started with the county, two individuals encouraged me to bring them weed in ecstasy. I was only 19 at the time, and they were well above me, well older than me. And I guess since I only get three minutes to talk about these very important issues and you refuse to talk about me with me outside of here, I'll have to share them next time. For the individuals that are here for their union, make sure the union does the right thing. We need a union for the union, and I'll also be sharing next time how the union said that we'll go to a meeting and lied to me. I have it all in emails. But again, I really wish you guys would talk to me more than these three minutes that you allow, especially given, Dawn, in a past meeting, you had said that the death threats that I received were very important, yet when have you talked to me about them? Nonetheless, to people at home, there are no actual cigarettes in there because I would not condone that, but you guys could keep those as a reminder.
All right. Thank you, Ryan. Okay. Maybe someone can get the... Somebody get the boxes off of the dais there, the podium, please? Yeah, thanks, dude. That's all right. Thanks, dude. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Harris. Next, Mr. Shaw. Chuck?
Good morning. Looking pretty debonair there with your beard and all, so getting recognized you there from you.
Thank you. An interesting act to follow.
Yeah.
Chairman Natoli?
Good morning, Chuck.
Honorable Supervisors, good morning.
Good morning.
Chairman, pardon me. Supervisor Serna, very good to see you. And Kennedy, Supervisor Frost, my supervisor where I reside, and Supervisor Desmond, we have not met, but I have spent a lot of time in your office with your prior supervisor, Peters, on a small redevelopment project known as How About Arden? But Dawn, today, this is about you. I did not have an opportunity to make the ranch on luncheon due to a conflict, and I just had to take a moment for the two and a half decades that we and our organization have worked together. Thank you for your service, one. I made comment publicly through the good Lord knows how many community meetings that we have attended, that I as a project applicant, you as supervisor, your accessibility to your constituents, your service to your constituents, and albeit sometimes the task that you handed us to perform, to make applications work, sometimes were created opportunities. Nonetheless, it was clearly understood it was always for the benefit of your constituents and the constituents of the 5th District. Dawn, it's been a pleasure. I wish you nothing but great health, great happiness. Perhaps I could have made an appointment to come to the Horseshoe, but I figured this was convenient. Of course, I picked a nice, quiet day on the agenda for that opportunity. But sir, it has been a pleasure. And for those of you on the dais who will miss the benefits of Supervisor Natoli, I did have the opportunity to work with his endorsed candidate, Patrick Hume, from the day he was a planning commissioner as a newly formed city of Elk Grove. I believe you'll find him to have excellent temperament and an ear, so you can continue to do the good work that created redevelopment projects like How About Arden and other opportunities. Dawn, again, thank you. It has been a pleasure.
Well, thank you, Chuck. And I would back at you. Certainly having worked with you, you were always very straightforward and certainly, I think, in the conversations, whether regarding a particular project or some ideas that you and the firms that you were associated with were bringing forward, you were, again, always very respectful, sort of respectful of staff, and I really appreciate it, certainly appreciated your friendship over the years. And I haven't seen you for a while. As I said, I didn't even recognize you this morning with the, you know, the addition of the beard. But again, thank you, Chuck. I think, again, you've been successful in your own right on behalf of those that you've, you know, worked for, your clients, because, again, you've taken the approach to, I think, you know, listen to not just a member of the Board of Supervisors, but certainly to our staff and to try to find ways to move projects forward. So I really appreciate it. Thank you for, you know, making the effort to come down here this morning, Chuck. I appreciate it, and I'm sure our paths will cross again in the future.
You're being semi-retired as an operating officer. I can tell you that it's more fun when you get to pick and choose your opportunities. I will say that.
Very good.
But you have to forgive me, and this board, I will ask one indulgence. The How About Arden Redevelopment Project would not have happened without the efforts of your then Economic Development Director, now Community Development Director, Troy Gibbons. And I thank you for his appointment as Community Development Director. I think it bodes well for what the county will do in future development. Thank you again.
Great. Thanks, Chuck. We'll pass that on. Troy, I don't know if he's in the audience this morning. Oh, yeah, yeah, there he is, right up there. So he heard you personally. So again, thank you, Chuck, for coming down this morning and making those very kind comments. Okay. All right. Next, we have Sharon. Good morning, Sharon.
Yes, hi. Thank you very much for allowing us to speak today. My name is Sharon Duchessy. I am an IHSS provider, and I'm part of the Union for SEIU 2015. Previously, before I became a provider, I had to make the hard decision whether or not to continue working in the career I was working or taking care of my significant other who had a serious disability. And I made the decision to stay with him and to take care of him. And that was a pretty big pay cut because I was making $6,000 a month, and now I'm making just over $1,000 a month. We are currently in bargaining with the county, and I want to tell you guys how important our contract is with you guys because you guys are the ones that determine how much we make and any benefits that we're able to get. To tell you a little bit about what we do, we help prevent our clients, our recipients, from going to the ER. We help keep them safe. We help keep them happy at home. These are all things that they want to do. Unfortunately, data shows that when a person with disabilities or elderly are put into a facility, their lifespan dramatically decreases. And I can speak to that from personal experience because I had a previous client that passed away about five years ago. She was given one year to live. Her daughter, who was the primary caregiver, was able to allow her to live for another eight years. And that, to me, was significant because her mom was happy, she was healthy, and she was safe. She had the attention that she needed. We save the county and the state hundreds of millions of dollars by what we do because we prevent them to go to facilities, which are significantly more than what we're paid. If my client went to a facility, it would be anywhere from $5,000 to $10,000 a month to have them stay there, to have him stay there. And as I said before, I don't get paid that much, and I do a lot. I have wiped adult bottoms. I have changed feeding tubes. I have changed... I've helped with people who had surgeries and they had to empty their colostomy bags or anything like that. These are things that we do. We're not trained to do it. We're forced to train ourselves to do it, and this is how important that we are. We bring money into our county. We're paid by the county, state, and a federal level, but our funds stay in the county that we live. What I'm asking you guys to do is to take the IHSS program seriously during our bargaining session, and please give us a livable wage so that we're able to maintain the recipients that we have because unfortunately, there are recipients out there that do not have providers because we're not getting paid enough to do with what we do. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Sharon. Thanks for sharing the information this morning and certainly for what you do to, you know, your humanity and helping others and obviously, you know, the points you make here today on behalf of you and your fellow members of the SEIU. Thanks. Thank you. Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, Patrick, go ahead. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Chair. Ms. Edwards, without going too much into detail on this, it comes up again and again and again, and to me, as far as I can see, the flawed part of our system with IHSS is the lack of training, and I'd like to have that conversation. You know, I've heard it again and again, and I mean, even the basic fundamentals of how to give proper injections, and we talked about colostomy bags. Ma'am, that's not necessary. It's not necessary. But I would like to have that discussion outside of the bargaining realm because I think it's a public policy issue that we should address.
Thank you. Yes.
Yep. Boy, well made, Patrick. Thanks. Okay, Gigi.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning. Good night. Can I have the water, please? Good morning, Your Honor.
Yep.
My name is Gigi Dagari. I'm IHSS care provider. Also, I'm the SEIU member. I take care of my son who's special need, meaning he's 24/7 around the clock. I'm the caregiver. I do the CNA job because I have to cook, I have to clean after him. I have to... First of all, he's nonverbal, so the communication is so difficult that I have to thank for him to understand what he need. And he's hyper, he run away all the time. The Elk Grove Police have his record. He even wear a bracelet for them to find him when he run away. So he's 24/7 around the clock with lot of stress, which makes me be with him all the time. I have to give up my business. I used to have a shop, a breading shop. I used to make $1,000 or up to $2,000 a day. But now, I have to give up everything to be with my son. As a single mother, I have no help, and I have to be with my son. I cannot go somewhere to do whatever I want to do. I shut down my life for my son because he need me. That's my... That's a mother heart talking. But now, the living cost becomes so expensive in California. Sacramento is... Before Sacramento was good, but now even the apartment I live is so expensive. Every month, I got charged, extra charge, because I cannot pay the whole money on the time, you know? The apartment become expensive, you cannot go anywhere. Even the low income, everything is expensive. To secure my son, I had to live in a good neighborhood so nothing will happen to him. But now, what are we doing? We don't even have a good living cost for us to be able to take care of our client like... And I cannot go to do another job. I have to stick with my son. I have to be there for him 24/7 around the clock, even when he goes to school. Usually, they always call Elijah runaway, Elijah this, Elijah so. It's too much. And what I'm asking here is that our contract expire. If we can have more raise so we can be able to have a living cost like... For example, I saw a homeless today on the street where I parked my car because of living cost. I know that people live on the street. When I wanted to pay for my mirror, the dog come out of the thing to attack me, meaning they think it's bad, and we need help. So we don't want to be on the street with our client. Please think about the IHSS care provider and give us the raise we need so we can be able to take care of our client and keep them safe. Thank you. God bless you.
Thank you, Ms. Dagari. Appreciate your comments. Okay. Was there anybody else from IHSS? I just had just Gigi and Sharon signed up. I see others, and they're here in the audience with them. All right. I don't have anybody off-agenda. Do we have some folks on the phone?
We have one caller.
Okay, we'll take the caller.
Yeah, please transfer the call. Please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Good morning, Chair Natoli and Board of Supervisors. My name is Darren Gale, and I apologize I'm unable to be there, but...
Hi, Darren. Good morning.
Hey, good morning, Chair Natoli. Just wanted to express my appreciation to Chair Natoli for all that he's done throughout the years for his district. As I've worked in the Sacramento region, I've been blessed to be led and mentored by Chair Natoli. Specifically, when he was Chair of the STA, the county renewed Measure A half-cent transportation sales tax, and I was able to work closely with Chair Natoli during that time, and obviously much has been built as a result of that. Additionally, professionally, I serve as Assistant City Manager of the City of Brownwood in the Bay Area, and definitely one of the reasons why we're on that, where I am today professionally, is as a result of the leadership and guidance of people like Chair Natoli and other folks throughout the Sacramento region. But I wanted to take the opportunity to publicly thank Chair Natoli and wish him well on his retirement, as he's done so much for South Sacramento County and the entire county as a whole. So thank you, Chair Natoli.
Well, thank you, Darren. Appreciate your friendship. I know we've had a chance over the years, both professionally but certainly offline to visit, and appreciated certainly followed your career a bit, career in public service, and it's very kind of you to call in this morning and to offer those comments, and I hope you and your family are doing well, and I'm sure Brent was in good hands with you and your service. So thanks again, Darren, and I really appreciate you calling in and hope to see you soon. Thanks. Okay. Very good.
And that concludes your public comments.
Okay. I did have a request. I don't know if she's in the audience. Maggie Schubert wanted to address the board. Is Maggie in the audience or out in the foyer? Okay. If she arrives, we'll certainly allow... So well, she made a request through Supervisor Kennedy's office, and we're more than happy to avail her of some time to address the board. But all right, that's our off-agenda items. Anyone else that wanted to talk about something that's not on the agenda? Otherwise, we're going to go into our consent calendar, and then we have some presentations and take some board member comments and questions on items. So again, thanks to our callers and thanks to all our presenters this morning. So, okay.
Thank you, Chair, for the accommodation.
You bet. I got Sharon. We'll hold it if you see her come in or whatever, or she... We'll make sure. Thanks. Okay. Flo, back to you.
All right. For your consent matters, items 2 through 56, I have a couple of notes. Item 5, you're adopting an ordinance adding a new chapter 2.17 and amending various sections of Sacramento County Code related to the creation of the Department of Homeless Services and Housing, and you waive reading on this November 15th. For item 16, you're also adopting an ordinance to establish Juneteenth as a county holiday by amending Chapter 2.78.710 of the Sacramento County Code, and you waive reading on this on October 25th. For item 26, you are adopting... This is the Housing Trust Fund Ordinance. You're adopting an ordinance of the Sacramento County Code amending Section 16.89.500 relating to applicability of the housing fee requirement, and the environmental determination is not applicable. You waive reading on this on November 15th. That's all that I have.
Okay. Thank you, Flo. Board members, I have Supervisor Serna in the queue and others, if you wish. Phil?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to speak to item 16.
Okay. Let me pull that up for you, Mr. Serna. Oh, I just read that one. This is the ordinance establishing Juneteenth as the county holiday.
Great. Yeah, thank you. While I understand why this is on the consent calendar, I do think it bears some separate mention, and that's why I wanted to pull it off just to do exactly that. For those that perhaps are watching or don't know, this is to finally establish Juneteenth as a county holiday. And as the supervisor who led the effort to establish our last net new holiday, the Caesar Chavez Holiday that we celebrate every March 31st, I just wanted to underscore the, I think, the import of this particular additional holiday. If I have my history correct, I believe this is... Juneteenth is a celebration of African-Americans following the Civil War that were in Texas that finally learned of the Emancipation Proclamation. So it is a holiday that I think is not just important from the standpoint of giving our employees time off, but one that I think will deserve, as we move into the future and celebrate it, a great deal of reflection. And I think this, while it's on consent, really deserves to be emphasized today, and so I wanted to make sure that that occurred. I don't know if others have thoughts, but thank you, Chair, for the time.
Very good. Thank you, Phil, for pointing that out. It was an important point of reference. So Supervisor Frost, did you want to follow?
I just wanted to add to what Supervisor Serna said. I agree, and I want to congratulate all the community members who, over time, have been advocating for Juneteenth as a holiday. It was the Pan-Africans and our Black brothers and sisters who actually helped create the flag and carry the flag in the revolt to advocate for California to be accepted into the nation. And this is something that I know the Sacramento Historical Society and Folsom Historical Society have been working on for a long time, so I wanted to thank them for all their efforts and congratulate them because they got what they wanted. We have a new holiday, so thank you.
Great. Thank you, Sue. All right. Other items on the agenda, colleagues? I had a couple I wanted to speak to, but I don't see any others in the queue, and I don't have anybody sign up. Anyone wanting to speak to item on the consent calendar, please get a request in. And do you have folks on the phone on consent?
I have my mic. We do not.
Okay. All right. So if you could, I'd like to call out item number nine, if you could read that into record, please.
Yeah. Give me one second. Item nine is the Notice of Intended Public Auction of Tax-Defaulted Property and Resolution Authorizing the Sale at Public Auction of Tax-Defaulted Property.
Great. Thank you. First, I want to just compliment our staff. Over the years, this is an annual effort that comes to this board for approval and then further consideration as the next few months ensue, relates to property taxes and folks being delinquent on them. I wanted, and I want to just thank our staff over the years, the refinement of the package with maps and with the attachments that come in and done by, sorted by district. Likewise, with the attention to folks whose primary residence may be on that list, and I think the additional care and attention that's given to those folks who could be I think the additional care and attention that's given to those folks who could be forced out of their home for non-payment of taxes in a variety of circumstances. And I know over the years, our board has heard from folks from time to time about some of the really, I think, challenging circumstances which they fall. I wanted to just note, I had a chance to speak with our Treasury Tax Secretary, Mr. Lemera, yesterday afternoon, and I brought attention to one particular parcel that I think may have some more information that needs to be attached to it as it relates to easements for, a set aside for environmental purposes down in the Harold area. And they're going, he assured me we'll take a look at that, and I know in my briefing yesterday, Ann and David picked up on that. So, we can certainly leave it on the list for now, but I do think by February, maybe having that, because there are some circumstances that folks actually bought credits for mitigation for Swenson Hawk forage on that property, and it's now up for tax sale. And the county still has some very limited role with regards to verifying that it remains in a state where it still provides that habitat. Secondly, I wanted to call out though, and this is one where it remains on the list, but Mr. Lemera and his staff have been very good with working with a lady in the Gault area who, I won't go into all the detail, but the circumstances by which they've found themselves, she and her family are just pretty awful and very challenging. And I think any one of us, if I went into the detail, would find them likewise with, you know, family illness, family accidents, loss of family members, and still trying to maintain the property, and it is their primary residence. And so, the address, certainly Mr. Lemera knows it, and I know we've been in contact with the party recently to see if we can assist, and I've offered that assistance on a couple of different occasions, to help fill out forms and to help find a way for, I think there may be some light at the end of the tunnel where they can redeem the back taxes. But, again, we see this list, and I guess my point being made here, and again, thanking our staff, that oftentimes, properties fall into default for a variety of reasons. But, when it's someone's home and residence, and as messy as some of the circumstances can get with, you know, family relationships and divorces and other transactions, it's really important, I think, that, you know, we do our fiduciary responsibility as it relates to making sure that taxes are only redeemed, but also that we have a heart when we do that. And I think we've certainly demonstrated that in recent years. So, I would just encourage our staff on the, the family in the Gault area, if we continue to work with Mrs. Wininger and her family, it would be very, very helpful. So, and Mr. Lemara is well aware of it. So, those are my comments on that one, Madam Clerk. I also wanted to just, we don't need to call them all out, I wanted to make comments about Items 31 through 38, which are contracts for transportation improvement projects that will be undertaken next construction season. And I wanted to thank, again, thank our Department of Transportation staff and all those that have worked on those projects. Obviously, the work is yet to be completed, but I know putting packages together that will, you know, be bid out to the private sector for that work, complemented obviously to the work that our folks do in the public sector, bless you, is really important. And on the list, there are scattered throughout the county, but in particular, a number of rural roads that are in there. And again, I know Ann, you and your staff certainly have brought forward to this board recommendations to infuse significant general fund dollars to try to do road repairs and help us to catch up with a tremendous backlog. And these contracts are indicative of that commitment certainly by you and your staff, the good work of Department of Transportation and others, and certainly this board's commitment. Over the last three years, we put $62 million, $62.5 million of general fund, complement other sources, gas tax and such. So, I wanted just to note that, and again, look forward to seeing the work next spring. I'll probably have a little more relaxed schedule so I can, you know, stop and compliment our folks for the good work that goes on out there. And lastly, I just wanted to note, and we don't, you don't need to call them, but we have two items on the agenda, the Items 40 and 45, where our elected officers, the Sheriff and District Attorney, are stepping down prior to the official end of their term. And I just wanted to note their service, both our District Attorney, Ann Marie Schubert, and our Sheriff Scott Jones. And by virtue of the actions, we will appoint to fill those vacancies, and they will be sworn into the terms, you know, and Jim Cooper will be sworn in for the full terms come the first of the year. I know there's some formal celebrations of both of those events, but I wanted to note the service of our two elected officers. And we have our third one in the audience who we'll hear from this morning, our Assessor Christina Win, who also was re-elected, so we'll see and hear from her in a moment. And that's all I had, so. Any other comments from board members? Yeah, sure, Sue.
Quick one, it was Item 31. I wanted to say I'm excited about the idea of an incentive for the P-bids, formation of the P-bids, and delighted to support that. Sometimes that's the hardest part, is you're having to put up a lot of money to see if it will work. And so, that, I think that will help.
Yeah, if the board took good action, and certainly Supervisor Desmond will see some money come back to his district funds, because he actually provides them a seed money in advance of the board's action on that. So, again, it's a good thing, and appreciate the effort, but I concur with you, it's important to fund those efforts. So, all right, so with that, then, I don't have anyone else signed to speak? Do you want more checking the phones there?
No, there's no callers.
Okay.
Chair, move approval of consent.
All right. It's moving second to approve the consent calendar, as noted. And if there's nothing further, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, very good. All right, got a couple of presentations. It's a little thinner chambers here this morning, and it just got a little thinner, so tomorrow we'll fill them up, I'm sure, so. Those seats will be a premium tomorrow, so. This afternoon too, probably, yeah. Okay Flo.
All right. Item 57 is the presentation of resolution honoring Leo McFarland on the occasion of his retirement.
Okay, I'm going to ask Leo to please come down to the podium.
Well, it's my distinct honor on behalf of the board this morning, and certainly I know others will offer comments, I trust, to recognize Leo McFarland. And one thing we have in common is that we both have pending retirements and 44 years, so. And so, we started out about the same time in our respective careers, and certainly over the years, I know that people, both board members but certainly staff, have had the opportunity to work with Leo and the organization, Volunteers of America. So, I have a resolution that's been approved, and I'm going to take a little bit of time to kind of walk down through it here. So, this recognizes on this day, Leo, that the board supervisors are pleased to join with your family, friends, and community members from throughout the Sacramento region and beyond, because I know you've done work in Nevada as well, in honoring you as you retire from your service with the Volunteers of America, Northern California Nevada Branch, which obviously we're well-known to this board, but to the broader community as a nonprofit organization, serving some of the most vulnerable and folks that who are most at risk in our community. And as I noted a moment ago, obviously 44 years of very outstanding work. So, this resolution goes on to say that you began your career, as noted, in 1978, helping individuals with substance abuse, disorders, seek out and find shelter and recovery services in the Sacramento community. It was in 1985 that you were appointed to the position of President and Chief Executive Officer. From there forward, devoted your time to building the organization and to fulfilling the pledge which VOA founders made way back in 18 and 96, which was to go wherever we are needed and do whatever comes to hand. And I'm sure that can be updated, but that's, you know, I think you get the idea, and you know, obviously you've lived that for the last 44 years. And you made good on that commitment, certainly working with your Board of Directors and with others during your tenure, and operating and established programs that serve the needs, as I said, of individuals from all walks of life, but many who struggled with poverty, homelessness, mental illness, addiction, and other trauma and diseases. In the same year that you became President and CEO, Volunteers of America branches were delegated the authority to actually form their own Board of Directors, which probably gave you the opportunity then to seek out folks in the local community and to provide the flexibility to tailor community programs and services important to addressing things such as, what does our town need, our community need, how can we help, and what kind of programs can we devise to serve the needs of the people in those communities? I think it's fair to say that, having reflected on those responses to those critical questions and others, the Volunteers of America, under your leadership Leo, has thrived, but also have really made this organization a solid one that has a tremendous place in this community in serving some of the most needy and underserved folks in our community, including military veterans, former foster youth, and families with children. So, over the years, Volunteers of America has operated many different venues, but certainly in the community. Three campuses, and at one time at the major community campus, where you have 14 housing units and buildings and different service structures. You provided those services annually to many hundreds, if not thousands, of clients who have prospered and healed because of the work that you and your organization has done, Leo. And the positive impact that these programs have had on our community and the lives of people of all ages with challenging circumstances are probably, I don't want to be known to you, you know, again, because you've been there on the front lines, you've seen, but there are thousands and thousands and thousands of people who have benefited through VOA's services to this community and your leadership. So, all that being said, that in retirement, I understand you're looking forward to obviously doing more time to your wonderful family, your three loving daughters, and your five very awesome grandchildren, all under the age of nine, so they're certainly going to look forward to spending more time with grandpa. And as I understand it, they actually live fairly close to you, so you get a chance to shuttle them to and from school and other activities, so they get a chance to spend some time with their grandfather, quality time. You also, I understand, plan on spending some time golfing, and then traveling abroad. This year, you got to some pretty faraway places, including, I think, the British Isles and Africa, is that right? Yeah. And that your, part of your work for this upcoming year with the Major League Baseball season is to complete your tour of all the baseball parks. So, that's a pretty fine goal to have. And that you're still, so if anybody's watching Channel 14 this morning, you're keeping an eye out, because you'd like to get some tickets to a Raiders game in their new home in Las Vegas.
That's right.
Okay, all right, so.
That's right.
So, you can call the hotline, and the clerk can refer calls, Mr. McFarland. Anyway, all that being said, we are really pleased this morning to recognize you, Leo, for your year, and appreciate you for your 44 years of dedicated service to the people of Sacramento County and beyond. And we want to commend you for your exceptional contributions to the betterment of the community, this community and its people. And finally, we want to offer our very best wishes to you, Leo, and to the McFarland family for good health, much happiness, and many blessings in the years to come. You've been a blessing to this community, truly. I've enjoyed working with you, as I'm sure my colleagues have and others in the room here this morning. And I know that your successor, I think, has been chosen, I think, Kristi Holderiger?
Yeah, she's actually.
Oh, so Kristi is here?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So, with that, Ann, I would just note that the logo, the Volunteers of America logo is a watermark on the resolution, so nice touch. We're going to put your picture there, but I thought it was a little bit much, so. Anyway, so congratulations.
Maybe the younger.
Yeah, the younger version, so. Anyway, so, yeah, you might make some comments, so it's all yours.
Thank you.
Thank you, Don. This is quite an honor, particularly coming from you. You've been such a tremendous supporter of the folks that we've been serving for many, many, many years, always present, always available to us, and I can't thank you enough. And to be retiring in the same month that you are is just icing on the cake.
You won't see me on the golf course.
No, 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 no.
It's you or me, so.
No, 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 I, thank you board, and we sure can clear out a room though when we get to these sort of presentations, it's kind of nice. Yeah, 44 years with Volunteers of America, before that, I actually worked for the county for a minute. And that contract was taken over by Volunteers of America, which is how I became part of Volunteers of America. But I've got sisters and brothers who have all worked and retired from Sacramento County, and nieces and nephews who currently work within the Sacramento County system. So, as a native Sacramento, I'm very proud of the work that this board and the city have done over the years to serve the community on the whole. And I was just thinking the other day, eight different mayors from the city side I've worked with, and particularly one of my favorites would have been Supervisor Serna's father, Joe, who I knew, and he was just such a sweet man, and I have fond memories of our interactions. And so, you're carrying on that legacy, Phil, and I guess you're a mean musician as well. I've seen you perform too many times. And of course, I've been coming actually into this space for 47 years, attending sessions and listening to hours and hours and hours of testimony, and have seen many, many fine people serving on the county board, but in particular, people who've led the county, the executive administrators of Sacramento County. And I want to tell you, right now, you've probably got one of the best that I've ever encountered in 47 years with Ann. So, Ann, congratulations on your appointment, and you're going to do great work, continue to support the work we do, I know you do. And anyway, this is just a blessing, I want to thank you all very, very much for this recognition. And, yeah, I've got five more ballparks to hit, and then I'm done with that, and hopefully many more opportunities to travel. So, thank you so very much for all you've done. And as Don just mentioned, my replacement is Kristi Holderiger. She has been with Volunteers of America for 31 years, so she well knows all the programs and all the folks we serve, and is very familiar with Ann and her staff to a degree. And she will do wonderful things going forward. So, I'm proud that the organization is left in great hands. So, thank you all very, very much. Thanks.
Yeah, Ms. Chair, if I could, well, first of all, congratulations, Leo, not just to, in your retirement, but on leaving a legacy that I think you can certainly be very proud of, and I think we share in that pride because of, as you may mention, the partnership that Sacramento County has enjoyed with VOA under your leadership for decades. And so, I wanted just to acknowledge though, one particular character trait that I really got to understand early in my tenure on the board, working with you on a number of different initiatives, and that is the fact that you are very candid when it comes to letting us know where the challenges are, but also where opportunities lie in terms of problem-solving. And not everyone's wired that way. Sometimes in our roles as elected people, I think there's a tendency by some to, you know, think that they need to prop us up and agree with most of what we're suggesting. And at times, you've been very blunt, and it's been, it's been of great value, at least to me as one member of the board, to have that touchstone that was willing to be that open about how to do our jobs better and how to be a good partner to VOA. So, just wanted to make sure that the moment didn't pass where I had the opportunity to, again, underscore that particular aspect of your service and our friendship. So, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Ms. Chair. Thank you, and I want to underscore certainly what my colleagues have said, the chair and Supervisor Serna, and Leo, you and I haven't had a chance to interact very much. Kristi, I have met you a few times, but I, one population, Chair Natoli neglected to mention is abused and neglected seniors. And my first interaction with you was, I think, probably back in the late 90s when we were, I was working with Maxine Krugman on setting up the senior safe house, and she dragged me to a breakfast, a VOA breakfast. And before that, I had never had any interaction, but my eyes were opened wide in amazement at the work you do, the population you serve, and the number of people that you help, that you've helped over the course of your distinguishing career, and VOA continues to help. So, thank you very much for your service, and I love your retirement ambition to visit every ballpark. That is mine as well. And I mean, you have five left to go, so maybe Chair Natoli could join you on some of those trips. Just throwing it out there. But, thank you very much, Leo, and congratulations on your retirement.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Really much appreciated.
I just want to say, Leo, I think when I came in, it was later on in your career, and it was at a time when, you know, some major funding had changed, and I want to tell you that I really appreciated your grit and your candor and your, you know, the way you worked through, you know, those times, and your leadership, and all the people that you've surrounded yourself with, they're extraordinary, and I surrounded yourself with, they're extraordinary, and I think it's a reflection of your inspirational leadership, and it shows in all the accomplishments that you've made over time, and I want to wish you all the best in your retirement.
Thank you, thank you. And I love your newsletters that you put out on a regular basis.
Thank you.
They're very helpful.
Thank you.
Microphone would help. You and I have worked together for a long time, and, you know, I really appreciate Supervisor Serna's comments about you, you know, really sticking up for what you believe in. I have a tendency to do that as well, and therefore, you and I have butted heads at times. But what I really appreciate about you is our ability to butt heads and work through the issues and come to a resolution, and your unwavering commitment to the populations that you serve is, always has been, a standout. So I have appreciated that and appreciated you, and I've enjoyed our conversations about grandchildren, and really glad you get to spend more time with yours and look forward to the day I can spend more time with mine.
You got it, I got it. Thank you, thank you. Again, thank you all very much. Appreciate it. Thanks.
Kristi, if you'd like to make a picture, just take that for you if you'd like. Probably the most awkward meeting.
You guys are all color coordinated today. Nice to know.
If I can't, I'm going to miss the hour-long meetings. I mean, you all go to hell, so. More power to you.
Thank you. All right. Congratulations once again, Leo, and thanks for being here this morning. Congratulations to Kristi. I know she'll do a fine job in following in your footsteps, so, all right. With that, then, we're going to go to our next presentation. So Ms. Evans?
Item 58 is the presentation of the Assessor's 2022 Annual Report and Sacramento County Assessment Sampling Survey Results.
Great. I would just notice, Christina's coming forward, that she issues the annual report, they've been acknowledged on numerous occasions for the good work, certainly within the state organization, but they're overseeing the fiduciary responsibilities that the assessor's office is responsible for. I thought this might be a good opportunity to have the first of what will become an annual presentation by our assessor to the Board of Supervisors in the years to come to highlight some of the, you know, the good work, but also if there are other things that are pending legislatively and so forth that would be of note and give her an opportunity to tell us more about that. So good morning, Christina, and we welcome you and look forward to your presentation.
Well, good morning, Chair and Board members. Thank you very much for allowing me some time this morning to present some important information from my 2022 annual report. The annual report was included as part of the agenda packet. It's also available on the assessor's website, and it was emailed to all of our email subscribers. The county assessor has distinct responsibilities, which are to locate all taxable property within the county, identify the owner, appraise and assess the property, administer exemptions and exclusions, publish assessment information via property tax rolls, and create and maintain parcel maps, including GIS data. The assessor operations are closely aligned with other county departments and other jurisdictions within the county. We receive and analyze documents from the recorder's office and building permits from all jurisdictions. This information is analyzed and processed, and the resulting assessment data is disseminated to the Department of Finances, Department of Finance, for purposes of preparing property tax bills and processing property tax payments and refunds. To understand how property assessment works and the information in the report, it is important to understand the underlying tax laws that are the foundation of the assessments. Over 44 years ago, the voters approved Proposition 13, which revised the state constitution instituting major change to the state's property assessment system. When the measure was approved in 1978, all assessors were required to roll back assessed values to 1975 market levels. Prop 13 established the concept of the base share value. This meant that future reassessments were restricted to only occur when there was a change in ownership or new construction. The base ad valorem tax rate was set at 1% with the ability of jurisdictions to adjust the tax rate by voter approval. Today, the average tax rate in the county is 1.2%. Prop 13 also limited annual increases to 2% maximum based on inflation. The annual inflation factor is based on the California Consumer Price Index. The only exception to the 2% maximum annual increase came later, when the voters approved Proposition 8, which allows a temporary reduction to the assessed value during a real estate market downturn, or when there is damage or other conditions negatively impacting the market value of a property. To qualify for a Prop 8 assessment, the market value of a property must be less than the assessed value. Once a property qualifies for a Prop 8 assessment, each year, the assessed value is adjusted according to market fluctuation with no limit to the amount of the adjustment. However, at no time can the Prop 8 assessed value exceed the Prop 13 base share value adjusted for inflation. California is the only state with this unique assessment system. Not all accessible property is subject to Prop 13 laws. Business and personal property, such as business equipment, supplies, fixtures, boats, and aircraft, are assessed at market value as of January 1 each year. These properties are typically assessed on the unsecured property tax roll. I am pleased to report that the total 2022-2023 assessment roll set a new record high and almost broke the record for annual roll increase, but not quite, and we'll cover that in a bit. The 215-plus billion gross roll represents a healthy 8% increase over 2021. On a net basis, this year's roll increase equates to 15.2 billion in assessed value growth. Although the total assessment roll increased by over 8%, most assessments increased by only 2% the statutory limit. The balance of the increase is attributed to new construction and change in ownership transactions, and any increase in the annual value of business and personal property. Based on the current net total assessment roll, Sacramento County is considered the 11th largest out of the 58 counties. This year's assessment roll generates over $2 billion in property tax revenue, yielding an added $100 million in gross revenue over last year. Property tax revenue funds over 175 local government agencies, including schools and special districts such as park, fire, and community service districts, as well as cities and redevelopment agencies. Property tax revenue is one of the largest sources of discretionary funding for the county's general fund. When we break out the secured roll by property type, we can see that the single-family residential sector contributes to nearly 64% of the value of the roll from 80% of the parcels. Due to the exuberant residential market, over $10.2 billion in assessed value was added to the sector, representing 67% of the year-over-year increase of the annual roll. It is interesting to look at the 20-year history of the assessment roll. The years in red represent the declining assessment roll during the Great Recession. Data patterns indicate history may be repeating itself. There was a record roll increase in 2006 and '07, and we were close to breaking that record this year. The 2022-23 year represents another peak, which we will likely not surpass in the near term. Yet only if we had a crystal ball would we really know what was going to happen.
I'll say it isn't so, that you've got four red years coming up soon.
No, I don't think we'll see red for a while, if we do at all, but it won't be...
It won't be as robust as far as the growth.
On the last slide, we saw that during the Great Recession, there was negative roll growth, and this is primarily attributed to Prop 8 assessments and the requirement to reduce qualifying assessments during a real estate downturn. We still have a small population of properties that still qualify for Prop 8 assessment. This category also includes properties in poor condition or damaged. For perspective, during the peak of the Great Recession, there were over 250,000 properties assessed under Prop 8. This year, the number is approximately 12,000. Property owners have the right to appeal their assessed value. This chart displays the annual assessment appeal filing data for the last 10 years. The volume of appeals has been declining since 2013, when the market began its slow recovery from the Great Recession. There is a strong inverse correlation between the health of the real estate market and the number of appeals filed. When the real estate market is up, there are fewer appeals. Last year's data reflects the lowest level of assessment appeal filings in 10 years. This chart breaks up the various exemption categories. Exemptions represent value required to be removed from the property tax roll for qualified individuals and organizations. Welfare and nonprofit organizations comprise the largest sector with over $4 billion of assessed value exempted this year. Note that the homeowner's exemption is the only exemption reimbursed by the state. Now, we're going to get into the fun stuff. Prop 19. Somebody asked me, I did a presentation on this topic, and they said, "Well, why are there drops of water on your slides?" And I said, "Well, you're either crying tears of joy or tears of sadness," depending on which side of the fence you're on when it comes to Prop 19. Okay, so, a very important change to the state constitution became effective in 2021. This change, the changes, are a result of the November 2020 passage of Proposition 19. Proposition 19 represents the most significant change to property assessment administration since the passage of Proposition 13. This new law expanded base share transfer benefits tremendously. A qualifying property owner can now transfer the Prop 13 assessed value of their primary residence to another primary residence in any county in the state with no value limit and up to three times per taxpayer. This benefit is also available to disaster victims and does not count towards the three times per taxpayer limit. If a higher-value replacement property is purchased, there is an upward adjustment for the difference. Conversely, inheritance benefits are now severely restricted. Under the new law, to qualify for the benefit, the heir must move into the property within one year of inheritance and make the home their primary residence. The heir must reside in the inherited property in perpetuity to keep the benefit. If the heir does not move into the property within one year of inheritance, the heir does not qualify for the benefit, and the property is reassessed to market. If a qualifying heir later moves out of the property, it is reassessed. A homeowner's or disabled veteran's exemption is required. Further, there is a $1 million cap on the benefit, or in the case of a family farm, the cap is a per parcel limit. Family farms without a residence are not subjects to the residence requirement. Vacation, rental, and commercial properties no longer qualify for the benefit. It is important to note that transactions like death of a property owner that occurred prior to the 2021 inception date are still subject to the more permissive inheritance Housing is a hot topic, and the annual assessment roll includes the assessments of 4,086 newly constructed single-family residential dwellings and 5,670 newly constructed apartment units, for a total of 9,756 newly constructed dwellings. There was a 24.6 average price increase from the fourth quarter 2020 compared to the fourth quarter 2021. We continue to provide a significant level of responsive customer service to county residents, including providing most services electronically, providing in-person and live call center services daily. Our website is very popular, providing access to detailed topical assessment information, forms, online requests for review filing, property characteristic assessed value, maps, comparable sales information, and the supplemental assessment calculator. The State Board of Equalization, or BOE for short, has oversight responsibilities of the assessor's assessment administration practices. Under their oversight capacity, the BOE performs periodic audits. This year, the BOE completed a sample survey audit of Sacramento County's 2019-2020 assessment roll, and the results were published in August. The favorable results of this audit reflect a close adherence to the state laws that govern property assessment, as well as the recommended appraisal and administrative practices put forth by the BOE and professional appraisal organizations like the Appraisal Institute, the Society of Real Estate Appraisers, and the International Association of Assessing Officers. This report assures the Board of Supervisors and residents that property assessments in Sacramento County are being administered fairly and accurately. There is a financial impact, and based on the audit results, the BOE approves the county's continued eligibility to receive reimbursement for costs associated with administering supplemental assessments. For the most recent fiscal year, 2021-2022, the reimbursement amount was approximately In closing, the outstanding sample survey results reflect staff's commitment to uniformity, fairness, equity, and integrity in their work. I thank all staff for their dedication to our office mission and values, providing extraordinary customer service and striving for continuous improvement. And I am grateful to the Board of Supervisors, the County Executive's Office, and numerous county departments for their support and cooperation. Thank you for your partnership and for ensuring we have adequate resources to comply with constitutional mandates and continue to provide responsive customer service to all. I have any questions?
We do. Thanks, Christine. Okay, Mr. Serna.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Christine, for the update. The information is kind of fascinating to digest here and to reflect on the values, the aggregate values when it comes to property tax in the county, just, I think, reminds us all the responsibility that you shoulder and that we shoulder, and I just wanted to take a moment and say thank you for the great job that you're doing, and that it's still very refreshing not to hear about, you know, controversy in the department as we have in past years. I think, under your leadership, there's been a noticeable change, and I hope that, and it seems to be the case, I hope that it's really permeated through the agency. So again, thank you for educating us on what you're doing, and it's invaluable, so thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Well, I would just echo what Mr. Serna said, that, again, your work, the work of your office is very important to the, you know, property valuations and certainly to the revenue stream that, you know, comes to this county, to a whole host of organizations, entities, government agencies. But I think having integrity, and certainly, Christine, I want to thank you, because I know I've not hesitated over the years to pick up the phone and call you, certainly your predecessors, but certainly in recent years. And I want to just remark, because I cite this from time to time, that we had a situation, without getting into a lot of detail, where there'd been, I don't want to be known to anyone... without getting into a lot of detail, where there'd been, I mean, known to anyone, back in 1970s, on a drawing, when the assessor used to go out and do a handwritten or a hand-drawn configuration of the property and structures and so forth, that had got entered into the database, and when the gentleman came in to get a building permit, we didn't have it as being a former structure, and so he was going to be assessed some pretty significant school fees for replacement square footage. We spent some time talking about building inspection, and then I called Christina, and I guess, I think, surprising certainly to the homeowner, and, again, much delight, Christina had her folks go out and take a look at it, took a look at the information, and validated that the gentleman was correct, changed that, he was able to get his building permit, but it was something that had been in the records for some 50 years. And, again, I appreciate the level of detail that people were willing to take the extra time to do that, Christina, and sort of speaks to, as Supervisor Serna said, to your leadership. But I think the approach that you've, I'm sure, you know, coached your colleagues, and certainly folks within the department, to, you know, take that customer service approach. And it's not always easy when you're talking about, you know, taxes and, you know, and valuations and so forth, but it's been a big, it's been a big climb in recent years, obviously, with the turnover in properties and so forth. But I want to say thank you and your office. And, again, I know we remarked, we talked here a few days ago, that early in my career as a supervisor, we had some interaction, you were not the assessor, obviously, at the time, but with our farmers and grape growers and so forth, about valuations, and I know that, you know, Jared, in your office, was part of those conversations, but a little tense meetings with the Farm Bureau, with some of the growers, but worked through that issue, and, again, I think it speaks highly to your office and to the seriousness by which you take your roles and responsibilities, but also that willingness to, you know, within the confines of the law, which is pretty structured, to try to address situations that come to your attention, our attention, the attention of others, and the county leadership. So, thank you, congratulations on your reelection, and, you know, four more years, and, again, you're doing a tremendous job, and appreciate you being here this morning, so. Do we have any callers on this item? I didn't see anybody signed up, so.
Not have any callers. I'll do one more sweep.
Okay.
We do not.
Okay, well, very good. Well, Christine, anything else you wanted to add before?
No, I just want to thank you, and congratulations on your impending retirement. We'll miss you quite a bit, Tom.
Yeah, thanks, Christina. All right, well, very good. We can thank our assessor and her staff, and all those that work with her. I know she works with the Treasure Task Collector, I see Ben's up in the audience this morning, so. Okay, with that, that's the receiving file, and we, again, thank Christina for taking the time, and hopefully, in years to come, we can have this as an annual report to the board. So with that, Flo, I'll turn to you, and we'll go to our next item.
Okay, Item 59, County Service Area Number One, Zone Number One, Public Hearing on the Benefit Category Change and Levy of Increased Service Charges for Castleman Northwest.
Okay. I'm not going to say this is your first presentation, so.
Not this time. Speaking of taxes, though, good morning, members of the board. Joe Grasik with County Engineering Division, standing in for Cheyenne Raymond, who was originally scheduled to present this item today. So, the Castleman Northwest subdivision is located approximately a half mile west of Elk Grove Florin Road and proposes 66 residential lots. During the entitlement process, the project was conditioned to provide full funding for street and safety light maintenance, which is provided by County Service Area Number One in unincorporated Sacramento County. As a result, the project proponent submitted an application to initiate the Benefit Category Change process, and in response to this request, a ballot and notice were mailed to the property owner on October 20th. Currently, the project site consists of a single parcel in the safety light-only benefit category and has an annual assessment of $2.56. The proposed change is to the enhanced street and safety light benefit category for residential parcels. Based on current rates, the service charge would be, for this fiscal year, will be $56.74 per parcel. And if there are no questions from the board, we recommend that the board open the public hearing, consider any oral and written testimony and objection, and close the public hearing, and then direct the clerk to tabulate the returned protest ballot.
Okay, thank you, Joe, for walking us through that. Then, unless there's any questions, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing on this item. I don't have any one side to speak, is there any one on the phone to speak to this?
We do not have any public comments.
All right, last call on Item 59. Anyone wish to address the board on this item? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing, go back to our clerk to tabulate the ballots.
Can I get a drum roll?
Drum roll? Not a very good drum roll, but, anyway, get the idea.
Get it. All right. So we received one ballot. This is, the legal owner is Beazer Homes Holdings, parcel number 1150091057000, and the site address is Castleman Road, and they are in favor of the Benefit Category Change.
Okay, all right. Now, Ben read into the record, I'll turn back to you, Joe, to complete the resolution for board's consideration.
That's right, yes, since there's no majority protest, I will read in the fill-ins for the resolution for the record. In the resolution, Section 2, at the close of the hearing, the board had received zero written protests. Section 3, at the close of the tabulation, the board had received one protest ballot totaling 100% of the total service charges to be levied, of which 100% was in favor of the change of Benefit Category and 0% was in opposition.
All right, and the resolution, do we have a motion?
Move the item.
All right, move in a second to approve the item as noted in the record. If there's nothing further, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
All right.
And I took that as Supervisor Kennedy.
Yes.
Made the motion and frost me in the second.
You catch it.
I heard a few people.
Desmond was in too, so. But I guess who got in first.
That's how it's going down.
I was slow with the microphone, but. The seconders were quick, though, so. All right, next item.
Okay, Item 60 is the County Service Area Number 10, Benefit Zone Number 3, Public Hearing to Establish a Service Charge Within the Castleman Northwest Subdivision.
Okay, Mr. Grasik, just like you never left.
Good morning.
Good morning. All right.
Joe Grasik, again, here to present the item as was just read into the record by the clerk. In case anybody forgot, Castleman Northwest, half mile west of Elk Grove Florin Road, and proposes 66 residential lots. In response to a rezoned condition of approval, a request was submitted to initiate the establishment of a service charge for County Service Area Number 10, which provides strip reduction services. In response to that request, a notice and protest ballot were mailed to the property owner on October 21st, 2022. This item proposes the levy of an annual service charge of $120.16 per single-family residential lot. And if there are no questions from the board, we recommend that the board open the public hearing, consider written and oral testimony and protests, and close the public hearing, and then direct the clerk to tabulate the returned protest ballot.
Okay, thanks again, Joe. All right, no questions from board members, unless you have anything to queue, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. I don't have anybody signed to speak. Do we have anybody on the phone?
We do not.
Okay, one last scan of the chambers. Anyone wish to address this item? All right, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and turn to our clerk to read, tabulate the votes.
Okay. All right, we have received one ballot. Excuse me, the legal owner is the Beazer Homes Holdings, a Delaware liability, limited liability company. The site address is Castleman Road and parcel number 1150091057000, and they are in favor of the proposed annual change.
Very good. Okay, with that, we'll turn back to Mr. Grasik to fill in the blanks in the resolution.
Thank you. Again, no majority protest, so I will read in the fill-ins. In Section 2 of the resolution, at the close of the tabulation, the board received zero oral and written protests, which the board has duly considered. In Section 3, at the close of the tabulation, the board received one protest ballot totaling 100% of the total amount to be levied, of which 100% was in favor of the service charge and 0% was in opposition to the service charge.
All right, let's remember that into the record. Unless there's any questions, the motion will be in order. Move it. Okay? Move in a second to approve the resolution as noted. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, thank you, Joe. Good to see you. Thank you. All right, we're a little, no, we're right on time, so.
Right on time.
Yep.
Okay, Item 61, authorize the county purchasing agent to negotiate and execute a contract with Grant Street Group for a property tax management system not to exceed an amount of $40 million for an annual five-and-a-half-year term.
Okay, we have Rami Lacaria and Ben Lamera here to tag team the presentation. Looks like Ben got a short straw. Go ahead, Ben.
Oh, Rami's right here to back me up, so.
All right, go ahead.
Good morning, Chair Natoli, members of the board. We're coming forward with a resolution that's going to authorize the purchasing agent to negotiate a contract with Grant Street Group, negotiate a five-one-year extensions to follow the initial five-year contract, and also execute the contract award, extensions, contingency increase, and termination and other actions as necessary. And, oh, there's a clicker. Okay. So, we have gone through the RFP process, and we actually selected a vendor, and just want to give you a little bit more background on the property tax system. And, as you know, we issue numerous bills for the property taxes. We produce close to 500,000 property tax bills annually, totaling more than $2.45 billion. And as you can see, most of it is made up of the secured property taxes.
So Christina does the assessment and gives it over to you to send the bills.
That is exactly it. You're going to hear a lot about property taxes. You already have this morning, so we'll keep moving it forward. So, for property taxes, just some facts regarding the collections and distributions. For fiscal year 21-22, the 1% property taxes that were collected, about $950 million of that goes to various school districts in the ERAF. 50, or $325 million go to special districts, which include fire, parks and recreation districts, cemetery districts, and community service districts. The County of Sacramento receives $310 million of that 1% property tax. $210 million go to incorporated cities and $130 million to former redevelopment agencies. We also have $315 million of those property taxes that are special assessment districts, and, as was discussed earlier, part of that was included in there. And then, we have $275 million of the property taxes that go to general obligation bonds. This gives you a little graphic of the 1% property tax in a breakdown. Almost 50% of the property taxes go to, 1% property taxes go to school districts and ERAF. The County of Sacramento gets about 16.1%, and special district 17, former redevelopment, 6.67, and incorporated cities, 10.94%. So our properties tax system has various functions. Right now, there's numerous pieces of our property tax system, and also some ancillary systems that allow us to do property tax billing and collections. So, we have interfaces with multiple entities, the assessor's office, special districts, the state, court tax agents, and payment vendors, and also our cashiering system. We generate both secured, unsecured, supplemental bills, redemption bills, out of the system, and we receive and process numerous types of collections, both for, you know, secured, unsecured, and supplemental bills. We calculate delinquency fees and charges, calculate refunds, and we maintain our redemption records and tax sale information in there. We maintain payment plans and billing history, and we provide online access to payment and billing history to outside folks. And then, we also provide data for reporting for our apportionments. And with that, I'm going to turn this over to Rami, and he's going to give us a little bit of information regarding the property tax system.
Okay, thanks, Ben.
Thank you, Ben. Good morning, Chair Natoli, members of the board. The property tax system was developed starting in 1980 and implemented in 1985 using COBOL and mainframe technology. The redemption system was modified in 1990 for theater purposes. In early 2000, we added the unsecured property tax system. Current system is on the mainframe, which is aging and consistently finding it harder to support. We have numerous ancillary system that are necessary to complete the work. I wanted to include a slide that shows the technology that's built, the tax system is built on it. It really predates personal computers. So, it's, we believe it's really time to kind of take on this project. The tax system is comprised of over 9,800 programs that are constantly maintained and supported to reflect changes in laws and regulation governing property taxes in California. We've known for a long time that the system needs replacement.
It's colorful.
Very colorful.
Two colors, yeah.
Yeah.
Three, you got a black screen and then blue and red.
So, we've known for a long time that we needed to replace the tax system, and in 2015, we came to the board with a contract with Gartner Consulting to develop business requirements to replace the tax systems. We gathered requirements for role generation for secured and unsecured tax bills, payment processing, payment plans, refund, apportionment and distribution, delinquency, and tax sale. We also communicated with the county executive and your board through the technology improvement plan, the need for replacing this system. We monitored implementations throughout California, the ones that were successful and the ones that were not as successful, and we participated in California County property tax work groups that have been dedicated to the implementation and learning best practices. So with all that in hand, we developed some consideration for the new tax system that we would like to see. So we wanted an out-of-box solution with successful implementation in other California counties, and that's one of the main reasons that we really did not come in 2015, 16, or 17 for this request. We wanted one integrated system. We didn't want a collection of system. We wanted one system that does secured, unsecured, and redemption, and we wanted apportionment to be calculated within the system. We wanted a system that's built on information security best practices, and we wanted electronic billing for property taxes. We wanted a payment portal for both bulk payments and paying agent, but also self-service for our constituents that would like to pay online. We wanted a system that used current technology. So, on November 5th of 2021, we published a proposal, we published an RFP. We sent it to all the companies that registered on the public purchase website, more than 202 companies. We did a pre-proposal conference, we answered questions, we received two proposals by the submission deadline of December 30th, 2021. The proposals were evaluated in two phases, including written and demonstrations. A project team of subject matter expert was formed from the Departments of Finance, Technology, and the Assessor. After conducting comprehensive evaluation, the team concluded that Grant Street Group's solution is substantially more comprehensive and ready for implementation with minimal enhancements needed. Grant Street implementations in San Mateo and San Francisco Counties were very successful and took, on the average, of two years to complete. Reference checks for Grant Street were exceptional, which validated the project team assessment of the solution. The selection and implementation of the new property tax system will be a multi-year effort. We expect two to two-and-a-half years to completion. The original cost estimates have been updated now to reflect the actual price proposals that have been received. These are our total implementation costs, $29,388. And the annual maintenance is estimated at $10,245,000, for a total of five years, six-month cost of just under $40 million. We are excited about this project.
10 million annually, not 10,000.
No, no, that's total over the five years, six months.
Or 10,000?
No, 10 million.
I think you said 10,000, though. Yeah, I just.
I misspoke.
No, no, no problem. I just want to be sure, because we got a heck of a deal of $10,000, so.
No, no, no.
That's per hour.
The total annual maintenance is 10,245,625.
Yeah, no, I was up there, I didn't mean to correct you, but I just wanted, again, if people are listening in, that was a pretty good deal, so.
Yeah, yeah, no.
I'm sure it's a good deal.
These are the costs there.
Yeah, great, thanks, Rami.
We're very excited about this project and, you know, ready to get started on it. with the Department of Finance, assessors, and all our partners as well.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, you got any questions? All right, I don't see anybody in the queue. I guess you and Ben must have knocked it out of the park, so.
Okay, thank you.
I know we budgeted for this, again, certainly thank Ann, and I know this has been on the docket for a number of years, going back probably till, you know, the last decade when it was, you know, in the queue, and obviously, things accelerate as far as cost, but it's important, transactions that keep the revenue flowing to a whole lot of agencies, so. All right, if there's no questions, then let me go see, I don't know if they signed up, anybody in the audience wish to address the board on this item? Seeing none, Flo, do we have anybody on the phone?
We do not.
Okay. Then I'm bringing back the board, but I just wanted to ask one quick question, then. So, what sort of training component comes with this? And, you know, the software leases and so forth, do we have to pay a royalty annually? Or is this going to be a proprietary system once we get it?
Well, the system is owned by Grand Street, and it's a.
So they're going to own the system.
They will own the system, but, you know, we will have the exclusive, not exclusive, but we will be using it with other counties, including San Mateo, San Francisco, and other counties. This is a company that's dedicated to property tax systems throughout the U.S., not just in California, and we feel strongly that they're just a solid company that's dedicated to maintaining these systems now and into the future.
And do they provide training for our folks?
Oh, absolutely.
So that's built into the price?
Yeah, that's all built into the price, data conversions built into the price. The implementation cost is not to exceed, it's a fixed bid contract that they've given us.
Okay. And what about, I think, again, secure, the security of systems? Because we see systems that, even those that seem to be very secure, they get breached, and so what sort of, if they own the system and the data is, you know, sensitive to some degree, some of it's public records, obviously, but information about people's addresses and maybe other things that tie back into the database, what sort of protections or assurances provided there? And are they responsible for that, or is that your department's responsible for that?
No, they would be responsible for that. During the RFP process, we reviewed the information security practices that this company has, and we felt very comfortable that they meet the standards that we have set. And I expect, as we continue into the future, that this would be something that we would keep to work, working with this company on. As you know, information security challenges, changes.
Right.
Almost daily and so on, and we're committed to keep working with them, you know, to address those issues. But in our conversation with Grand Street, we felt really strongly that the company, that they take cybersecurity very seriously, and we felt just very confident that the solutions that they have meets our standards.
Okay, very good, thanks, Rami. Okay. Any other, any questions by board members? I see none.
Move the item.
All right. All right, just move in a second to approve the staff recommendations outlined. If there's nothing further, let's vote.
Unanimous vote?
There you have it.
Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Yep, there's some muzzled applause there, but I know people are pretty happy, I'm sure, to get this moving forward, so, thanks to our staff for their work on the RFP. Okay, let's go to our next item, which is.
Okay, item 62 is the Lakes at Antelope Open Space Operations and Management Plan. Request for a board review of the proposed open space operations and management plan for the Sierra Creek open space on approximately 22 acres in residential seven zoning district.
Great, Jessica Brandt, haven't seen you for a while, Jessica, good to see you.
I know, it's nice to see you.
Good morning.
I do have a PowerPoint.
Okay.
It's coming, Jessica, okay. Okay, so, good morning, I'm Jessica Brandt with Planning and Environmental Review. I'm here to present the Lakes at Antelope Open Space Operations and Management Plan item. So, the plan is a portion of a larger subdivision that is in the Antelope community. Located here is, you see the aerial photo, it's west of Watt Avenue, north of Sunmaiden Way, and the setting is a vacant site, it's a former golf course, and there is a natural creek that flows through from the east to the west, formerly known as Goat Creek, now, I believe, called Sierra Creek. Just some community context, the zoning of the site is RD 7, and surrounding land uses are single and multifamily to the north, east, and south, and then residential and a park to the west across Watt. So, some history here, as I had mentioned, this is part of a larger subdivision map that was approved by the board in 2006. It is a planned 61-acre residential subdivision with, it's actually 280 lots, and totaling approximately 39 acres. The approval in 2006 was for 304 lots, and then there was a substantial compliance approval to reduce the lots in order to maintain the required open space around the natural features. There were also three open space lots, which have now been combined into one, which is the subject of today's plan. As mentioned, this is a redevelopment of a former golf course. The golf course itself is mostly in the residential area, going to be single-family residential units, and then the water features of the golf course are being turned into an open space area. When this was brought to the board in 2006, there was some concern that there was not a management plan in place for this open space area, and there wasn't an identified operational entity. And so, at that time, there were two conditions that were placed on the subdivision map. One was that an operations and maintenance plan would be put together, and another related to fencing and gating for the open space area. And so, the condition that required an operations plan was triggered on recordation of the final map. As you can see, if this was in 2006, we are a long time from when this was originally approved. This did come through an extension as well, the map did, and they are now nearly ready to finalize that map, so that is why we're here with the, with the plan today for your review. So the mechanism for this to come forward for review is just a board review entitlement, and so that is what we're here for. The open space plan has been included in your materials, and it is divided into three sections. There's a management and maintenance section, prohibited activities section, and a funding section. The application had originally come in with a plan that was much more focused on federal permitting for wetlands, and so we had gone back and forth with the applicants over the last year to streamline the plan and make it more user-friendly for the management entity, which is going to be the homeowners association. This next slide is an exhibit, one of the exhibits that's included in the plan that shows the trail system. As you can see, the trail system will follow what was actually the old golf cart paths around the open space area. There are two, I believe, bridges that will be maintained over the waterway. No additional improvement to the open space area is anticipated or actually permitted under the federal permitting. Everything will be maintenance only, and the, let's see here, make sure I catch everything. And the idea behind it is that it provides both passive recreation for the residents of the community and the neighborhood, the public, and then also a drainage and floodway area for the creek. And I do want to point out, as this will be important later in the presentation, there are specific areas that are pedestrian access points. One is, in this, I can't point, can I? One is off of, oh dear Lord. It doesn't work. Ah, dang it, that's okay, I'll get one that I can actually read. So one pedestrian gate would be off of what's called Misty Lake Drive on the exhibit, which is on the north side of the open space.
Where the dogway station is?
Uh, that would make sense, yeah. Mm-hmm. So that's one of them, and then a second pedestrian access point would be off of Sunmaiden Way on the southeast portion of the open space. Again, you know, dogway station and other amenities would be placed along with it. And this is important because this does take into account the gating and fencing that are going to be required for this open space, and I will be talking a little bit about an amendment to the plan that the applicant is actually requesting today. So the Antelope CPAC did meet on August 4th of this year and consider this item. They do recommend that the board approve it. The input from the CPAC did include a request to consider additional public access points, as there are only the two that are proposed, and then they did want a little more detail on inflation increases on the dues payments to make sure that they were going to cover costs in perpetuity. In response to the CPAC comments, the applicant consultant did review the access points and still recommended only the two points due to potential conflicts with private property. As you can see in the exhibit, for the most part, other than a couple of areas where there's significant wetland area, it's private lots that back up to the public or the open space area. So they did recommend continuing with the two. Staff is recommending that as well. And then, as long, along with that, the consultant also believes that the language within the plan does allow for inflation increases if the HOA believes that that's necessary to cover costs of maintenance. And the applicant is here and can provide more color on those two items as well. And then, I do want to mention that we have received some public inquiry on the project, but it has actually been more of neighbors asking about the overall subdivision and the status of that. And clarifying that this is all related to the management plan, they're all very supportive and haven't, haven't heard anything negative from the general public on this. So, project analysis, we have reviewed their revised open space plan and determined that it is consistent with the board's intent when it was conditioned on the subdivision in 2006, and that it does include the necessary detail and direction for the HOA to engage in successful ongoing management of the open space area. So, going back to those pedestrian access points, the applicant is requesting, kind of last minute, one modification to the plan, and that is to strike language that requires that the access gates be locked at sunset. There is a concern that that may be hard to implement on an ongoing basis for their HOA, and they believe that an alternative of security patrols on either an ongoing basis or as-needed basis could be sufficient to address the concerns that were, that brought that to be part of the plan to begin with. And again, the applicant is here, he can talk about that more. We did work with the applicant to come up with some alternative language to the specific section in the management plan, and we would like to present that to the board for consideration. Staff is not opposed to this change. Looking at the 2006 hearing notes, it does seem that the concerns related to locking the open space at night were related to potential illegal dumping and potential camping or, you know, illegal use of the property. The applicant feels that the security patrols could address both of those issues, alternative to locking the gates.
Jessica, I ask you a question. So, what sort of lighting is provided for? Is it just the ambient lighting from residential, or is there some lighting of the trail?
I don't believe there is any lighting proposed, no.
Okay, because then, if, and the reason I ask that, because if you're going to have patrols after dusk, you know, it's, people can carry flashlights and so forth, but there's, you know, it's going to be difficult to see, you have this open space that, you know, certainly during the daylight hours will be, I'm sure, well utilized, but I think the concerns, you know, aren't without some legitimacy whenever it comes to, you know, some of the activities we've seen on public spaces, as well as even on private property in recent years. Again, this is more cloistered, that you have, you know, a good deal of residential that adjoins it, but in a lot of cases, we have park districts that have patrols that do this. This is a homeowner association that will have that responsibility, and I just, again, without any, any lighting, and there's really, your security in the after-hours is going to be incumbent upon whatever lighting comes out of people's backyards or side yards, or where you're adjacent to the street and have some streetlight requirements already, so, was there any discussion at the staff level about that?
No.
Why wouldn't you, if you're going to have a whole trail system, why wouldn't you have lighting adjacent to that?
The, the overall plan was to maintain as-is, and so I think probably in 2006, it wasn't necessarily thought about, and then the plan itself maintains that sort of maintenance-only perspective.
Well, I appreciate that, but again, to the point here about not, you know, having to lock the gate, you know, you know, trespass is, you know, is an issue, again, can be, and I just, you know, but if people don't have the ability to see, you know, readily, and the gates are left open, or not on a regular basis, left to somebody that has the key, maybe it may lock it or not, I just think that leaves a little bit to chance, which maybe that's a risk people want to take, but I think that's a concern, so I'll just say that. All right, go ahead.
And I, oh, go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, Sue, I know this is in your district, so.
I was just wondering how the applicant feels about that. I remember, over time, we've had these conversations about locking the two outside gates, and I, well, I understand your point about the lighting, and, but also, if there's houses backed up to it, and there's light all night, that, I don't know what kind of lighting, maybe something low or something, like landscape lighting that's, that's low, that you can still see shadows coming at you or something, I don't know. I don't know how planning feels about that, or how the applicant feels, but I'd be interested in hearing from them.
And I think the applicant is wanting to, to speak to it a little more, kind of give a little more background. I will also mention that the, the other condition that was placed on this open space in 2006 was open wrought iron fencing at the back of those private properties, and so that may help with some of that sort of eyes on the, the open space as well. So, to wrap up my presentation, I did want to share the applicant's requested amended language. Flo, can I get the overhead?
Sure.
Did I distribute it to the board? Was that given to the clerk, Jessica? No?
Apologies, as I mentioned, this was a.
Last minute.
Very last minute.
Okay, all right.
So the request, just for the record, that the applicant is making is to Section 2.4 of the plan, and it would be the second bullet point that relates to the pedestrian gates. The sentence that talks about, that the gates would only be unlocked during daylight hours would be struck, and then an additional sentence in the third bullet would be added stating that the HOA will provide security patrols on an as-needed basis. And as I'd mentioned, staff is not opposed to these changes, and the applicant can provide more information on them, and staff is overall recommending approval of this, of this plan. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Jessica. Any questions of Ms. Brandt? All right, don't see any questions. Thanks, Jessica. Okay, I understand the applicants in the audience, I didn't have any speaker forms, but come forward and put your name on the record, please.
Good morning, David Judy, I'm a senior planner with KB Home. There was a, kind of a twofold issue that came about throughout discussions with our There was a, kind of a twofold issue that came about throughout discussions with our, the company who will be managing the HOA. And again, I do apologize for the last minute nature of this. We had some personnel changes internally, and I've recently taken over the project and had these ongoing conversations. The first issue is it's just a bit of a logistical burden for the, what will be the HOA management company. It will necessitate either a third party key holder or setting up some kind of internal process with one of the homeowners to take responsibility to go out at night and lock, come back in the morning and unlock. So it's just a permanent, an additional permanent fixed cost for the HOA. The second thing is we have a lot of these types of communities with these kind of internal open space areas. If you have a locked gate, usually there can be some other issue that comes about. People who shouldn't be in there will, you know, either cut a fence or cut a, you know, this will be wrought iron fencing and, you know, they'll just cut and go through and it's just an additional maintenance item for the HOA. So this is something we came up with to hopefully reduce their burden a bit. As Jessica mentioned, the neighboring houses that run along this HOA will all have open metal fencing. It's not, you know, they're not solid fences. So there will be ambient light that gets through. Speaking from personal experience, I live out in Placer County, and we have a lot of these kind of meandering green spaces that go through backyards and where there are open metal fences, you do get, you know, plenty of ambient light, additional ambient light from the streetlights. So something we wanted to propose to, like I said, just hopefully relieve a little bit of the logistical burden if at all possible. And with these HOA type communities, as needed, security patrols are something that is, that is common. If you have groups that are, you know, settling and camping in these spaces, they tend to kind of move around in waves. They'll settle in, they'll be removed, they'll go to another space, they'll be gone for weeks or months at a time, and then they'll find their way back. And so that's generally how these are handled. They'll call the security company out for a couple of weeks, conduct patrols as needed, groups go away, and then when they return, kind of call them back. It's unfortunately just the nature of what we deal with in this day and age.
David, I have a question for you. So on the map that we have, the exhibit, you showed the one access coming off of Sunmaiden Way, which abuts, I guess, existing residential, at least far as I can tell. Are those front on houses on Sunmaiden on the south side or are those back ons?
I'm sorry.
Yeah. The exhibit we have shows the one access of the two coming off of Sunmaiden Way. And is that your subdivision to the south?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Those will be newly constructed houses to the north and south.
Okay. But that's not a part of this map, though.
It's, the map is, is in four phases. So that'll be a future phase of the final map.
And are those front on houses? Front on, are they, they fronting on Sunmaiden Way or they, do they take, is that?
Yes, yes, correct. So some of those lots, like at the end of the court, will be, the side yard will face out, but yeah, generally speaking, those will all be backyards.
Yeah. Because we just had a kind of a faded, you know, because it's not a phase, it's included with the less before, so I was curious kind of the point I was asking about earlier whether, so you have eyes on, both you have rear yards with wrought iron fencing depending, as you get in, but the area where you access, you'll actually have homeowners that can look out.
Yeah. And those, those public access points where there's not a, a house, there will be wrought iron fencing and a pedestrian gate.
So what about lighting at the, I asked about, just along the trail, what about the entry points? Is there lighting provided there? I mean, again, if you were going to have somebody lock up after hours, if that, you know, obviously you're asking for a changed condition on that, but so is there, is there lighting beyond, again, the ambient, at those two locations where you actually have gates? It would seem to me you would want to have lighting there.
Not, there's not designated lighting for that exact space, but there are streetlights in the vicinity that will
Well, yeah. The general spacing that's required, but, okay. All right. Any other comments you want to make? Can we ask other, yeah, supervisor, sir?
Thank you. Can we get the suggested new language back on the screen, please? So this may be a bit nitpicky, but just throw it out there. I believe what this is intended to convey is that the HOA will contract out with a private security service, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, you know, I don't know if it makes any difference or not, but perhaps the sentence should maybe state that more clearly. In other words, you're not going to have the HOA management company itself have their employees patrolling. You're going to have the HOA management company subcontracting with a private security force to do the patrolling, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I don't, I don't know if that, from the standpoint of our planning staff, makes any sense to maybe make it clearer or not, but that's what I, I assumed here, but I was obviously having to make the assumption because it's not that clear.
Sure. I think, I think making it clear and as explicit as possible is, yeah, the HOA shall
Retain the services of a private security
Correct.
Company to provide patrol.
Correct. I think that's helpful.
Or you can just insert the word contracted after the word provide. So the HOA will also provide contracted security patrols on an as needed basis.
Good.
Okay, thanks, Ken. All right. Any other questions for David? All right.
No.
Okay. Do we have any public comments? I don't have any time to speak, so is there anyone on the phone which is to?
You do not.
No. Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Stand by. Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Okay. Surprising Frost.
So I know this has been over a long time and the staff has worked really hard, and I know the applicant has worked really hard on this over time to get this figured out. And I don't have any further questions or problems, so I want to go ahead and move staff's recommendation.
Second.
Okay. It's moving seconded with the addition of that language and the condition contracted. All right. So that is the motion. Seconded. Nothing further, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay. Thank you, folks. Thank you, Planning Department. Okay, next item.
Okay. Item 63 is the Del Valle supermarket PCN. This is a request for public convenience or necessity letter from the Board of Supervisors to issue a Type 21 off sale beer, wine and spirits liquor license to Del Valle supermarket at 7870 Florin Road in the South Sacramento community.
Okay, Mr. Pahuili.
Okay. Good morning. Chair Natale, board members, Chris Pahuili with the Planning and Environmental Review Division. I'm providing the staff presentation for the Del Valle supermarkets' request for a letter of public convenience or necessity in order to obtain a Type 21 ABC license, which is required for this business as it is located in a high crime reporting district and also a census tract that would become over concentrated with the granting of this license. The proposed market is located at 7870 Florin Road in the South Point Shopping Center, approximately 500 feet west of the Florin Power Inn intersection. The market would occupy roughly 21,000 square feet in the existing shopping center, which contains a number of neighborhood serving commercial tenants. Subject parcel is zoned LC for commercial use, with parcels immediately to the east of the subject parcel within the shop, within the actual shopping center. Those are zoned SPA as they are located within the old Florin Town Special Planning Area. To the north and the south of the, of the subject parcel, there are residential uses, and the parcel immediately west is undeveloped and zoned for either office or commercial use. The graphic on this slide, which I admit is a bit difficult to decipher from, from this distance at least, it is the one mile radius map, which planning staff prepares for all PCN requests. I do want to note that the map contains the 2010 census tract layer, as the 2020 census tract layer was not available at the time of map preparation. The map demonstrates that within that one mile radius, there are a total of 18 establishments selling alcohol, seven with Type 20 beer and wine licenses, and 11 with Type 21 beer, wine and spirits license. I do want to note again that this request is for a Type 21 license. The South Sacramento CPAC reviewed this PCN request in July of 2022 and recommended the board's approve the request. In discussing the proposed store and the related PCN request, CPAC members noted the need for a full service grocery store within this area of South Sacramento and expressed their appreciation for the owner's investment into the neighborhood. Staff's analysis of the Del Valle supermarkets' request for a PCN letter included a review of Census Tract 5004, which would become over concentrated with the granting of this request, and the fact that the subject parcel is within a high crime reporting district, as I mentioned earlier.
Chris, we have a question. If you could pause for a second.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. So I know you're, you were just about to, to make reference to the one mile radius and the fact that there's no identified sensitive uses within 1,000 feet of the subject parcel. But as I think we're all aware, this is close to the Safe Stay site that is at the southeast corner of Power Inn and Florin Roads. So I guess the question is, and I did reference this in my briefing to, to Todd, are we, are we looking at Safe Stay sites as kind of a new sensitive use? The reason being is that I think we can expect that those sites are going to be intended to help shelter folks that in many respects are probably more likely to have dependency issues with regards to alcohol. So did, you know, for instance, did the, the CPAC, were they fully aware that there would be this particular use within 1,000 feet? And I did check with, with Todd, and apparently it's, I think, within 900 feet or
It is. It is less than 1,000 feet. And I was going to mention that, I was also going to mention that there's also another affordable housing development also located within that 1,000 foot radius, the Anton Affordable Housing Project. It's roughly 180 units as well. So the, the short answer is no, we don't currently evaluate either Safe Stay or affordable housing developments as part of the analysis. That is something that if the board is interested in seeing that analysis be completed, certainly something that we could do. We have, over the years, added additional, additional analysis to our PCN reviews, so that is certainly something that we can do. Going to the, the South Sacramento CPAC, they were, they were aware of both developments. The Anton project has been approved for a while now. However, there wasn't much discussion about that with the community.
Okay. Yeah, I think going forward, I think that there should be, I think, I think it makes sense to have some standard reference to Safe Stay sites and their, you know, their proximity, some, some analysis of, some geographic analysis of distance, that kind of thing. So certainly something, I think, to consider even as we are deliberating this today, so.
Certainly. That's something we can do. Staff, in addition to those two developments that, that were just mentioned, staff also acknowledges that the site is located within the South Sacramento Environmental Justice Community, which seeks to control alcohol uses in EJ communities where there is an over concentration of licenses. However, there are also EJ policies related to supporting opportunities for access to healthy foods and products, which this full service grocery store will provide. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of the PCN letter. I'd also like to note that the sheriff's recommended ABC license conditions have been incorporated into a conditional ABC license. We have, staff has had communications with ABC. They have, they are, or they have prepared a conditional ABC license, which is, which was signed by the applicant and included in your report package as attachment four that has those sheriff recommended conditions. Should the board approve the PCN request, the sheriff's recommended business license conditions would also be included on their business license as conditions of approval. As I mentioned, staff is recommending approval of the PCN request. I can answer any further questions for the, from the board, and the business owner, as well as the applicant's representative, are in attendance and can answer questions, too. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Chris. All right. Other questions? Let's see. I'd be just, I do think that, since we're concerned, has spoken to that, it's probably another criteria that ought to be looked at, proximity to Safe Stay communities. I'm not so sure about the affordable housing complexes, but I do think that Safe Stay communities and where we have a concentration, a significant concentration of, between service stations, now obviously this market, but other, both 21s and 20s, and there are some, there are some on sale permits there as well.
That's correct.
Is that all included in the total?
No, that is not included in the total.
How many on sale licenses are there in that general vicinity?
I would have
There are some restaurants and bars.
There are absolutely restaurants.
Restaurants and bars.
Correct. And those are not included in the analysis that's prepared for the PCN reports, the PCN request.
For some reason, I thought that we used to have that data reported on. It's not relevant to the license being asked here. I mean, it doesn't screen them out, but to know, because again, it's not without some impact that, just because, because, because some of those that have on sale can actually do the off sale as well, depending upon what their license allows for. There are some bars that have the ability to do that. I mean, access to alcoholic beverages in this part of the world is not, not, not challenging, I mean, to say the least. And, and I remember some years ago, when it still was in District 5, that, you know, the Shell station at the corner came in for their PCN, and there were a couple of others along there. Obviously, again, you know, this is a core piece of what grocery stores do, and I think, you know, there's some distinction there, no question about it. But so you have eight, with this one, it'd be 18 off sales. Do we know what the number is for on sales?
I do not have that information. Based on my experience, we have not, at least recently, been providing Type 41s and Type 47 licenses as part of that one mile radius evaluation that we've prepared. That is something that we could prepare if, if the board desires to see that.
Yeah. And when it's a part of the, the evaluation, I think that it's important information because it shows, again, you know, and when you have commercial core areas, you have restaurants and taverns and, you know, bars and so forth. I get it, but I still think it's an important piece of information. And I guess, we haven't seen a whole host of these in recent times. I mean, we've had, you know, you know, a few each year. My recollection says that we used to see at least the 41s. I don't know about the 47s, but I think, again, it's a piece of information and, you know, this board and the community should know that that's at least accounted for, which it is, but I think in our information, you know, whether it becomes part of the evaluation or not, I think that's subject, obviously, to more board direction. But I would concur with my colleague that think that Safe Stay communities and the like should be at least included as a sensitive receptor. Okay. That's all I had. All right. I know everybody's set up, as I see the applicant here or representative, come forward, sir, and just put your name, put your name on the record and Thanks, Chris. Good morning.
Good morning. Hi, I'm Arthur Harris with Liquor License Network. We represent the client here. You've made a great point on the, I guess, the on sales. According to the ABC Act, and this may change later because of the COVID, off sales, I mean, on sales had off sale privileges, but very little off sale privileges, meaning they could only sell beer and wine to go. They couldn't sell hard liquor to go. And so they never put those two categories together. So when you apply for a public convenience or necessity letter, you never had to add 41s, 42s, 47s and 48s. Thus, one category. And then the 21s and 20s are a separate category, so they never counted both together. And that's something that, the reason why we didn't put that in our letter when we applied for the public convenience or necessity letter. So that's one thing that wasn't
Well, I appreciate that, because again, I think that's one of the things, and I, and I know there's been there's been certainly some inertia to actually retain the ability to, you know, sell, you know, not mixed drinks, but just a beer and wine to-go. And, you know, the emergency order, it doesn't end for a couple more months, but, you know, what happens after that? So again, I appreciate, you know, certainly what you've just outlined, and I think that it might be, though, that from a staff analysis, not so much for your application, I understand what you said, but I think going forward, and particularly, that's going to be the norm, if they're going to allow that going forward, you know, maybe with some additional notation on those 41s, 47s, that allows them to sell to-go. And actually, those are, you know, they're not sealed containers, right?
Right. When they have, I guess, when you have mixed drinks to-go and they're, they passed that temporary law for COVID, it made it easier, I guess, to help keep those guys in business. So I don't know how long that's going to stay, and they are not sealed. But other also thing I wanted to add is the applicant also has cameras inside and outside of the location to help try to deter any, I guess, these guys that's depending on alcohol to come in there and shoplift or anything like that.
Good. And I was going to say, this site used to be at Old Lucky Market a long, long time ago. Yeah.
Thank you for your time.
You bet. Any questions, Mr. Harris? All right, seeing none, then I'll bring it back to the board. Do we have anybody on the phone?
We do not.
Okay. Anybody here? We've got two other people in the audience, the applicant and... Okay, so I don't see anybody coming forward, so I'll bring it back. Mr. Kennedy.
Move staff recommendation.
All right, it's moving second to approve the staff recommendation.
Unanimous vote.
Very good. Thank you very much. Chris, do you need additional guidance out of this conversation, or you guys will, I mean, you didn't have full board direction on that. You had a couple comments by board members, so how do you want to proceed on that?
I think it would be helpful to note, what I took from the discussion is that an analysis of Safe Stay, proximity to Safe Stay communities should be included in the review. If that's the direction from the board, I think we can easily accomplish that.
I don't see any objections. And how about rolling the 41s, 47s, particularly in light of, I think, unless there's any objections, I think that'd be a good idea, at least for background information, whether it's part of the evaluation or not. I'll leave it to the planning department to determine that.
We can also accomplish that. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Okay. All right, that concludes the morning agenda. We do have a closed session immediately following, and then, oh, upstairs, and then we'll come back in at 2:00 for the Truth Act, and then we have one additional item and some, do you want the appointments?
If you don't mind, it will take me one minute, because that way you'll get it out of the way from tonight.
Yeah, we'll have it, yeah, so I'm sorry, yeah, let's do it very quick, and go to our appointments.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
It's okay, no. I have it right here in front of me. Go ahead.
That's item 67. Okay, you're continuing to December 13th, Adult and Aging Commission, County Service Area 4B, Slough House, Wilton, Kusumnus, Public Health Advisory Board, continuing to January 24th, Antelope Community Planning Advisory Council, Assessment Appeals Board, Building Board of Appeals, Cemetery Advisory Commission, Children's Coalition, Cordova Community Planning Advisory Council, Kusumnus Area Community Planning Advisory Council, County Service Area 4C, Delta, Delta Citizens Municipal Advisory Council, Developmental Disabilities Planning and Advisory Council, Elk Grove, Kusumnus Cemetery District, In-Home Supportive Services Advisory Committee, Local Child, Local Childcare Planning and Development Council, Maternal-Child and Adolescent Health Advisory Board, Natomas Community Planning Advisory Council, Orangeville Community Planning Advisory Council, Recreation and Park Commission, Sacramento County Behavioral Health Youth Advisory Board, Sacramento County Commission on the Status of Women and Girls, Sacramento County Treasury Oversight Committee, Sacramento County Youth Commission, South Sacramento Areas Community Planning Advisory Council, Southeast Area Community Planning Advisory Council, and the Veterans Advisory Commission, Carmichael Recreation and Park, Mr. Desmond.
Please continue to January 10th.
Carmichael Old Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council, Mr. Desmond.
Please appoint Brett Hodge.
So you want to waive it today and appoint, or you want to just nominate?
Just nominate.
Okay.
Equal Employment Opportunity Advisory Committee, Mr. Natoli.
Okay, Chief of Staff, recommend reappointment of Martin Ross, and continue the remainder to January 24th, 2023.
Thank you. Law Library Board of Trustees.
The Chief of Staff recommend reappointing Juteen Coleman.
North Highlands Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council, Supervisor Serna.
Please continue to January 24th.
And Supervisor Desmond.
Please reappoint Suzanne Yule, and continue the remainder to January 10th.
And Supervisor Frost.
Please continue to January 10th.
10th, okay, thank you. Real and Elverda Community Planning Advisory Council, Supervisor Frost.
Please nominate Nathaniel Royer.
And would you like to continue the remainder to January 10th?
Yes, I would. Thank you.
Sacramento County Alcohol and Drug Advisory Board, Supervisor Serna, I mean, Natoli.
The Chief of Staff recommend reappointing Jennifer Churchill, continue the remainder to January 24th, 2023.
Thank you. Sacramento County Mental Health Board, we'll start with Mr. Serna.
Please continue to January 10th.
Okay, and Supervisor Kennedy.
Nominate Patricia Wensel, and continue the remainder to January 10th.
Got it. And Mr. Desmond.
Continue to January 10th.
Ms. Frost.
Please continue to December 13.
Okay. And Mr. Natoli.
Continue to January 24th. I think my successor's getting a little time to do some interviews, so...
Aren't you kind? Okay. Sacramento Environmental Commission.
Chief of Staff recommend nominating Christine Casey, and continue the remainder to January 10th, 2023.
Okay, second to the last, Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Commission. Mr. Serna.
Yes, we'd like to reappoint Cecily Nunley.
Got it. Mr. Kennedy.
Continue to January 10th, please.
And Mr. Natoli.
Continue to December 13th, please.
December 13th, okay. Last one, Vineyard Area Community Planning Advisory Council, Mr. Kennedy.
Continue to January 10th, please.
And Mr. Natoli.
Continue to December 13th. We have a pending interview, so we'll try to have that ready for next week.
Got it. Okay, thank you. That took three or four minutes, sorry. Thank you.
That's right. Very good. Okay, that does conclude the morning's agenda, and so we'll go upstairs, close session, and return here 2:00 for the remainder of the balance of the agenda.
Good afternoon. Want to call back in the session the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors for the December 6, 2022 meeting, and want to welcome all who've joined us in chambers and those who may be joining us remotely. And as we get started, I want to make a couple quick announcements, that we do have an interpreter, Spanish-language interpreter in chambers, and if there are others who have, as their primary dialect and another language, we have the ability to arrange that through the phones, and our clerk, Flo Evans, and her staff would work with somebody if they wished to address the board in a language other than English. With that, I'm going to have Flo call the roll, establish a quorum, and then I'll talk a little bit about how we're going to structure the hearing here today, so...
Thank you. Supervisor Serna.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Desmond.
Here.
Frost.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Thank you, Flo. Also, would note that there was a request by a group following the Sheriff's Department will make the initial presentation, and we'll get to that in just a moment, then we had a request for a block of time, 21 minutes, as I understand it, so we will put that on the clock, and then the groups and the speakers can parse that accordingly to who's going to present for their team of folks. Also, we encourage folks, if you haven't signed up and wish to, I have some other speaker forms, we would encourage you to sign up, and then, do we have folks on the phone?
Let me do a quick check. It looks like...
Couple.
We do not.
Okay.
We have for another item, but not this one.
Okay, enough of this, now for item 64. Okay. All right, with that, then, unless there's anything procedurally, let's go ahead and call the item, and we'll get started.
Okay, this is to conduct Truth Act forum pursuant to Government Code Section 728.3.1, response to immigration and customs enforcement access to individuals in Sacramento County jails.
Okay, very good. I know we have our Sheriff's Department representative, I see Mr. Peterson, Mr. Nelly here, so it looks like Mr. Peterson got the short straw. Hello, Matt.
Good afternoon. So today, I'll be pres, I'll start with my introduction. I'm Chief Deputy Matt Peterson. I'll be presenting information today regarding the immigration and customs enforcement access to individuals in our custody for 2021. But before I go into that presentation, I think it's important to provide you with information that we discovered following last year's forum and the actions we've taken to address those concerns and the data that resulted. I take responsibility for not ensuring the accuracy of the information to Sheriff Jones last year. I want to assure you, it was not intentional, it was not meant to misrepresent any facts. There was a breakdown in communication between staff at the Rio Kusumnus Correctional Center and my support staff, so I did not receive the accurate information. But with that said, I ultimately take responsibility for that failure, and I apologize for that.
Well, thank you, Matt. Again, obviously, you know, accounting for that, and there's been some follow-on, and I trust you'll share that, but appreciate your public comments on that on behalf of the sheriff and the sheriff's department, so, thank you.
So I think it'll be helpful to start by explaining the process, that we use the direction that's given to our staff, kind of go over that, and then I'll share with you what we've found. So initially, upon receiving a detainer, our staff will enter that into our system and immediately cancel it with no action taken. So in 2020, we received 280 detainers. The next step occurs when we receive either a request for a notification or transfer from ICE. And with that information, our staff is supposed to verify whether that individual has a qualifying condition within SB 54, which would allow us to comply with that request. So some examples of individuals that would meet that criteria are people who are currently on the sex offender registry, people with prior serious and violent felonies like murder, robbery, rape, sexual crimes against children, human trafficking, or elder abuse. Those are just some of the ones that are included in those provisions. So upon verification of that criteria, our staff would enter that hold into our system and put it into abeyance, and then no action would be taken until that person is processed for release. During the release process, our staff would verify that criteria and make a notification to ICE to determine whether or not they plan to pick up that individual as a transfer. So regardless of the response, no one's release should be delayed whatsoever. Release will process whether ICE is going to come to get them or not, there's no delay in that process. And then with that, our staff was directed to document those notifications in the logbook at each facility. So during last year's forum in December, logbook entries were presented during the present, a different presentation, which indicated that our staff was not following those procedures that we had directed. Immediately after the forum, I thought it was very important to put some safeguards while we examined this, so we made the direction that no notifications to ICE would occur without being reviewed and approved first by either the captain or assistant commander of each facility. So wanted to have the highest level of scrutiny on these. And during that process, we did, we did learn that there was inconsistencies in record-keeping and processes amongst the different shifts in the facilities. So based on the procedures I just described, there should have been just the same number of notifications as entries in the logbook, right? Because there shouldn't have been anything more than that. In reality, there were entries for 17 different individuals during 2020, which we reported on last year. So I'll kind of break down what those 17 entries included, what we found. So the last year's presentation, there were, we presented that there were five qualified notifications, and three of those, out of those five, three were transferred to ICE, when in fact, based on our review, it showed that there were eight qualified notifications. Out of those eight, there were the three transferred that we knew of, but then there was one that was processed as a release and was picked up by ICE outside, and that was a qualifying conviction of a felony DUI. And that was, like I said, that was not within our direction, that was not supposed to happen. There were four qualified notifications that were all released and were not picked up by ICE. Last year, we reported that there were two that were released and not picked up, there were an additional two more that were not picked up upon release. We also discovered, and this is the most concerning, that there were five notifications for individuals that did not have qualifying convictions. Out of those five, two of them were picked up outside our facilities by ICE. So those, those five plus the initial eight leaves four remaining. Those four additional entries in the logbook were just simply people who had, originally had detainers in the system, and our staff just noted that they were, they had the detainers and released them. There was no notifications made at all. And with that, it really just shows the inconsistencies and the misapplication of the direction that we were given.
Matt, can I just ask you on that? So following your, certainly your review and deeper dive into it, we obviously had a third party that did it as well. So the information you're reporting is not a part of your slideshow, because it obviously goes back to a year ago and correcting the information, you're correcting that on the record. Where is the written aspect of what you're presenting here today, where somebody could go and take a look at, again, just as you've explained it verbally and have reviewed it? Is that in the report that the third party did, or is it something that you did separate and apart?
That's based on our internal review.
Yeah.
And I don't know, other than the notes I've made in preparation for this, as far as where that would be.
Okay. Yeah, just let me ask, Lisa, so Matt's putting it on the record, so we're getting an explanation after, again, his and other members of departments review, and I see Phil's punched in a second. But, so where, would this be logged as far as the information, beyond obviously archived on this, but this isn't really the official record, so, and again, I don't know if the third party may have looked at all of these things, and maybe in that report as well, but I'm curious.
Well, I would say that this is the official record, because there's not necessarily anywhere else that it would be logged. It's not required by law to have been done or completed, so I think that this is an appropriate place. Certainly, it could be...
But I'm a written reporter, I mean, Matt's giving it a...
The written report that has been authorized for release is included in this agenda packet.
Right. But what Matt, but what Matt's reporting on isn't in our packet. Right, Matt? Well, you're reporting on, because you're going back a year, you have a, your presentation's going to cover the current...
And that likely was covered in that investigation.
Okay.
I don't know if it's exactly what I'm stating here, because I haven't looked at the entirety of that.
Yeah, no, I wasn't even asking you to do that. I just, again, for, you know, people's identification, but also, obviously, we're going to have others away in here, and there's interest in this matter. Again, going back and correcting the record, and you're doing that verbally, important, but I just was wondering if there's a written record of it.
Yeah, I would say certainly if the Sheriff's Department would like to have a written correction, that could certainly be lodged with this agenda packet as well. I think this is the kind of only and slash best place to have that happen.
What if, yeah, what if board members want a written correction?
Certainly.
Okay.
Okay. Bill, go ahead, Bill.
Yeah, question here. So if I heard you correctly, last year, there were five individuals that, for whatever reason, didn't even qualify per the statute based on their offenses, and two of them were brought to the attention of ICE, is that correct?
All five were brought to the attention of ICE.
Okay. So what is the, so what happened to those individuals? Do you know?
Three of them were released. I don't know what happened to them.
Okay.
And then two were released, and we confirmed that ICE did pick them up.
Okay. Do we know after, do we know what happened to them following ICE taking them into custody?
I have no idea.
Is it fair to speculate that they could have been deported?
I can interject. I think two of the individuals were interviewed in the, by the investigators, and I don't recall right now what their status is, but I know at least one of them, I'm not going to say the names, but is still in custody, and I have been contacted by their attorney.
Okay.
And one, and, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, go ahead.
And I can't recall if both of them, but at least one of them was involved in litigation that you have seen in closed session that we have now settled. And again, the ACLU, and I don't know if it's the same folks that are here today, represented at least one of those individuals in that lawsuit, so they may be able to answer your specific questions.
So that's, you've kind of beat me to the punch. I was going to ask whether or not, based on the inconsistencies, I don't even know how to characterize what happened last year at this point, but based on not having a good understanding of what was being reported to ICE and what wasn't, are we satisfied at this point, we the county satisfied at this point, that there's no further legal liability from that from last year?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Matt, you were going to respond a moment ago. Were you going to respond? I asked about, I think Lisa suggested it could be a written follow-on to your notes.
Yeah, I would ask that I have the opportunity to discuss that with the sheriff on how he would like that handled.
That's fine. No, that's fine. Again, it's all out there on the record, and I appreciate, you know, certainly the depth that you're in, certainly the seriousness to which you're, you know, putting that forward. But again, it goes back to the information in these chambers a year ago that wasn't accurate, and you're now correcting the record. It's just that, unless somebody knows, look at this tape or there's a transcript somewhere, you know, it's going to be a little hard to, you know, align those. And again, we do have the report that was done by the third party, so that may, to the points both you and Ms. Travis may help with some of the alignment of that, so, okay.
I understand. Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead.
So before I go into the corrective steps that we've taken, I want to do the presentation for 2021. And I also ask that you keep in mind that this data presented for 2021 all occurred before we were aware of these inconsistencies. We found out at the end of last year that this was occurring.
Okay.
So for community activities, we have no coordinated activities or enforcement with ICE. We never inquire about immigration status. We never verify the status of arrestees or detainees, and we do not track or monitor or keep stats regarding that. However, we do have productive and valued partnerships with the Department of Homeland Security, which include the Central California Intelligence Center, Regional Threat Assessment Center, which is a statewide effort focused on combating terrorism and cybersecurity threats. We are part of a major narcotics task force, which includes homeland security investigators and other local, state, and federal partners. We have a homeland security investigator as part of our regional gang suppression task force. And the Department of Homeland Security is an affiliate agency of our Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force. None of these partnerships participate in immigration enforcement. Both of our facilities, the main jail and Rio Casuna Correctional Center, go on with that data. So in 2021, there were no ICE detainees held at the Rio Casuna Correctional Center, as you all knew, no. This body voted to not renew that contract in 2018, and by June 13th, there was no ICE detainees in custody. So in 2021, we received 106 immigration detainees. Those are that initial detainer that are immediately canceled out in accordance with the Trust Act. Interviews. So this is consistent for several years now. ICE has not conducted any interviews inside our facilities, and in comparison, law enforcement interviews, there's just over 1,800 that occurred in 2021. So these are the two qualified notifications that occurred during 2021. And I want to point out that the second one on the list, the offense is for felony evasion of law enforcement, like a vehicle pursuit in a felonious manner. So that one was notated in January in the logbook, and the staff that notated that said that this person did not have a qualifying offense. They were released from custody, processed as a release, and ICE picked them up outside the facility. During our review, we looked at this person's status, case history, and they in fact did have a qualifying offense, which is 2,800.2. So it was a mistake on our staff's part. The only, I guess, somewhat saving grace is that they actually did have a qualifying offense. But it just showed that that was still incorrect actions occurring by our staff in January of last year.
Is VC vehicle hood?
Yes, it is, sir. And the other one that was processed correctly as a transfer, that's for transportation of a controlled substance. That's where that section is. There were six additional notifications that were made that ICE elected not to pick up. I guess, on the last slide, the one that was processed as a transfer occurred in early March of '21, so that was the last transfer that occurred to ICE. And then this last notification where they elected not to pick up the individual occurred in September of '21. So Sheriff Jones was very clear in his direction to me to examine our process and put the necessary systems in place to ensure our compliance with the California Values Act. Now, I'll briefly describe the measures we've taken to accomplish that. We revised our post order, which is that policy that describes the direction that we were given that I explained, with the assistance of county council and with input and approval of the ACLU, so that our procedures are in line with and clearly describe the requirements contained in the Values Act. The new post order fills several gaps that contributed to misinterpretations and compliance failures. We created a revised reference list of qualifying conviction crime codes that the ACLU also reviewed and approved. We discontinued using the logbooks, which proved problematic because of the free-form nature of that and the different information that was included, and created forms that will capture the necessary information for data tracking and verification. Those forms will be maintained in a centralized binder at each facility, making them readily available for review. All employees were trained in the new procedures using the curriculum that was also reviewed and approved by the ACLU. The training has been placed in an online video platform and will be continued, continually provided to new employees. To also ensure compliance and approval through the chain of command, we maintain the requirement that any notification has to be reviewed and approved by the captain or the assistant commander of each facility. So all that has been put in place, and as of, referencing 2022, as of last week, we received 274 detainers from ICE, which were all canceled out, as I discussed before. There have been no ICE interviews in 2022, and we've made no notifications to ICE. They have not requested either notification or transfers so far this year in 2022. So as I close, I want to restate my apology for the inaccurate information that was presented last year. I understand the negative ramifications and perceptions that it created, and I hope the information I presented today will help begin, restore the trust that was damaged. Before I respond to additional questions, I'd like to make a request regarding the related resolution that Supervisor Serna is presenting today. We, as the sheriff's office, just became aware of that late last week. We have not had a chance to review or vet that. And as you all know, well, actually, based on my initial review, it appears that it may add additional restrictions beyond what is included in the law in SB 54. And so that I just respectfully ask, you guys all know that Sheriff Cooper will begin at the end of this week, and he was absolutely involved in the creation of SB 54 as an assemblyman, and I would just appreciate the opportunity to have, allow him to review this and provide any input before any action is taken on that item. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. All right, Supervisor Serna.
Great, thank you. Matt, I want to go back to the preface that you offered before you went through your slides relative to the 2021 figures. If I heard you correctly, you prefaced it by saying that the new intensified efforts to make sure that the information is accurate had not been deployed to that point. And so, correct me if I'm wrong, is that the case for 2021?
Correct. We learned about this in December.
Right.
So all this data for '21 already occurred.
Okay. So I guess the obvious, somewhat obvious question is, so how can we know whether the integrity of that data set is accurate? Do we, in other words, is it a product of the same, the same protocols that were in place for 2020?
Well, I think the difference being that in 2020, our staff, in both years, our staff is believing that they're doing the right thing, they're documenting what they're doing in these logbooks. And so they continue to document what they're doing in the logbooks, and they're not documenting these errors that we saw the year before. And I think what we did, and to your level of certainty, I don't know how confident you can be, but our staff, we poured through everything we could, we looked through every single record we could find, and we really tried to do as an exhaustive examination of anything, everything related to this as we could. And so, other than just the assurance that I can provide you that we did the best we could, we examined everything we could examine to get that, to get that information.
All right. I just want to make sure I heard it correctly, that this doesn't, the figures you showed and recited to the public, don't, they don't have the benefit of the new protocols that you spent a good amount of time explaining going forward?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And then, in terms of the request, I guess, Mr. Chair, I would respectfully suggest that we move forward today with the resolution. I don't know whether or not county council's office had made any attempts to reach out to the sheriff's department or not, but I think, without trying to, without convoluting things, quite frankly, I would, as a member of this board, have liked the courtesy of hearing from the incoming sheriff on a couple of issues, not the least of which is what we're going to be hearing tomorrow, and we had to find out through social media, you know, his position. So, you know, that's a two-way street in terms of courtesy. So there's been a good amount of effort put into date on the resolution. I think it's up to this board to vote it up or down, and that's certainly the prerogative of each of us, but I would suggest that we stay on track today to consider the resolution as is.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Serna. All right, county council.
Thanks. Just to respond to the question from Supervisor Serna, I did not, and I don't believe a member, any members of my office, reached out to the sheriff's department, because as was evident from the resolution and the board letter, it is being just drafted by county council on Supervisor Serna's behalf, so I don't think it was appropriate for our office to do that, so I did not.
Yep.
Okay. I just wanted to ask, Matt, so if we're going to acknowledge your request on behalf of the incoming sheriff, are there sections in the resolution that are problematic? Because again, if we're going to have that conversation, I sort of don't want to belabor this right now, but we're going to come back to it, certainly at Member Serna's request, does it go beyond what 254 either provides for, or are the things, again, you're not the legal expert, but again, obviously, you've reviewed it and to some degree, I guess. So are there things you want to point out, or you just want to leave a request standing? Because again, I would be interested to know what it is that may be problematic, again, as we take this up this afternoon.
I cannot speak fully to that.
Yeah, okay.
Like I said, I'm not the legal expert, but based on my first take on it, I believe, the way I read it, it eliminates the sheriff's discretion to make notifications for qualifying And that would be the main issue that I saw. There were some other things too, but.
And maybe 254 provides for, and you mentioned some of those in some of your opening comments, those offenses where the sheriff has discretion to notify?
Correct.
Are they, is the sheriff required to, or is the discretion always vested?
It's law enforcement officer's discretion.
It is, okay. Even on a homicide or rape or something like that, it's still law enforcement discretion?
It's discretionary, yes.
It is, irrespective of the type of criminality, okay, the felony offense, okay. All right, Supervisor Desmond, and then county council again.
Don't know if you had a.
It's up to you.
Go ahead.
Yeah, and I don't know if this is what Chief Deputy Peterson is talking about, but there are, there is a portion in, they're not numbered, but it's the third part of the resolution, the third, be it resolved, that arguably does limit the ability to cooperate voluntarily with ICE, because it requires that they can cooperate only if authorized pursuant to judicial warrant or probable cause determination, which is defined in the law. But the law also allows for voluntary cooperation in certain circumstances, such as the ones that were presented today. So I don't know if that's the portion that he is referring to, but there is an argument that that could be restricting their abilities to some extent.
Is this something that this board, though, has the authority to implement?
Yes.
Okay.
And other counties around the state have done so, in fact, have gone quite a bit farther than this resolution, but it would be up to the board as to whether or not you wanted to amend that section to clarify that you wouldn't want it to go farther than SB 54, but that is the section that he may or may not be referring to.
Okay, that helps. Matt, anything else you want to comment on that? Okay. Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I'm looking at the, and I'll preface this with, first of all, you know, thank you, Matt, for accepting responsibility unequivocally. That is, it's very disturbing what we learned after the hearing last year and what our subsequent investigation, you know, revealed. And, you know, my conversations with you, I think you understand that, and the sheriff's department certainly understands the importance that this body places on complying with SB 54. You know, I, as a member of a law enforcement agency for 24 years, I had the privilege myself of being involved in the creation of SB 54, and there's a lot of people who, a lot of my constituents, frankly, don't like the fact that, you know, I was involved in it, but I'm very proud of it. I think, I think, I think the California Values Act struck a good balance, and I think it's, it's the role of local and state law enforcement, the state of California, to help people, protect people, help create safe communities and create environments where the public knows that they can, they can trust, they can come to their local law enforcement and state law enforcement, of course, in my situation, and know that they are going to be protected, they're not going to be looked at based on their immigration status. And I firmly believe that. But I do also really, really agree with the exceptions that were carved out in SB 54. And I know that then Assemblymember, you know, Cooper, was also involved in trying to create some of those exceptions. So I'm kind of, I am struggling myself a little bit with the fact that he hasn't weighed in, and I absolutely understand where Supervisor Serna is coming from, but I, you know, county council says. where Supervisor Serna is coming from, but I, you know, County Council says it wasn't communicated to him directly. So, I, I'm struggling with that a little bit, but I guess I'll, I'll just ask, I'm looking at the, the board letter, which I was thinking of as a staff report when I talked to you earlier, the, the board letter, the staff report, which references the resolution in the context of SB 54 reaffirming our support for it, for the California Values Act, which I, I support. I support certainly the language of the resolution, and if the intent of the resolution is to affirm this board's support, the county's support for SB 54, the limitations contained therein, as well as some of the limited exceptions contained in it, I certainly support that. So, I guess I would just ask the author, you know, Supervisor Serna, is that your intent, or was your intent to go beyond some of the exceptions contained in SB 54?
To be frank with you, it was really using, as County Council mentioned, taking what other counties had adopted and not reinventing the wheel. But also, as County Council mentions, you know, not going as far as some of the other jurisdictions have gone, and kind of trying to find that right balance. So, again, I think we should also understand that, and I know it's happenstance, but the fact that this came to a head during a general election is part of the issue too, because of the timing. So, do you know whether or not Sheriff-elect Cooper was interested in even being here today to communicate directly?
I have not talked to him.
Okay, all right.
Can we ask, I'm sorry, Mr. Jones, do you know, did you have a conversation by any chance with the sheriff-elect about... Oh, Eric, Eric.
Oh, Eric.
Sorry, Mr. Jones. About, about this resolution today, and about his reviewing it, or, or giving us his opinion about it?
So, good afternoon. Eric Jones, Deputy County Executive, Public Safety and Justice. No, I have not spoken to him about this, and I, I wasn't aware of the wording in this resolution until late last week.
Can I, could I just point something out, that this resolution was made public when? Thursday? Thursday. It's not a treatise by any means. The sheriff-elect had the, presumably had the opportunity over the course of four days to review it, and if not, if he wasn't going to be here, he could have submitted in writing, in his capacity as sheriff-elect, precisely what his objections or concerns might be. But instead, we have been issued a kind of a very general courtesy request to delay it. And again, I just, I'd find that a little disingenuous. And again, I think that, you know, we need to act today because this is the annual time each year that we focus on this matter. And having gone through what we did last year to only delay, delay a resolution that memorializes our expectations as a board and as a county about the, about the Truth Act, I think is a bit of an insult. So, again, I would respectfully ask my colleagues to, to understand that, and let us consider it today.
And through the chair, I have one clarification when the timing is correct. Okay, so I did not have a discussion with Sheriff-elect Cooper. I did have a discussion with under, soon-to-be under Sheriff Mike Ziegler, who did air concerns about it not having the exceptions listed in SB 54, but not the sheriff-elect himself.
And he too could have offered in writing what those specific objections are, but unless he offered them to you, okay.
Yeah, okay. So, that's it, Mr. Jones, at this point?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. So Supervisor Frost and Supervisor Desmond.
Okay. I just want to say that it seems like there are times when it is appropriate and necessary for the sheriff to use his discretion in communicating with ICE over whatever that might be, and those exceptions were included in SB 54. And I also feel like it's to presume that the sheriff-elect would be here five minutes after we voted on, you know, installing him, and he hasn't even had, you know, gotten to his office and been, had his ceremonial installation. To do this without giving him at least the courtesy of reviewing it seems not fair. And I think we need his input, since he's our new sheriff. I think he should have the opportunity to have some, have a chance to review it and be a part of the process and not be rushed through it. So, I wish we could, you know, if you're, if this is really important to you, Supervisor Serna, I wish, I hope you might consider moving it forward to a time when the new sheriff is on board and can have had a chance to review it.
May I respond to that? I know you have others in queue. I might otherwise have a little more empathy for that position. However, the sheriff-elect has already been advocating in his capacity on what's going to be before us tomorrow, and in fact, doing so very boldly and very publicly. And so, it seems to me that's very selective at this point. Again, if that wasn't the case, I might, you know, feel differently, but that's not the case, as we all know.
Well, I mean, if I, I don't want to go back and forth, I just want to say, that's a whole nother issue, and this is one issue.
But you're, but you're mentioning his capacity as sheriff-elect and not being seated, and I'm saying, okay, fine, but let's look what he's done holistically in the last, you know, couple of weeks.
Yeah, I mean, I, I understand, you know, what you're saying, but I think this potentially goes beyond what the intention of SB 54 was, and I think our new sheriff has, out of respect for his position, he should have a right to participate and have input on this before we vote on it. I mean, he should at least be a part of the, it seems like that would be the proper thing to do. I'm, I'm not going to be able to support it in this way. I think it's rushing, and I don't know why we have to rush this, why we can't let him get on board and be a part of the whole process.
All right, Supervisor Desmond, then Supervisor Serna.
So, I have a question about the resolution, you know, and it's, and it's a, you know, it's really, it's a statement of our values, and I, and there's, there's not many, there's really nothing I can, I can think of that I disagree with in this resolution. I guess my, my question is, would, would the, you know, Supervisor Serna, would you be amenable to maybe a reference to the Values Act that, you know, something that says, hey, it still preserves some of the, the exceptions in the Values Act, except perhaps the additional notification provisions, which I happen to like, I think that's, that's good. Would you, would you entertain that?
So, where would that go?
I don't know. I guess I, I'll look to our County Council. Is there, could we possibly make a reference to it, just to make it clear that it, it still preserves those, the exceptions contained within the Values Act?
You certainly could. I was just looking at it. I think it was the third further resolved that talks about not using county personnel, property, time, or labor. You could certainly just add a sentence at the end saying, except as explicitly allowed in the, the Values Act, and we could cite the Government Code section at the end of that sentence.
Be amenable to that.
Okay. All right. Very good. Any other questions or comments at this juncture? If not, then thank you, Ms. Peterson, and we'll go into our public comment. We do have a presentation. So, I'm going to call forward Ronda Rios-Crabitz and Gabby Trillo, I think, are part of, in the ACLU, I know we have a presentation, so I don't know what order, I'm going to put 21 minutes. So, however you order that, I've been, within, yeah, Ron. Come forward, Ron, so we can get, we can get on the record.
Board clerk, I think you're going to be asked a question here.
Oh, okay, okay.
The order was...
Okay, I have it here, okay.
Yeah, it would be Carlos first, and then Brian, then followed by Sherina, myself, and Gabby.
Okay, very good. Okay, we have that then, all right?
Thank you.
My oversight. Okay, all right, thanks. Okay, with that, then, we have a presentation. Let me get the 21 minutes on the clock here, just one second. Okay, Mr. Montez Ponce.
Hello, welcome. Welcome, sorry. Yeah, welcome to me, right? Well, first of all, thank you for providing this time for us to speak to you all regarding the Truth Act Forum this year. We definitely appreciate it. We definitely appreciate this opportunity, and just want to note that this is a presentation on behalf of all of us from the Sacramento Immigration Coalition. And just to provide some context in regards to the Truth Act, for those viewing today, for those perhaps viewing later, I'm going to be providing some background. So, why the Truth Act Forum? Just quickly, this is the clicker, right? Just, all right, perfect. So, why the Truth Act Forum? Well, this forum is being held pursuant to the transparent review of unjust transfers and holds Truth Act Government Code Section 7283 and 7283.1. The Truth Act requires the local governing body of any county or city in which local law enforcement has provided ICE access to an individual during the previous year to hold a community forum to provide information to the public about ICE's access to individuals and to receive and consider public comment of what we're doing here today, given the fact that in the history of the Truth Act Forum and just the history overall with, here in Sacramento County, we were a county that at one point had a contract with ICE, you know, with the Sheriff's Department. So, that's just clarification and historical context for those viewing and who may be viewing at a later time. So, just some additional background. So, since 2018, the Sacramento County Sheriff's Office has voluntarily handed over at least 156 community members to U.S. Immigration and Customs Enforcement, otherwise known as ICE. And to clarify for folks viewing, a jail-to-ICE transfer, or ICE, or ICE transfer is, occurs when an immigrant community member in county jail is allowed to be released, but is instead handed over to ICE for detention and deportation, some of which we have seen in, in previous years. And currently, the Sacramento County Sheriff's Office actively communicates, or has actively communicated at some points with ICE and has allowed ICE into the jail for, you know, to interview community members, and, you know, some of them, some of which have resulted in deportations and, you know, in further detention. And then, touching on to the next point...
Can I just stop? I'm not going to...
Yes.
So, that's contrary to what Mr. Peterson just said. You say currently, currently means, so that, when you, are you going back a year or two?
Yeah, sorry, I'm going back to also provide some context for folks, sorry about that.
That's what I know, because when you say currently, I just, because I know, Mr. Peterson said there were no interviews last year, and there was no, you know, outside of what he cited in the information. I just wanted to be clear on, on that. Historically, obviously, going back several years, as you're talking about, you're referencing that, so, okay, all right, thanks.
All right. And then, being going to be touching on one of the main points, which was referenced by the sheriff, the department, which is, you know, ACLU did sue to bring Sacramento County Sheriff's Office practices into compliance with state law. And just, I know that some of you here, you know, all the board members here are aware regarding the, our lawsuit that ACLU put forward. I just want to touch on some major components of the settlement. I know their community members have asked, have had a lot of questions. We're only going to be touching on these three points as we're moving forward right now, which one is, you know, some items were briefly mentioned, but just reiterating that these acts of compliance came about until the lawsuit occurred. So, one being is that locking in changes to policies and trainings that are consistent with state law. Sacramento County and the Sacramento County Sheriff's Office will conform their policies to the legal requirements of the Truth Act, AB 2792, and the Values Act, SB 54. The other point being monitoring, there will be five years of monitoring during which the plaintiffs and their councils will be entitled to internal document demonstrating how the Sacramento County Sheriff's Office is implementing its ICE notification and transfer policies. And the third major component of the lawsuit is court intervention if Sacramento County Sheriff's Office is violating the agreement. So, the settlement includes a dispute resolution process for five years, allowing us to go back to court if we believe the county or the Sacramento Sheriff's Office have violated the agreements slash law. Now, all of this isn't to say that, you know, the sheriff will act in this capacity. We're only implying here that due to what has occurred in the past, these, these agreements and these components of the settlement have been made in order to prevent, you know, any, any further misunderstanding or miscommunications. And for us to also have a method, a proven, a method in which we can go back and review, giving an opportunity to, to work alongside with each other in a more productive manner. So, stating our main point, why we're here today as a collective coalition, we're here today to really ask for the following. A resolution to end all county entanglement with ICE, just so you know that we don't have to go, be in these, in these situations. Like I mentioned earlier, yes, you know, there's been these great changes that have been done, but these changes came about due in large part to the settlement with the ACLU and our partners. And then, earlier today, I heard you all speak about imagining, to some degree, a more just Sacramento, which is exactly what we like to see here too. You know, these decisions that are being made, it's an opportunity for us to rebuild trust with our community, you know, with our immigrant community, with members, you know, of our, you know, of our coalition. We, granted, you know, we've been working with all of you back and forth for numerous years. This isn't our first time working together. We've been working for a number of years, and we hope that, you know, this provides an opportunity for us to work together in a much more, you know, continue to just improve our relationship. Touching on that point earlier that was made by the sheriff, and I know this is, this will probably always be an ongoing back and forth amongst us, is just that the United States v. California states, sorry, the United States versus California, it essentially states that states and localities have legal authority to end all ICE cooperation, meaning there is nothing in the federal regulatory scheme requiring states to alert federal agents before releasing a state or local inmate. Now, we're not blindsided to the fact that we understand that under certain situations, you know, there, there is some communication. We're not blind to that, but, you know, historically, we saw a lot of our demands not being met, a lot of our demands not being considered, you know, by the Sheriff's Department. As such, you know, we just want to bring back forth this point, you know, as we're speaking about our values as a county, our values as a community, that reminding, you know, there's really nothing that says, you know, there, this, this level, the cooperation has to, has to exist. And we just want to bring this point forward because we want to evade any further confusion or mishaps in the future. And then, just to reiterate some points, imagining a more just Sacramento, we want to just bring back this point, which is despite advocates, despite the advocates here and the advocates that were present before in the other Truth Act Forums, numerous requests have, had been made in the past with the Sacramento County Sheriff's Office, and although we do appreciate those corrections that are being made, you know, these new procedures that have been made, we just want to highlight that, you know, at the end of the day, the reason that we chose to move forward suing was because of this lack of, 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 you know, the sheriffs complying with, with the, with the state law. Also, this, you know, despite these unlawful practices being identified at the past Truth Act Forums, the Sacramento County Sheriff's Office did not act to comply with state law until after the lawsuit was filed. And right now, at this time, this is, this is the ideal time to create a more just Sacramento County, because the COVID pandemic has temporarily, temporarily reduced the number of ICE arrests, you know, in this, you know, and I'm talking about this within also historical context, you know, up until now. So, we, I think right now is the perfect time where we can implement a vision for immigrant justice in Sacramento without really asking at this point the Sacramento County Sheriff's Office to radically change its current practices, but rather, you know, adopt, you know, the resolution beforehand as well. And, you know, just also that the lawsuit alone isn't going to solve the issues that, you know, may come up in the future. This is going to be an ongoing process in order to further protect our immigrant communities and rebuild the trust between public officials and those communities. And we can choose to do more than, than just the bare minimum. We can choose to do more than just go... And we can choose to do more than just the bare minimum. We can choose to do more than just go, you know, we can choose to go beyond just compliance. So we ask, you know, that moving forward, we do imagine that more just Sacramento community that we all want to see. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer. We can move it along to my next person here, Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Ponce. Any questions of Carlos? Okay, if not, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, Mr. Lopez. Brian. Good afternoon.
Oh, I'm sorry. Good afternoon. In the meantime, my name is Brian Lopez. I'm the president of the Cruiser Nosso Bar Association. As we're preparing for the slides to appear on the screen, I just want to thank each of you for the opportunity to present on this issue and for your consideration, in particular, the consideration of Senator Serna's proposal.
I've been promoted.
Maybe one day, but for right now, excuse me, Supervisor Serna.
Not gonna happen.
In any event, so we do ask that as the board prepares to weigh the resolution proposal, to keep in mind three key facts. So number one, the Sacramento County Sheriff's Office has had ample time and opportunity to comport its policies and practices regarding collaboration with ICE in a manner that is compliant with California law. Number two, the many violations discovered throughout the years, along with the lack of transparency, poor record keeping, and the shifting of blame that we've seen from the Sheriff's Office displays an endemic issue which cannot be left solely to the department's oversight. Number three, violations by the Sheriff's Office place the county and the community at grave risk of harm. Now, while some harm may be compensable at taxpayer expense, other harm may be irreparable. So with regard to item one, it's important to note that the California legislation regulating local law enforcement collaboration with ICE did not begin in 2018 with SB 54. In fact, the California Trust Act was the precursor legislation that put such agencies on notice about their legal responsibilities and obligations in working with ICE. Now, since the enactment of the Trust Act on January 1st, 2014, state and local law enforcement agencies have been required to limit their collaboration with ICE absent certain circumstances similar to those outlined in SB 54. I'll note very briefly that the Sheriff's Office said that they have canceled all detainee requests under the Trust Act. I question whether that's accurate. We know from the IG's report that they were proactively communicating with ICE about detainees. How did they know how to, who proactively communicate with ICE about that detainee's release about? Did they just say, "You look foreign, so we're going to contact ICE to see"? There must have been some type of communication. I suspect it was through those trust, or, excuse me, those detainee requests.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Yeah. On that point, I don't mean to interrupt the flow of your presentation, but I want to understand what you just said. Is that, are you claiming that currently? Are you claiming that before the, these new protocols were in place or for a particular year, 2021?
I'm speaking from 2014 to the present. I don't know what's been going on since the lawsuit, what measures they've taken. We've heard just generally, but I think, you know, because of the problems that we've seen in the past, it's hard to take the sheriffs at their word. And I think there's a little bit more oversight that needs to be, needs to be done by the board.
Great, thank you.
So with this history in mind, it's all the more troubling that today, in December 2022, nearly a decade later after the passage of the Trust Act, we're still finding out the Sheriff's Office has not only failed to implement California state law accordingly, but that internal documents support that their policies and practices were either unclear and insufficient at best, or designed to outright circumvent the law's protections at worst. So with regard to point two, it is apparent from the Inspector General's report that the Sheriff's Office has not made adequate efforts to comply with California law so as to prevent violations. The investigation conducted by the IG found that there were clear SB 54 violations in each calendar year between 2018 and 2021, with the Sheriff's Office employees proactively communicating with ICE on a regular basis about the release of detainees who were not SB 54 qualified. Now, the IG's review also found that in many cases, employees of the Sheriff's Office were making such notifications to ICE in order to facilitate the transfer of the individuals, quote, "outside the gates of the jail," unquote, implying that the sheriff's policies were designed so that such transfers were to be conducted in a way to attempt to skirt the law's protections. So now, while the Sheriff's Office has said that these problems were merely a result of a misunderstanding of a few of its officers, it can offer no communications, memoranda, or other form of clarification which it issued to its employees so as to remedy these alleged misunderstandings. So making matters worse and even more worrying, the IG's report also found that in cases where the Sheriff's Office has alleged that it acted lawfully in transferring an individual to ICE who was supposedly SB 54 qualified, its own record keeping prevents a substantive review for even its own department to confirm. Now, upon being queried by the Inspector General about the potential for erroneous categorization of individuals as SB 54 qualified, the Sheriff's Office responded that they, quote, "do not possess sufficient records with names or identifiers to cross-reference with the limited information on the DOJ reports," unquote. Thus, the Sheriff's Office itself is unable to support that its actions were, in fact, in compliance with California law in retrospect. Finally, with regard to point three, as lawsuits throughout the years have made clear, the Sheriff's Office practices have opened the county to liability for its failure to meet its responsibilities under the law. After the passage of the aforementioned Trust Act, the Sheriff's Office did not proactively implement the law into its policies, leading to a Sacramento resident by the name of Martin Delawa suing the county after he'd been detained by the Sheriff's Office for longer than permitted under an ICE detainee request. Now, the county settled with Mr. Delawa, and the Sheriff's Office committed itself to correcting the issues in accord with the settlement. However, as the board is aware, the county was again sued this past year after other similar offenses came to light, which led to unlawful notifications and transfers to ICE in violation of SB 54. Allowing the Sheriff's Office to continue on this path will only lead to more financial harm for our county and then taxpayers footing the bill for the department's violations. And the impact to the county and the community is also paramount to the board's consideration of how it should move forward to protect the county's residents in light of these issues. On an individual level, those who are transferred to ICE in violation of California law face risk of deportation, separation from their families, along with a host of other countless collateral consequences. As a result, once removed from the country, an individual faces often insurmountable obstacles and barriers to seeking a remedy under the law for a violation of their rights. On a community level, the impact of allowing further violations will also be multiple fold, with the end result being that many of the members of the community will lose faith in law enforcement, lose faith in their county officials as well. This will lead to the underreporting of crimes, which in turn will promote the creation of more victims in our communities. Further, members of the communities may justifiably feel that the county and its officials are either complicit in or indifferent to their suffering as a result of the violation of their rights done in the county's name. So we implore the county to pass this resolution offered by Supervisor Serna as it will not only send a clear message to the Sheriff's Office and the county's residents about the board's resolve to protect its residents in line with California law, it will also allow the board a mechanism to maintain oversight over the Sheriff's Office to ensure that any future violations will be properly addressed and corrected. After such a long and troubled history on these issues, the board can no longer allow the Sheriff's Office to subject the county and its residents to further harm for the department's failure to meet its duties as a law enforcement agency to itself follow the law. So we thank you again for your time and attention to this matter, and we urge you to vote yes on this resolution. I will just briefly mention, the reason that we chose, that I think Supervisor Serna decided to propose this resolution that goes beyond SB 54 is because SB 54 is already the law. We can see that the sheriff has not complied with the law. The reason that we would like to see it more limited is because we want the sheriffs to take a closer look and view these issues more closely in order to justify their actions. There is an oversight mechanism in the resolution which would allow the sheriff to come to the board and say, "I acted this way contrary to the resolution because X." And if the board so determines that it's justifiable, that there was a valid notification under SB 54 that was made, give him the opportunity to do that. But the fact that they have not been able to comply with the law up until this point says to me that they should not have that responsibility to make those determinations because it's going to result in more errors, more violations, more liability, more harm. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. I'm going to do a little time check here. I know we have Shereen and Gabby and Rhonda, and we're down to five minutes I can allow.
Our comments will be very, very...
That's okay. I was gonna, I can give you just a little more time. I just wanted to do, I guess, again, I know it's important to get the information out there, so, all right, Shereen, go ahead.
Yeah, and we have a...
Oh, I'm sorry, Sue Frost had a question.
It's coming up.
Shereen, just one second. It's, wait, okay, all right. Go ahead, Shereen.
Okay. So I'm Shereen Miles, a constituent of Rich Desmond. I am with Sacramento Area Congregations Together, which is one of the 40 organizations that are a member of the Sacramento Immigration Coalition. As we have heard, this is our fifth Truth Act Forum, each one has been triggered by releases of community members to ICE in violation of state law. Our group has been patiently working and responsibly working with the Board of Supervisors all of this time to address this problem. So let's see, next. Our goals overall is that we would hope as a community that we can build increased community trust, that we can, of course, stop law enforcement cooperation with ICE, that we can spend local resources on our community, not on immigration enforcement. We hope today that we will pass a resolution ending all funding and referral of immigrants to ICE. And we are also hoping that we can ask the Board of Supervisors to encourage meetings with immigration advocates, the board itself, the Office of Inspector General, the sheriff, and the Community Review Commission. We're doing this because we don't like to be complicit in a broken immigration system. Sacramento County is using limited resources, our taxpayer dollars, to subsidize a broken federal immigration system and an unaccountable federal immigration system. I think if you read the report that was done, the investigation, you saw that ICE had no response when they, when the investigators asked them to weigh in on this. Whenever we voluntarily cooperate with ICE, resources are diverted away from local communities. They should go toward programs that build up our communities, not tear them down and make us all less safe. And by failing to hold our sheriff accountable, we are all complicit. As we've talked about today, detention and deportation are an extra punishment for immigrants. They face banishment from the U.S. and permanent separation from their families, even after settling previous offenses within the criminal justice system. So we can demonstrate here in Sacramento County that we value second chances, which are not possible in a system that subjects immigrants to a second and disproportionately disproportionate punishment solely because they're immigrants. Rhonda.
Thank you, Shereen. Hello, Rhonda.
My name is Rhonda Rios Kravitz, and I'm proud to be here today and want to thank all of you for being willing to hear our comments and support for a resolution. We are here, and I know I only have a few minutes, so I'm just going to go over these quickly, but as Brian and others have stated, we really need to rebuild community trust, and we are less safe because of this lack of trust. So our goal is really to build relationships with the Board of Supervisors, with the incoming Sheriff-elect Cooper, with the OIG, the Community Review Commission, through hopefully regularly established meetings with the Sacramento Immigration Coalition to address the issues that are constantly coming up. We care about keeping our communities intact and keeping families together. Deportation tears families apart with little or no discretion, causing irreparable harm, including to children left behind. And we cannot stress enough that cooperating with ICE leads to community harm. We are advocating, not in this resolution, but we will continue to advocate for ending ICE transfers. And we saw in an August 21st poll done by the U.S. Immigration Policy Poll at the UC San Diego and with the Asian Americans Advancing Justice, that 80% of respondents say that they agree or strongly agree with the statement, regardless of what country a person was born in, they should be released from prison or jail after completing their sentences. And that went across. So you saw Democrats, 88%, Republicans, 54%, independents, 68% agreed or strongly agreed with the statements. And we know that counties have ceased and have a stronger resolution than ours to cease transfers to ICE, and that includes Los Angeles, San Francisco, Santa Clara, Contra Costa, Santa Cruz, San Joaquin, Marin, San Mateo, and Humboldt. Daly City ended ICE collaboration in 2021, and they did this as a result of a suit. It's clear that the majority of Californians support strengthening the protections immigrant Californians have against ICE enforcement. In addition, they say immigrants should be allowed to rebuild their lives after serving their prison time, not be deported. So now is the time for us to join other California counties and act a strong county-level policy limiting assistance with deportations. Together, we can really provide clear distinctions between our sheriffs' local responsibility to enforce criminal law and the federal government's responsibility to enforce civil immigration law. Without enacting stronger county-level policies, we continue to put our immigrant residents at risk by keeping their localities enmeshed with the deportation pipeline. Sacramento County has tremendous power to make a real difference in keeping families together. This is the time to join the many other counties enacting a strong county-level policy. We hope today you will pass this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Rhonda. Okay, I know Gabby wants to speak. I'm going to put two more minutes up on the clock here so that Gabby has the option to address this. Just give me a second here.
Thank you, good evening. My name is Gabby Trejo. I'm the executive director for Sacramento Act. And for those of you that don't know, ACT is guided by our principles based on faith, justice, and inclusion, and really, hope. I want to read a piece of scripture that is, comes from my faith tradition, from Isaiah 10:1 to 2. "Hold to those who make unjust laws, to those who issue oppressive decrees, to deprive the poor of their rights, and withhold justice from the oppressed of my people." Supervisors, the state of California passed a just law. It's called the Trust Act. And clearly, data has confirmed, the stories that we have brought together over the years has been, I've been standing before you for 10 years, sharing the testimonies and the stories of people that we engage on day-to-day basis, sharing how they have been trapped when this, there is this collaboration between our local Sheriff's Department and ICE. And so right now, you have the opportunity to really ensure that those folks that have been deprived, which is our immigrant community of their rights, are, you know, really seen, right? And I want to thank you, Supervisor Serna, for being courageous enough to say we have to pass a resolution and actually level up to the rest of our state, who has, actually, all the resolution is doing is bringing us up to speed to where we should have been when the Trust Act was passed originally. It is, to me, a little bit concerning that, you know, I understand that there is an incoming sheriff, and as Supervisor Serna mentioned, he's already made statements about something else that we will be here for tomorrow on, speaking on behalf. And we, as a community, are told a Thursday, Friday, before you're going to make important decisions about our community, and yet, as organizers, we have to turn around and get our people in here to permit testimony. We require the same level of consideration because our communities, you're making important decisions about our communities, and I want to urge you to please don't stall the process of doing this resolution, because the resolution doesn't take us beyond, you know, SB 54 or the Truth Act. It is urgent. One person being miscategorized and deported is one person too many.
Thank you, Gabby. Okay, Supervisor Frost, and then I'm going to go to our speakers. You want to wait? Want to hear speakers? Okay, all right. Thanks to our presenters. Now, we have folks have signed up individually, so I have Bishop Chris Baker, followed by Elvia Vasquez, and then Mackenzie Wilson. Chris, good afternoon.
You know, excuse me, I have a lot I can say as I studied this personally myself, but as I came here and looked at the screens, I can see there's a lot of changes that need to be made. I'm not here to point the finger at no one. Is there changes to be made within the Sheriff's Department? Yes, it is. Is there changes to be made within our own personal lives? Yes, it is. But the way we're going to make those changes is work together and not keep pointing fingers on something that happened eight, nine years ago. Now, I want to get to law enforcement, and I'm not afraid to stand here and say I'm a strong law enforcement supporter. But if there's some wrong done by a law enforcement officer or officers, I will be the first one to stand there and say, "You're wrong. You need to be dealt with." But I will not sit here and keep listening to, "They did this, they did that." Why don't we talk about what we can help them do in not, in order not to complete what they did before? Now, if we take that energy and work with them and fix these inaccuracies that we're so talking about, I think we'll be a better Sacramento County. Again, I say, is there changes needed in the sheriffs? Yes, it is. But what do we do? Do we work with them, or do we just keep... Do we work with them, or do we just keep coming here, talking about this, talking about that? I've read the Truth Act resolution. I was confused on a lot of things. I'm not a legal person. I'm not a law enforcement officer. But what I did read, we do need to make some changes. And I'm not afraid to stand here and say, again, I support law enforcement, I strongly do. There needs to be some changes, but it's not going to stop me from supporting them. And I support the Board of Supervisors, their decisions, and I heard a comment about faith, of scripture, and I'm not up here to criticize that. But it's also, as some of you know, I'm strong in my faith, in a leader in the faith community. There's also scripture that says, "Those that God has set before you, the magistrates, and you commit a crime, you shall suffer the consequences of those magistrates that were set before you." And I strongly suggest, in this resolution, I wasn't going to speak of this because I don't know the metrics of it, but as I was listening, I strongly suggest there's a clause in there that if we have some serious criminals, whether their status or what culture they are, what race, and like I heard the deputy say, heinous felonies, child molesters, or drug traffickers, whatever case may be, and it requires that criteria, we should have a right to hold them for that particular agency, if it meets the criteria of what you all was talking about. I don't think we should do away 100% with it. I think something should be left in there to give them opportunity if it is a heinous felony crime. And I leave you with that, and I thank you for the opportunity. I hope you all can come to the minds and agree together and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. I think the resolution we have to amend, it has some biblical citations in there. Okay. All right. Next, then, I have Elvia Vasquez. Elvia, good morning. Good afternoon.
Thank you. My name is Elvia Vasquez from Sacramento Act. We support the passage of the resolution to complement it through ACT. You have the power to make a real difference in keeping families together by joining other California counties and enact a strong county-level policy limiting assistance with deportations. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Elvia. Okay. Next, we have Mackenzie Wilson. Mackenzie's followed by Courtney Hanson, followed by Steve Words.
Good day, Board. My name is Mackenzie Wilson. I'm with Decarcerate Sacramento. And I want to start with a quote. "Our staff is doing what they think is right." And no offense, but that is the problem. And it needs to be named that, yes, everybody did actually have this information. The information was presented more than a year ago, so as to talk about it as if just happening to find it, it's just so disingenuous. I stand today in solidarity to immediately pass the resolution that supports ending all funding and cooperation with ICE. I do think it's a shame that doing what's right is to take power and money from the Sheriff's Department for doing what they feel is right, but is in fact wrong, and by law, wrong. The Sheriff's Department has had power to stop ICE transfers, let alone half the things going on behind those walls the entire time, because all of these things are about their discretion and their policy and procedure. The truth is that this is about culture, a culture of law enforcement, a culture of this county, a culture of care and love, or actually, the lack thereof. The double punishment, the separation of families, the torture behind these bars, and so much more, is something I appreciate us taking these close looks at. But I do hope that we actually move towards better together. The 156 people given to ICE, the thousands of folks living in crisis and having it perpetuated every day inside the jail, and this community deserves better. And I don't understand what folks don't understand about that these rights that we have, or these acts and these forums, that these, and our demands for investment are all things that we need to protect ourselves from the laws. When we are stuck between a rock and a hard place because they lie or refuse to be accountable or even admit when they're wrong, and when they break the laws, then shrinking their funding, their power, and walls of domain are the only way that we can do it and what is right. Thank you very much for your time. Please pass the resolution.
Thanks, Mackenzie. Okay. Followed by Mackenzie, Courtney.
Good afternoon.
Hi. Good afternoon, everyone. Courtney Hanson. I'm with Decarcerate Sacramento and also just here as a supporter of the Sacramento Immigration Coalition. I do think it's really important to go ahead and pass the resolution today, so I understand there's a bit of a negotiation process there. And to be quite honest, I'm still trying to understand what the concession is and if it potentially like narrows it and limits it a little more than how it was originally proposed. And so I just want to remind you all, you are policymakers. It's okay to champion things. It's good to do that, especially in the name of racial justice and justice for our immigrant communities. So I would support moving forward with the strongest version of it possible. And even to get ahead of some of the sort of fear-mongering conversations that are going to come up tomorrow, we are talking about double jeopardy. Even if somebody did something horrible, even if somebody made a mistake, we're talking about people serving their time and then being done with it. I work with women who are transported to ICE detention all across the country, out of the country, to places that they haven't known since they were refugee children. And some of those people were convicted of violent offenses, and they served their time. Isn't that what the system is for? So that's just a plug for tomorrow when we're talking about, you know, almost 85% of people sitting in our jail system are pre-trial and legally innocent. So again, just, I support the strongest resolution possible. I think there was also an ask around making some of this information from the Sheriff's Department available much sooner, like perhaps 30 days in advance. I'm really concerned about this pattern of lack of transparency, poor record-keeping. When we talk about some of the justifications for potentially building a new jail facility at the, at half a billion dollars upwards of a billion, and some of these just simple policy changes really come down to taking accountability, having better record-keeping, and following up policies, and just not having to sort of chase them down for the facts and just really being upfront about all that stuff from the get-go. And then again, it is a racial justice issue. 7% of non-citizens in the U.S. are black, though black immigrants make up over 20% of those facing deportation. Thank you.
Thank you, Courtney. Okay. Steve Words, and then I have Darryl Alder and Katima Mutashi. Steve, good afternoon.
Thank you. My name is Steve Words. I'm also supportive of the Sacramento Immigration Coalition. I've been working in Sacramento County for years on children's issues, family issues, and I just can't, after hearing today that there's still one person that's being illegally held still because they were illegally released, is just a horrible thought to me that, and every one of these people that have been held illegally by the actions of the sheriff are devastating to me, as each and every one person matters. I first want to clarify that Sacramento County has passed a racial equity resolution, and I think this resolution today is a small step toward trying to indicate to the Sacramento community that this is a true value that the county holds and that you all will stand for. So I really request that you support this resolution as it is, trust in Sacramento County. I was here a year ago and heard the lies from the sheriff about the untruths that they claim are just misstatements. This was four years in the making, and they only have changed their policies, which I am glad to hear because of the force of the community's voices and the legal system to force this. And now, this is a chance for this board to step up and say, we value those community voices that said, stand up to the law. I don't trust the sheriff's actions on this after four years of their non-compliance. I don't think that we can have the board allow them to have the discretion to make these decisions, and we've seen the mistakes that they've made already. So I don't think adding the word "allow" into this resolution, if we're going to make a change, Supervisor Serna, I would suggest that it be that the resolution follows the Truth Act and allows for those required exceptions to be held. The law is very clear. All of these serious crimes are already excluded. If the, if there's a warrant, if there's a legal cause for this, it's already in the law, that the sheriff doesn't have to make discretionary decisions about those. Those are already there if there's a warrant in place. So I would argue strongly that you don't change the resolution and that we hold the sheriff accountable. This is a way to hold accountability in the county here. We need a clear protocol so that there is no discretion, so that we do not have people's lives destroyed forever. It's just one life makes a difference, and we've had hundreds. So I just ask for your support as it was put forward. I appreciate the sheriff having made changes. I hope to God that that changes go forward, but we need the accountability. And Supervisor Serna, I appreciate the effort that you've made to hold, to come up with this resolution. I hope we stand with it as it's written. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Steve. Okay. Next, Darryl, and then Katima.
Yes, my name is Darryl Alder II. I work for SAC Act, and I just want to say that I support the passage of the resolution.
Very good. Thank you, Darryl. Thank you for being here today. Katima?
Hello. My name is Kalima Mutaki. I am the lead organizer at Sacramento Act, and I organize local Muslim congregations. We support the passage of a resolution to complement the Truth Act. You have the power to make a real difference in keeping families together by joining other California counties and enacting a strong county-level policy limiting assistance with deportations. At SAC Act, we believe that every human being possesses innate human rights. One of these is the right to live in a community without fear of detainment and deportation. We implore you to consider the morals you hold and support the passage of this resolution. Time is of the essence. Thank you.
Thank you, Kalima. Sorry, I mispronounced your name. Kalima. Very good. Okay. Was there anyone else that wished to address the Board on Item 64? If not, then that'll conclude. In chambers, Columbus, do we have any folks on the phone?
We do. We have at least three.
Okay. We'll go to the phones.
Okay. Can you transfer the first caller? Hi, caller. Please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Hello. My name is Thalitha Floyd. I am from Sacramento Area Congrations Together. I am a live-free organizer. We support the passage of resolution to complement the Truth Act. The reason why we do this is because we have the right for our community members to live and be free. We take into consideration that this information has been on the books for quite some time, and I just want to be inquisitive. Cooper was in the room and worked at the state during, when the Truth Act was passed, so this is not new information. Two, I want us to understand that when we apologize and make mistakes and say we're working on it over the past eight years, that human lives, bodies, and people were displaced, mothers, fathers, children were ripped apart while we were deciding on how to figure this out. Please pass this resolution. Our families and our communities deserve it. Thank you.
Thank you, caller. Okay. Next caller.
All right. Please send the next caller. Hi, caller. Please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Hi. Thank you. My name is Dylan. I'm a resident of Rich Desmond's district. I'm calling in to encourage the Board of Supervisors to pass the resolution and to make sure that nobody in Sacramento County is at any time cooperating with ICE. ICE is an evil organization, to put it bluntly. I would call them a modern-day Gestapo. They go into communities, they snatch people away from their friends and family, and they leave devastation in their wake. It's unacceptable that anybody in Sacramento County would be collaborating with them in any way. And I would strongly encourage the Board of Supervisors to pass this resolution, and if it is, if it does have any loopholes in it which allow collaboration with ICE to make sure that those are removed, thank you so much for my, for the time.
Thank you, Dylan.
Next caller, please. Hi, caller. Please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Yeah, of course. Good afternoon, supervisors. My name's Nikki, an organizer with Decarcerate SAC, also Sacramento Homeless Organizing Committee and Mental Health First. I feel like all of the sort of spaces or places I engage with really feel this issue strongly, really appreciate the work of the Sacramento Immigration Coalition. Thank you, thank you, thank you, and to Phil Serna for bringing a strong resolution. I hope that it can be passed in its strongest form. I am worried, to be honest, about the friendly amendment. Thank you, Supervisor Desmond. There's, it's when, you know, when you bring forward a thing that goes beyond a state law because you have the county authority to go beyond the state law, and then you sort of put in an amendment that expressly says, except in, you know, cases where the state law allows for it, what you do is sort of undercut the authority that you were trying to build within the county. And I just encourage you, Supervisor Serna and Board, to really take the authority that you do have and pass the strongest resolution. People have said it so, so wonderfully and eloquently, but the way that participation with ICE destroys families, destroys communities, you know, this is a governmental agency younger than me. The whole Department of Homeland Security is younger than me. And, you know, their authority and the ways that they have integrated themselves into overarching reach into our communities in ways that do cause so much significant harm in our families, in our communities, truly to our economy, honestly. I don't usually go there, but that is what happens. You know, we, we should be making a different choice. We should be making a choice that is cooperation with the residents in our community, that is cooperation and uplifting of the families that are here to be able to make sure people thrive. And I just encourage you all to pass the strongest resolution possible. The amendment undercuts the strength of the resolution, in my opinion, and those before me have said it well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Nikki.
Thanks.
New callers?
Next caller, please. Hi, caller. Please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Hi. My name is Cindy Rohan. I'm with Sacramento Act, and I urge you to pass this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy.
And next caller, please. Hi, caller. Please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. This is Dr. Karine McIntosh-Sacco. I am a licensed psychologist and a community mental health advocate, and I am calling in regards to, really calling for, standing in support with advocates that have spoken before, that's calling for a resolution in support of ending all funding for cooperation with and referral of immigrants to federal U.S. Immigration and Customs Enforcement, that no department, agency, commission, officer, or employee of the county of Sacramento shall use any county funds or resources to assist in the enforcement of federal immigration law or to disseminate information regarding the release or other personal information of county detainees for the purpose of supporting immigration enforcement objectives unless such assistance is required by federal or state statute, regulation, or court decision. I want to thank Supervisor Serna for bringing this forward. And, you know, it would be remiss of me if I didn't touch on how harmful it is for what has been practiced by the Sacramento County Sheriff's Department in their cooperation with ICE, that the looming threat of deportation has real and direct consequences for physical health and mental health. Adult family members experience chronic stress along with commonly associated symptoms like cardiovascular risk factors due to heightened anxiety, headaches, and hair loss. The impact on children being taken from their, away from their families where families are a safe haven, when loved ones are separated, the emotional damage is long-lasting. For us to have a healthy community here in Sacramento County, we need to have this resolution passed as it was originally proposed. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Dr. Tegel.
Okay. Next caller. I think she was trying, yeah, she couldn't, she was trying to get one more person on the line, but she couldn't, and she left a voicemail, so she's reached out. the line, but she couldn't, and she left a voicemail, so she's reached out a few times. So, we don't have any more callers at this point.
Okay. All right, well, thank you to our callers, and thank you to the audience members for comments and presentations. So, I'll bring you back to the board. I have Supervisor Frost and Supervisor Serna.
Okay, well, I appreciate everyone coming out and sharing your thoughts. I think if I remember back when we voted to, you know, eliminate cooperation with ICE in the jails, it was something that, you know, there were a lot of considerations around that. There were actually immigrants in the jails who were able to, you know, the sheriff was able to work with ICE to get their situation worked out while they were close to home in a jail where their family could visit them. And I remember having that conversation and thinking, once we eliminate ICE from the jails, they might get shipped off to Texas or who knows where, and really be separated from their families. And so, one of the points I wanted to bring out is that there's different kinds of immigrants. I know immigrants who waited for 15 or 18 years to become citizens of the United States, who worked through the legal process. And I know there are good people who came here, maybe crossed the border illegally, and have been living a good life for 20 years and had kids. And I think there's, you know, there's something to be said about finding a way to assimilate them and figure out what will, what is the appropriate way to work around this immigration situation, because we're all, let's face it, we're all immigrants. But there's also immigrants who come across the border illegally who commit crimes. And there's also citizens who commit crimes. And once you commit crimes, there's laws in place that we enforce to carry out whatever justice is. And now we come to the, what is justice? And who will get justice? What about the victims of some of these crimes? Children who have been child trafficking, molestation, murder, crimes against businesses? There's all kinds of crimes that can happen, and they can happen by all kinds of people, including immigrants who come from, people who come from other countries who did not come here and processed their way in legally. And I think that's, that's what our sheriff and our law enforcement and ICE is trying to manage. The conversations I'm hearing today are referring to injustices, but what is justice and who will get justice? So, that comes to my mind, and I appreciate, I forget your name, but I appreciate your comments, sir, because you, I think you were spot-on with some of your comments. I think this resolution also, you know, sort of reaches in and tries to micromanage our sheriff's operations, which I'm not sure we have authority over our sheriff's operations. I know we have authority over the budget. And I think it could potentially supersede the intention of SB 54 in a way that leaves people, even though it's just a resolution. It's not like this is, you know, a hard, you know, law. It's like it's making a statement, a position, taking a position on behalf of the county. But it does. It does hold weight when you put yourself out and make a statement, make these statements. I'm not, I think we, our sheriff, you know, I think the people elected the sheriff to manage law enforcement, and we should let him do that. We should let him manage his operations. And I don't think we should presume to reach in and micromanage when he can pick up the phone, when he needs to pick up the phone, or, you know, take care of business in some way that protects the community, because that's what the sheriff and all the deputies are trying to do. They're trying to protect citizens and the community. And the community consists of all kinds of people: refugees, citizens, non-citizens, non-citizens' children, children who were brought across the border who were child trafficked, who someone's pretending they're their children and they're not. You know, they're protecting all the people. And so, it's not an easy job. I don't think this is, I don't know why we need to rush this through and why we can't include our Sheriff Cooper on the conversation. I wish we could, and I'm not prepared to support the resolution today.
Okay, thank you, Supervisor Frost, Supervisor Serna, and Supervisor Desmond.
Actually, I'll defer to Supervisor Desmond first.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Supervisor Serna. You know, thank you to everybody who came. I appreciate all the comments from everyone in SAC Act, appreciate your advocacy, and also members of the public who spoke, and certainly to my colleague Supervisor Serna for being such a steadfast, passionate advocate for our immigrant communities. I do think that, I mean, I would like to hear from our county council about her ideas for language, and hopefully we can move forward that, because I think it is important to reiterate our values as a board and underscore the importance of complying with the state law. I know there've been, there are obviously issues in the past with the outgoing sheriff in terms of, you know, embracing the spirit and letter of the law, but I don't think it's pie in the sky, thinking that the incoming sheriff will certainly respect the spirit and letter of the law, of which he was a principal co-author. So, you know, so I'm prepared certainly to support the resolution, you know, with that language. And, you know, I guess I'd defer to county council about that, or the author about it.
Then that's why I wanted you to go first. No, the question I had for Ms. Travis is, I think a couple of speakers, maybe more than a couple, had some reservations about the language that we were considering on the fly earlier, and whether or not that nullifies or mutes or otherwise kind of softens the intent of the balance of the resolution. So, I don't know if you've given some thought during public testimony to actual verbiage, but if you could answer that question, and to Supervisor Desmond's request, maybe give us some language to consider.
I think it just, to me, it clarifies the board's intent, and if the board's intent is to not allow the sheriff cooperation except as allowed under SB 54, then certainly the language that I mentioned, and I can say again, would reflect that intent. There are other things in the resolution that, if that is disregarded, would require the sheriff to do something different than they're required to under SB 54, which is report at the end of the year. In this resolution, they have to do so within, they have to give a written report to the board with it, I think it's two weeks. I can go back and look.
One week.
One week. So, it also goes a little bit farther than what's required under SB 54 if a violation is made by the sheriff's department, which I think is the intent of the board, so that you know on a more regular basis if violations are occurring.
So, if, so, well, first of all, do you have language?
Sure. So, I would, it's on the third page of the resolution. There's a paragraph that's on the top of the page. The second-to-last sentence of that paragraph says, "or as required and not otherwise prohibited by any provision of federal, state, or local law." And I would just strike "required" and say "allowed," so that it just reflects that under SB 54, certain contacts are not prohibited. They're allowed if they meet the specific code sections.
So, to what extent is that just kind of explaining the obvious to someone that knows the law well?
It is, I think.
Okay. So, I guess I'm trying to still decipher whether or not, I wish I had an example of an action or a behavior, and how it would be managed differently per the resolution as is versus the resolution with that additional language.
Right. So, under, and I'm going to go back to the law, there's, as you know, there are certain things that they are allowed to contact ICE for certain violations of felony violations of the vehicle code, health and safety code. And I believe the example from last year is there were two that they contacted ICE about, and then the individuals were detained. So, an example of that is that they are allowed to, but not required to, inform ICE about. And so, that's what SB 54 allows. I think one of them is like felony DUI. I'll just use that as an example. So, under, the resolution as currently written, they would not be able to contact ICE if they had a detainee who's in for felony DUI, because it says you can only do it if it's required. Thank you. So, in, by adding "as allowed," they would be able to, aren't required to, they would be able to inform for felony DUI.
So, it hands back discretion to the sheriff?
Right. If, for example, the sheriff's department notified ICE for misdemeanor DUI, which is not allowed, the sheriff's department would then have to report that to the Board of Supervisors within a week. And that was the problem, I think, that was addressed in the prior Truth Act hearings, because they were never telling the board, you know, intentionally or not intentionally, until the actual Truth Act hearing, what things they did. So, that's, that requirement is retained in the resolution. You certainly could, again, maybe being creative, not, you could require them to tell you every month or week instead of waiting for a year if they do cooperate with ICE. That's another maybe way.
We could require some instant notification, instant in the sense that within five days, yeah, yeah, do that so that there would be alert to the board, board chair, obviously there's a public alert.
In the public, yeah.
Yeah. So, that's another way of to alleviate the concern, but also allow them to still, in instances where they're legally allowed to do so, to do so. Again, I think part of the problem that we've experienced in the last, I think, three years that I've been here is that the information has not been consistent. I think with the protocols that are now being implemented as a result of the settlement and the investigation, and maybe some change of policy direction, it appears that those issues have been solved, and also taking at face value what they reported this year, their contacts with ICE have been extremely reduced since first being reported.
So, if we, if we did, if we amended the resolution with the language you suggested, and with regard to what Supervisor Serna totally just affirmed, what, where would you add that language about the immediate contact?
I think the next paragraph down, we would have to amend it. It currently reads, "be it further resolved that in the event the sheriff or members of the sheriff's department disregard this resolution and assist in a civil or criminal," and then it lists a bunch of things, then they have to report to us. You could add a simple sentence that if they provide any contact with ICE, then they have to report it.
Within five, five working days, for example, you say a week, but, you know, within five working days and notice to the chairperson of the board, members of the board, supervisors. I would also suggest, because this talks about the inspector general, the community review commission, that all those bodies and/or persons would be noticed, and I would include county council. Again, you're the one advises this board, and certainly in the development of this resolution, you know, assisted member of this board in, you know, in crafting the intent. And so, and I think even county executive. I mean, again, if we're trying to loop people in to understand and have a good sense about, you know, one, how affairs are being conducted, relate to people's, you know, outcomes and their, you know, personal situations, whether detained or not, I think that, you know, not to overdo it, but I think that plenty of notification, and that'd be done within five working days, so that, you know, and a format that's understandable, and that, you know, would be publicly posted in whatever format would be appropriate in that case, but.
Yeah. I mean, I guess my, my sense of things, this is really for the speakers and the advocates is, you know, one thing I've learned to do in 12 years on the board is count. So, I think, given what I know about some of the concerns or suggestions from my colleagues, and understanding disposition of Supervisor Frost, I do want to see this resolution passed in some form. I agree with you, it should be as strong as possible, as many speakers referenced. But, you know, I'm 20% of this board, not 100% of this board, so I'd be here to know the thoughts of those that haven't chimed in yet.
I will just say that I am supportive of the resolution as written, but if the author amends it in order to get to that number, I will be supporting that as well.
Okay, understood. Well, okay.
Yeah, just, Mr. Serna, just to that, and I think it's important, and I've said this when we've had resolutions where we've had potentially divided house on it, that having as much support, not to water things down or make them less meaningful and/or impactful than they might otherwise be, I do think it's important that if we're going to go forward, that if, you know, obviously with three members of this board, we can move an action. I think it's a stronger statement if you have four and/or five of us, clearly.
We're not going to have five, but I understand your point.
Yeah, no, I know that. Well, you know, we haven't voted yet, so, but, but I do think acting today is important. I think this is the appropriate forum to do that. And I, you know, I understand what the speakers have said. I think it still has a very limited window, but I think notice, you know, in a fair appraisal of what actions are being taken, along with the protocols that have been established. Obviously, we'll be back in these chambers next year. I won't, but you all will be.
You'll get an invite.
And so, I think, again, if it's not working out, or we have other examples where either, you know, people think the authority's been exceeded and/or cooperation has been, you know, outside of what might be otherwise reasonable, and or there hasn't been notice. If, for example, it's not looked upon as being important enough to notify the board, we don't get it until December of 2023, I think that may be cause for, you know, further changes to the resolution, which certainly is always within the purview of this board. But I think it's important to try to, you know, get as much support for this as possible without watering it down. So, I'm prepared to support with the amendment that you spoke to a moment ago, with, I guess, the two modifications to the ordinance, Mr. Serna.
Thank you for that.
I don't know. Mr. Desmond, do you want to speak to them?
Well, just, kind of, at the risk of, you know, repeating myself, I, you know, I do think our incoming, I'll say it again, our incoming sheriff was a principal co-author of SB 54. SB 54 went through a very rigorous process at our state legislature, a process that I was personally involved with, with both Senator DeLeon's office and the Brown administration at the time. And I think it struck the right, the right balance in terms of allowing communications and working with ICE under very, very limited circumstances for serious and violent crimes, including participation in task forces. And there was a lot of discussion about that element of SB 54 as well. There are an awful lot of task forces with Homeland Security or other federal partners that are related to drug trafficking, human trafficking, and ICE is a component, a very small component of these, of these task forces. And I just, I really think that, I mean, I absolutely support the more rigorous reporting requirements. I think that is very sound, but, but I think we should give this incoming sheriff a chance to demonstrate that he will absolutely embrace the provisions of SB 54 with the increased, improved reporting items to this board, and we can always strengthen that later if that, if that trust is not maintained. And so, that's where I stand on.
If I could, just real quickly, I think it'd be important, maybe there's another way to provide sufficient notice, maybe we ought to require that if, in fact, in those cases, that it be actually be an information item to this board, so it appears on our agenda, it's on a public agenda. It's not just a communication to board members that may be internal. I think that the external audience and interest in this is sufficient. I think that's part of the oversight that comes with our representation. And so, I guess that it would be, you know, to report within five days, and it would appear as an information item, which any information item can be spoken to by the members of the public, can be spoken to by the board. In that way, there's, you know, there's no lack of disclosure. So, Elise, I would ask you about that.
That could certainly be added.
Okay.
So, in terms of process, so, first of all, I thank So in terms of process, so first of all, I thank my colleagues for their candor and suggestions, and I, you know, I tend to agree with our chair that I think, you know, acting on policy with an eye towards unanimity when we can achieve it does have, carries, does carry value, so I appreciate that. In terms of process this afternoon, Ms. Travis, are you prepared to give us the exact wording right now, or do you need a five-minute break to put pen to paper?
I would prefer a break to do that. I could certainly work on it during the next item and do that.
We got people here, so I kind of want to be respectful of people's time.
Sure. You want to take a five-minute break?
Yeah.
Okay.
Five minutes is going to be enough?
Yeah, that'll be fine.
Okay, so we're going to, we'll be in recess for five minutes and then we'll return, complete this item, and then take up item 65.
Yeah, great. Thank you.
All right, we'll call the board supervisors back into session after a brief recess, and we're going to put some language up on the monitor in just a moment, but I'll have Flo, you've got to call the roll, reestablish quorum, please.
Supervisors, Serna.
Here.
Kennedy, Desmond, Frost.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Thank you, Flo. Okay, so councils had an opportunity to work on some language, and we've.
So it's actually starts, the edits start on the third page. I don't know how to.
Don't know how to turn the page?
Oh, can I do this?
I'm kidding.
Fancy.
All right.
Oh, wow.
There goes, just scroll down.
It's very exciting.
There you go.
So the third page, as you'll see, I've replaced required and for, with permitted. I didn't underline it. It should be underlined as an addition, so it would read as permitted and not otherwise prohibited by any provision of federal, state, or local law. And that's related to cooperation with the immigration authorities. That was the first change, I think, suggested by Supervisor Desmond. And then the second, or the next paragraph, the highlighted portion shows that in the event that the sheriff's department disregards the resolution and assists immigration, investigation, detention, arrest, targeted enforcement action, or other collaboration prohibited by this resolution, or if they provide cooperation anyway with, I'm going to change it in the final one because ICE has not identified, but with immigration as allowed in government code section 7 to 8.2.5, which is the one that enumerates the offenses that the sheriff's department can cooperate with ICE. In that event, then the sheriff's department will have to provide the report as we've discussed. I added, in addition to county council, they would have to provide it to our office as well. Then I added that next paragraph that Supervisor Natoli suggested, which states that if any such communication is required, then it would, that communication would also be placed on the agenda at the next scheduled meeting of the board of supervisors.
Question?
Yeah, go ahead.
When you said you're going to make that slight change on the final, you just mean spell out.
Right.
Instead of use the acronym, correct?
Correct.
All right.
Okay.
All right.
All right, any other thoughts on the language that's? I don't see anybody else in the queue. Mr. Serna, I'll go back to you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the thought that county council put into the wording. Want to thank my colleagues again for their suggestions. And with that, I'm going to move adoption of the resolution with the amended language as prepared by county council.
Okay, and moved and properly seconded. If there's no further comments or questions on the motion, then please vote.
Okay, and the motion carries with Supervisor Frost voting no.
Okay. All right, thank you, everybody. Thanks, Chair. Okay, very good. So I know we'll be back here next year, or you will all be back here next year. All right, with that, then let's go to item 65. I know we have some speakers and we also have presentations, so Ms. Edwards, it's been a long time in getting to this moment, so.
Yes. Good afternoon, Chair.
Oh, we got to call the item, sorry. Have Flo call the item. I'm sorry, Ann.
Yeah.
Item 65, adopt a resolution to enter into a partnership agreement with city of Sacramento to address homelessness crisis.
Okay.
Okay, so good afternoon, Chair Natoli and board members, and Edwards County Executive, and I, oh, there's a PowerPoint, too. I cannot tell you how happy I am to be here before you today to present this resolution of a county-city partnership agreement. This has been a long time coming. We've been working on this for, I don't even want to say how long, but very intensely in the last few months. I really want to thank Supervisors Kennedy and Desmond for their work on the four-by-two and their just complete diligence in continuing to move this forward. I also want to acknowledge the departments that really did a lot of work on this and helped support this effort. DH, Department of Homeless, it's going to take me a while to get this smoothly coming out of my mouth, but the Department of Homeless Services and Housing, Department of Human Assistance, Department of Healthcare Services, and all the services that have been working tirelessly to get underway. I also want to thank Siobhan Katari because she really was, did a lot of the heavy lifting on this, did a lot of writing, did a lot of collaborating with the city to make this happen, so thank you, Siobhan. I also want to acknowledge that this agreement is not the totality of everything Sacramento County is doing to address homelessness. This is very specifically focusing on the partnership between the city and the county and really enhancing our work with the city of Sacramento. I can also say that I think about 30 minutes ago or so, the city council unanimously approved this very same agreement. So I'm going to just quickly go over the background. Homelessness has been rising in Sacramento County, as you well know. 67% of the unsheltered homeless in Sacramento live within the city of Sacramento, and county-operated services are absolutely essential to supporting those who are experiencing homelessness. You know, we are responsible for behavioral health services, and we are responsible for eligibility services and a whole array of social services. County has made significant recent investments in homeless services, thanks to the support of your board, and leadership in the city of county have been working together very closely to figure out how to best weave all of this together. And true progress relies on a multidisciplinary and multi-sector approach, committing to both system-level change and approaches to our services. I also want to say that this first year, it's not officially a pilot, but really, we're going to be working through all the kinks during this first year and figuring out what works and what might we need to modify. And although this is an agreement between the city and the county, we have many partners that we work with. Community-based organizations specifically, we partner with so many of them. Sacramento Steps Forward, just many, many organizations that will be supporting this effort. Okay, so an overview of the key provisions of this agreement. So this is a five-year agreement with annual updates. And I think most importantly, it really identifies the roles and responsibilities of what is the city going to do and what is the county going to do. You know, the county has some very clear mandates that are established in statute, and that is to provide mental health services and substance abuse services, health services in some circumstances, as well as eligibility for programs like CalWorks and CalFresh and general assistance. But there is nothing in statute that identifies who is responsible for providing shelter or case management to homelessness. So no one is legally required to do this. I think we're all morally required to do this, and what this agreement does is talk about what the city's going to do and what the county's going to do. And it really identifies a shared commitment to collaborative planning, system-level changes, and a commitment to leveraging new resources, including the Local Homeless Assistance Plan. It really highlights key investments in outreach and engagement, and I'll be talking about that in a moment, and commits to regular and ongoing communication. And we've had that at the staff level for some time now. The city manager and I communicate regularly. Siobhan and her team, as well as Mario Lara from the city team, communicate, and that's really key. And it also sets forth provisions for accountability and measuring progress with reports in open session to both the city and the county every six months. So I am really, really excited about this. I also want to thank our partners in the continuum of care, as well as the leadership at Sacramento Steps Forward for helping us with the Local Homeless Assistance Plan because that, again, is key to all of this work. I think it's also really important to note that although we are seeking commitment to commit to additional resources within this agreement, we really also want to manage community expectations. This is not intended to be a magic bullet that's going to solve homelessness tomorrow because this is a long process. Some of the strategies that we're talking about today are going to take some time to implement, but we are really committed, both as county and the city, to working hard to make all of this happen. So outreach, we have made a commitment, the city and the county, to have 10 outreach teams within the city jurisdiction, and the county is committing to providing 10 behavioral health workers funded by the county to be part of those teams. We're also going to have 15 CAL AIM Enhanced Care Management Community Support Providers or homeless engagement workers funded by the Managed Care Plans for one year. I really want to take this opportunity to thank the Managed Care Plans. When Siobhan approached them, they very quickly, all of them, stepped up and said, this sounds like a great idea, and so they are supporting this for one year, and if it goes well, the possibility of continued funding in future years. There'll also be 25 Department of Community Response, that's with the city encampment workers. They'll either be employed by the city or contracted by the city, and if they do a contract and we do a contract, we're going to do a joint RFP so that we have the same vendor so that there's really consistency in how these outreach teams work. The teams will be responsible for intensive outreach, assessment, navigation, rehousing services, whatever it takes approach. We'll be, this is really new, and I think this is one of the very key components to potential success, and that is we'll be conducting behavioral health assessments, enrolling people in services, and linking individuals to the appropriate level of mental health or substance abuse care in the field. This is the first time we've done this. We've, it's been difficult to access mental health and substance abuse services, and so by having a behavioral health worker as part of that outreach team, I think is going to make a huge difference. In addition to behavioral health outreach workers on the encampment teams, we're going to establish and fund a new Community Outreach Recovery and Empowerment, or CORE, Behavioral Health Center within the city center. There are already going to, there already are, right, three CORE centers within the city jurisdiction, but there is not yet one in the core of the city, and so the city has committed to helping us find a spot to do that, and once that happens, we'll bring something back to the board to do that. We are continuing to support the Crisis Receiving Behavioral Health Center, which is a sobering and crisis intervention center. Most people know this as the SURE Center. This is operated by WellSpace, and we're going to continue to support that and hope to expand that as well. Finally, we'll be enrolling unhoused individuals into full-service partnerships, and this is a behavioral health program that really is a whatever-it-takes model. It not only provides behavioral health services, it also provides for rental subsidies for homeless individuals. If that is the most appropriate level of care, and if there's another level of care that's more appropriate, we'll be linking individuals to that level of care as well. And then the real finally is that we are also expanding substance use disorder residential treatment. This has been something that has been lacking in our community, and we are poised to, over the next couple of years, add 146 additional residential beds. So sheltering, as you know, the county has moved towards a new model of sheltering, using the Safe Stay model to better meet the needs of our unhoused community. This is a really great model because it provides individuals with privacy, a safe space of their own, power, you know, electricity, heat, cool, and the ability to bring a pet or pets with them. The county and the city will jointly participate in coordinated access once it is fully operational, and the county is committing to add an additional 200 beds within the next shelter beds in a Safe Stay community within the next 12 months, and another 200 beds within the next 36 months. And additionally, if the city provides us a shovel-ready site, we'll provide an additional 200 beds in such site, and shovel-ready means it is paved, has water, sewer, and power. So the recommended actions and next steps is approval of this partnership agreement. The Department of Health Services will be, bring back a funding request to fund the CORE Center once a site is identified. Homeless Services and Housing will bring back, as you already know, the funding requests for operations at the Safe Stay communities. The county and city leadership teams will be working together to develop an action plan, timelines, protocols, a work plan essentially, and that work is already underway. And as I said earlier, the county and city teams will be reporting back to the elected bodies, both of them, every six months, and then we'll also continually revisit this agreement to see if it is meeting the needs. And I also just want to conclude by thanking Supervisors Kennedy and Desmond and the rest of the board for supporting this effort, include, appreciate all the staff and departments that have been supporting us. And then finally, I really want to thank Lisa Travis because she was actually quite involved as we drafted this agreement to make sure that it was legal and protected the county, so thank you, Lisa. And I will answer any questions that you have.
And Supervisor Serna, you're in the queue.
Great, thank you, Ms. Chair. So first of all, thank you, Ann, and want to thank everyone that Ann has mentioned, especially want to give a lot of credit to my colleagues, Supervisors Kennedy and Desmond, for the expense of their time and energy to hammer out the details. And I think this is obviously something that, I want to call it a no-brainer, but that seems a little dismissive, so, but it is clear that this is something that I think presents a lot of value. It's something more than the sum total of its parts, and I think by great design, and that came with all the thought that has gone into it from our executive team and our colleagues here. I guess what I'd like to understand maybe a little bit more, Ann, is, and you touched on it, is the setting of expectations, and I brought this up in our briefing because this, the development of the agreement has been front and center in the media. It's been something that our constituents, the public in general, have been well aware of in terms of its progress. So for those that may simply see the impacts associated with homelessness, both the human cost of it, as well as the impacts to our broader communities and, you know, our cityscapes and our rural areas and suburban areas, how are we going to, in terms of messaging, explain in as simple terms as possible what can be expected in terms of differences that, you know, quite frankly, we probably want our constituents to keep an eye out for?
Well, I think the first thing that folks will notice is that teams will be out regularly at the encampments. So right now, we have encampments all over the community, and they will be targeted and prioritized based on security and safety and infrastructure and all of those things, and numbers of complaints, frankly, that we get from businesses and residents in the community. But they will see outreach teams out there regularly, multiple times a week. This is new. So even if there isn't a shelter bed available, if you really focus on engagement with folks in the encampments, if you're there regularly, you establish a relationship with them, and these teams will be case managing, if you will, individuals in the camp. Used to be we would just go respond, but people are going to own a camp, if you will, and so that creates a greater opportunity for engagement, and there are options other than just the Safe Stay communities. So we have shelters, the city has shelters. Yes, they're mostly full, but we do have throughput in those shelters. We also have our scattered site sheltering, and so there are many other options other than just these new beds that we're bringing on. So I think what people can expect to see is more focus on the encampments. We'll be doing cleanup efforts, and when I say cleanup, I don't mean cleaning up the camp, I mean cleaning up. I mean cleaning up the garbage and the things that are problematic for the community. This will take time, but I do think that we'll begin to see some real focus on the encampments and people will see people, our teams, working with the encampments. And again, I believe that the behavioral health work happening in the field is going to be a game changer because even if someone isn't sheltered, if we can get them into mental health or substance abuse services and they start getting better, it's much easier to then place somebody in a shelter.
No, thank you for that. I guess I'd like to make a suggestion. It's not, it has no material effect on the agreement necessarily. It's what I believe to be a, something that uses the agreement as a springboard for. And that's something I haven't heard staff mention at all, and that's the branding of this effort. I think it needs to be branded. And that too could be a city-county coordinated effort. And when I say branded, I'm thinking in terms of what I've seen elsewhere. So for instance, in Orange County with BeWell, having gone down there to see for myself over multiple days what they offer in terms of kind of their multifaceted approach to helping their homeless population with the things you just mentioned, Ann, mental health, substance use disorder, and sheltering, and finding shelter. They have these teams of navigators that you've already mentioned a few times that will be the product of this agreement, that are going out in these blue vans that are custom-made to provide assistance and get people to where they need to go to in terms of, you know, their health, their mental health, off-site from the BeWell campus. I also took stock of something I saw recently in the city of Portland. Was there for a family event and saw these street teams that are in their, you know, branded mobile units that are out around the city that are literally helping folks on the spot, providing some transportation services, providing some health or access to mental health and health services. You know, I think in terms of the resources that would be necessary to, you know, get a small fleet of vans or do some branding, maybe with the help of some professional folks that could help us think through that. You know, there have been some folks that have been watching the District One ARPA funds a little more closely in terms of, you know, asking the right questions about, well, what are we going to do with the district funds, the ARPA funds that remain that haven't been appropriated or expended? Part of the reason they haven't, I wanted to see this agreement first. I wanted to see what we're going to do differently so that we actually have some resources available from the start to kind of help implement what is the core part of the settlement agreement, or not settlement, but the agreement. So, you know, I know it sounds perhaps cursory to the substance of this, but it goes back to my early questions about expectations. When the public actually sees something different out on the street, they actually see the vans going down J Street or, you know, the vans out in, you know, Oak Park or out in Del Paso, wherever, I think it gives the public, you know, the rightful clue that, hey, the city and county are actually serious about this. It's something new. And it's not just about trying to, you know, say that we have a new, you know, logo and a new set of colors on our vehicles or what have you. And that's not the objective here. The objective is to literally do something very different. And so with, again, with the dedication of the city and county to the number of navigators and outreach teams, with the ARPA funds that have yet to be expended, I would like to suggest that that be kind of one of our next steps. And I'm happy to, you know, have us consider what remains in the District One ARPA account balance to maybe help that happen. Let's not forget too, that we actually have, albeit it's not, hasn't been appropriated for this express purpose, but we do have $5 million that has yet to be appropriated for American River Parkway. And I think we could probably make a strong case that the navigators are going to be helpful with regards to the homeless population in that part of our community. And we also have $25 million that has been set aside, identified for the American River Parkway as well. So I think this is tremendous. I think this is a great, a great way for us all to understand what we all want, which is a new day in Sacramento in terms of reducing the homeless population, helping the people that need compassionate care the most, making sure that our communities are livable for everyone. So again, hats off to everyone that was instrumental in making this happen. Thanks.
Thank you, Supervisor Serna. And we can certainly, our teams, both teams, county, city, get together and explore that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Phil. Okay, Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Supervisor Serna. Certainly appreciate the comments. And to me, it really illustrates something that came up during the press conference we held is that this partnership agreement certainly does not encapsulate everything we're doing at the county. There's a lot more we're doing, a lot more we should be doing that is complementary of this. And, you know, I love the notion about the BeWell and the reference to the BeWell and the vans and kind of, you know, some of the visibility. There's a lot of value in that, in the community, to see us actually doing something. Let's not, you know, we toil in obscurity a lot. Let's make it very clear to people that we're there making a difference. And, you know, that's a feature we can discuss. But I just want, let me just pile on with some of my accolades as well with everybody. Ann, you know, thank you. And Lisa, thank you so much. It's been a long, it's been a long process, starting when I first came into office. We started, first was a two-by-two, then we had some fits and starts. It became resurrected as a two-by-four and finally finished it off. And Siobhan was instrumental, I think, in shaking some things loose and coming up with some innovative ideas. And thank you. I won't use the same term that I refer to you as in a smaller group. And then certainly to my colleague Supervisor Kennedy, who, you know, we had a lot of conversations about this and had to calm each other down on several occasions to try to get through this process. But I do think it is, this is really something to celebrate. We still have an awful lot more work to do, but in terms of the outreach, in terms of the sheltering, in terms of this really, I think, setting a standard and, you know, the mayor talked about it, and I agree. This is, you know, there are a lot of cities and counties that fight over who's supposed to do what and is so-and-so doing enough to support us? And sometimes that's the result of a lack of clear responsibilities, like you referenced, Ann, in state law. And this agreement goes a long way in clearly identifying those roles and responsibilities. So I think there's a lot of value in that. I just, I really like that it has a lot of focus on behavioral health, both mental health treatment, substance use disorder treatment. And you referenced the 146 beds, additional residential treatment beds, but that certainly doesn't tell the whole story of what we're doing. And I think, you know, just kind of, again, along the lines of what Supervisor Serna had mentioned, you know, there are, in terms of the behavioral health, specifically substance use disorder treatment, you know, there are great programs, not only BeWell, but I think Riverside County is doing some things. There are great models out there and you made reference to this, Ann. This is, I think, part of the homeless population we have not been focusing enough on. And this partnership agreement will help certainly change that, but I think we need to continue to look further to do more. So thank you all. I was, you know, I was glad to be part of this process. I'm glad at least the partnership agreement part is over, assuming we pass it today. And hopefully that will happen. And thank you, Supervisor Serna, for the kind words.
Thank you, Rich. Supervisor Kennedy.
Yeah, I'm just going to real briefly. First of all, Supervisor Serna, I love the idea, the branding idea. I think it's a great idea. So I'm really just going to say thank you to Ann and of course, Siobhan, you were fantastic through this process. You know, the creativity that, you know, we came up with. Ann, you and I have been dealing with this since we went to San Antonio years ago, you know? And so, you know, it took a lot of doing, but really, and Lisa, you know, you were there every step of the way as well. It really shows what we can do when we check the, you know, our egos at the door and really focus on what we're all here for, and that's, you know, serving the public. And, you know, it wasn't always easy. Tensions could run high at moments, but, you know, what we ended up with was, is the right thing and I think going to be a game changer. And one of the things that I want to get across to people is you look at, okay, here's 600 beds. Now, we know that there's somewhere around 9,000 people who are living unhoused every day in Sacramento County. And so 600 beds doesn't sound like that much, but what we have to get across to the public is that they realize that, as I said the other day at the press conference, it's not a stagnant number. These 600 beds will be revolving. And as I've said, if we're in the business of warehousing homeless people, then we failed. What we are in the business of doing is identifying people who need help, getting them off the street as quickly as possible and providing them and hooking them up with the services that they need so that they can be self-sufficient and they can be successful and thrive down the road. So whereas 600 beds to some people sounds like a drop in the bucket, it actually will serve thousands of people. And so again, to the staff, I also want to, you know, want to thank Howard Chan and his staff. You know, I think that this is a new day for Sacramento County and the city. And, you know, I think that this is a partnership that is going to really be a game changer for what is really the greatest challenge facing our community. So thank you to all of you that were involved.
Thanks, Patrick. Supervisor Frost.
I just want to thank all of you from the county, Ann, Siobhan, Lisa, the supervisors who were able to accomplish this. And I want to thank the city of Sacramento and the council members who participated and Mayor Steinberg. This is something that we have been hearing about, at least I have, in my district. Why can't the city and the county work together? And I know that our constituents are going to be really excited that we've come together with a plan that is going to change lives. And so thank you for using your creative intelligence to make that happen. And I won't add to what, a whole lot of what was already said. I just wanted you to know that I was appreciative of what you've done and I'm happy to support it.
Okay, thanks Supervisor Frost. I'll hold my comments till the end. I know we have some speakers, so, Ann, again, but thanks. And I'll make a few comments before we take the motion up, so. All right, so we have some speakers. We have Jeffrey Tardiga, Mackenzie, and Bishop Chris Baker. Jeff?
If you can hear me, I'm going to be the wet blanket because you need to deal with what is more coming along of disabled and you have a core population that wants to stay homeless. You also have to get enough housing that you have places to put them. I appreciate it and I hope this is a living document that will get you to do something. It's taken so long to get this done and so many times there were setbacks, but keep at it. And we will appreciate this, but I know the public is not excited to see, and we'll say, Patrick, back to San Antonio. If that model works, we need to see it work here in Sacramento. If the Portland model works, let's see what can do. I have not heard it working really in resolving, you know, 1,000 people. And my other concern is being point in time count is I've watched from 2016, every time the population double. We are now talking about 9,000 people. What in 2024 is it going to look like? Will we have a process and a procedure that manages this population in Sacramento? I know there's other efforts going on. As you speak, I believe somebody spoke about Orange County. Right now, one of the tools that worked with Orange County is because they recognized that they needed to have for their seasonal workers and other workers, a commitment of homeless and a commitment to housing. That was 10, 15% that was done 10, 15 years ago. No effort, you know, and we are five to 10 years behind on housing here in Sacramento. So yes, please get with it, but at the same time, I applaud you for guys finally getting around to getting this passed and happening. But I'm sitting here waiting and hoping that much like when the pandemic efforts were made and things were learned from that, that something else comes out of this, that we come up with some way of housing more people or we create more, you know, centers that will actually be like loaves and fishes or something else that does work to house the individuals and get them directed. And today, a homeless person did something. They're now going to be incarcerated. How many times that keeps going on? How many times things like Swanson gets with the RV centers getting replaced and done? What you are getting to do with beyond places to keep them? And my time looks to be up. I will go to the DAC meeting and something else tonight. So I'm not done, but here we go. And that's my time. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Your work is never done. Appreciate your efforts. Thanks. Okay, next, Mackenzie. Mackenzie to be followed by Bishop Baker and then Matt Gallagher.
Good afternoon, Board. My name is Mackenzie Wilson. My parents are they/them and I'm an organizer with Decarcerate Sacramento. It needs to be named that the driving force for this conversation is the Emergency Shelter and Enforcement Act. The act that literally, you know, the city of Sacramento is trying, it's how they're trying to circumvent Martin v. Boise. And that it was written by and it has to be named by a bunch of rich folks, you know, who were tired of looking at unhoused folks on the sidewalk and, you know, with no compassion and the only solution being provided was to sweep and criminalization. Measure O is a criminalization effort to sweep and give out misdemeanors and not get sued by the previously mentioned rich folks for not doing something about it. That includes harm and force and only offers the idea of things like 10x10 tent shelters and does not even require any new housing or services to be built. I found out that y'all are even going to be able to not have to build 200 new ones this year. All you have to do is just not close the hotels that you were planning on closing already. And so, and 600 you named it, you know, over the 300 is doing that, but it doesn't do much without the much-needed, affordable and publicly owned and socially owned housing. 600 over the next few years is sad considering that it doesn't meet and mean as much, knowing that we have thousands who are outside and more that are a paycheck away, tens of thousands. This community has wanted a regional plan to prevent homelessness. We wanted a plan and agreement, and though I appreciate our acknowledgement that it's not about not being the totality, but the lack of understanding that this is all a giant gaslight is horrifying. Nothing about Measure O or this agreement, let alone most of the decisions about this crisis is made with folks experiencing homelessness or the orgs and coalitions supporting them. After years of cries and people coming in with solutions, coming in with the solutions ignored, somehow, now that the business and rich folks, businesses and rich folks are involved, we are co-opting and talking about the coordinated system of care that the real experts have been demanding for years. Don't keep making these decisions without folks. It's without folks experiencing this crisis. It's the only way to stop the harm and to do it with intention and better. If we don't, and I am cool, I'm just holding time, cool. If we don't, we will get further from each other, we will get further from each other and another day in Sacramento. Moving forward, experts, meaning those with lived experience living outside right now and those who are working closest with them, are saying, somebody please write this down. The agreement needs to include the creation of a stakeholder community oversight committee, which includes people with lived experience that will oversee unhoused services and how they operate. they operate. The city and the county need to fund an independent program that will look into grievances of homeless people and resolve them. It needs to, we need to be able to hold the city and the county and providers accountable. City and county needs to be transparent about what already exists and what is actually new in this agreement, because, for example, the city and county behavioral health teams already exist, and so does the transition to wellness centers. Agreements, the agreement needs to include 24/7 respite centers that are not weather-driven. The agreement needs to include metrics, not just outputs, but like all of the outcomes, and this is my last one, is that the county needs to expedite its affordable housing plan and not wait six months to report back.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mackenzie. Okay, Bishop Baker. And then Matt Gallagher, and then Carlos Chavez.
I'm excited to see that you all both are working together, the city and the county. It is the most important thing. We all know there's a homeless problem. It is very important to tackle that issue. Will it be perfect like Ms. Edwards said? No, it's a five-year plan, but we can get there by working together. The 600 beds, as Patrick Kennedy said, it is a must, and it will create a homeless program to get those folks off the street. Now, I want to say something about businesses that I heard. Where I live, the businesses are involved. But then I want to speak for the business, as I'm a representative for one of the grocery stores that you all know that I brought to the communities, and they're very proactive in understanding what is going on with the homeless issue, but their concerns is they're not being heard. Due to the fact that we went and retrieved, I did, with neighborhood policing, 17 carts at one location, each one of those carts is $370. We retrieved another 22 carts, each one $370. So I stand here to say that we all need to work in this together, listen to the businesses, bring them on board to find out what they can do, and get rid of this problem. It's not going to happen quickly. Stop coming up here pointing the finger and disrespecting elected officials. If we take that energy and move towards some goals and start solving these problems, I mean, just think where we will be in five years. I love what SAC Step Forward is doing. I serve on two of their committees. I look at their agendas, and I'm not a numbers person. I looked at the metrics, and then as I was reading this, I'm like, man, this is, this is going to work. The city, the county, SAC moves forward. So I think it's a great plan, and I just ask you to include some of the businesses, bring them to the table. How can they work with you to alleviate this? Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Okay, next, Matt Gallagher, and then Carlos Chavez, and then the last speaker, I have Ben Chambers, is Shereen Miles. Hello, Matt.
Good evening, Chair and Supervisors. My name is Matthew Gallagher. I am a resident of District One. I'm a lawyer and an employee of Cal Voices, a community-based mental health property, nonprofit here in Sacramento. When I first read the proposal and watched the press conference, I too thought it was a game changer. I said, finally, the city and the county are working together in the place I call home. But after I read the details of the agreement itself, I got to admit I'm a little skeptical certainly of the promises made today. 600 beds is 6.4% of a 9,278 homeless population in Sacramento County. It's a very small number. If you look at Sacramento County's local homeless action plan, you see that there's annually 16,000 to 20,000 individuals who are homeless annually. The numbers don't exactly add up, and I understand that doing something is better than doing nothing, but I want to talk about expectations. And the expectation is, are we going to get more people off the street and into shelter? Are we going to get them into housing? Are we going to actually see a change in our communities? I remember a Sacramento where we didn't see people urinating in the streets, where we didn't see public defecation, where we didn't see open drug use, and where we didn't see tents on just about every corner. I'm 33 years old, and the Sacramento that I love and I've grown accustomed to isn't what we see today. I'm open to ideas and solutions, and I'm thrilled that the county and the city are working together. But let's be clear, Measure O was passed with a condition precedent in it, that that measure, that ordinance, doesn't go into effect unless this body passes the agreement before it today. And that ordinance will, in fact, criminalize homelessness. Does it usurp Boise? I don't know. I think that is to be debated and decided by the courts. We know that litigation's going to come. But I want to be clear about why this measure is before you, why this agreement exists, and the expectations behind it. And when I see it, I'm a lawyer, I'm not a mathematician or a statistician, I am a little worried about the numbers. And if we're going to talk about anything, I think we should talk about accountability. First thing you learn in law school is a contract isn't as good as its enforcement. And if there's an agreement between the city and the county, we should talk about accountability. The current proposal in front of you this evening, the shortest provision in that is accountability. It's only two sentences long. I think if you really want to make a difference, implement an independent commission, looking at the metrics established, and not just quarterly reviews, but annual reviews, to look at how much progress we're making and what that progress is. With that said, I have a lot more to say, but I'll submit it in writing. Thank you for your time, and good luck.
Thank you, Matt, for your comments today. Okay, Carlos, and then Shereen.
Good evening.
Good evening. Chairman, Natolli and Supervisors, good afternoon. My name is Carlos Chavez. I'm the Vice President of Public Policy for Region Business. On behalf of our membership, I'm here to testify in favor of Measure O's partnership agreement, which, one, will make Measure O, which approved by voters, active, and, two, establish a groundbreaking partnership between the city and county on services for the homeless. As its core, Measure O's partnership agreement is a major financial commitment from the county to help Sacramento City implement Measure O fully. More importantly, it's an aggressive strategy and model for all major cities and counties in California on how to partner for results. I want to thank Supervisors Desmond and Kennedy for working with Region Business, the Metro Chamber, the City Council, to create the groundbreaking plan. Your efforts is helping us kick off the four-by-two-by-two committee, which established a collaborative relationship between the city and county to create this amazing plan, has not gone unnoticed. You have demonstrated an incredible leadership in this taking to work with the business community and the city to get real tangible results. Today, we ask you to approve Measure O partnership agreement unanimously. The agreement isn't about words or promises, it's about a comprehensive plan to address homelessness by establishing qualified teams who could come in and help those in need. When we started our campaign for homelessness, our vision was safe and clean streets. Now, with the adopted of Measure O and the Measure O partnership agreement, we can reach that goal while providing core mental and behavioral health services to the homeless. We want them to succeed. We want their lives to be better. We want Sacramento to be safe, clean, an inviting place to live, work, and play. I hope you guys vote yes, and thank you.
Thank you, Carlos. Okay, Shereen. So our speaker in chambers, do we have people on the phone?
I have some people on the phone.
Okay, very good. Shereen.
Shereen Miles. I also, in addition to my immigration work, represent Sacramento Act's Homelessness and Housing Local Organizing Committee. We've been working on that for five-plus years at least. Today, I feel hopeful and cynical in equal measures. I applaud the collaboration between the city and the county. This is really long overdue. As you all know, we have been broken recording since our beginning the importance of a comprehensive plan to address homelessness. We were encouraged somewhat during the COVID crisis with some good collaboration between the city and the county. That's a good thing, but as you all know, we've seen far too many disjointed efforts on the part of the city and the county, kind of fund-driven, and to our, to our own disadvantage in terms of the results. So here are some of our recommendations and concerns. I hear what Supervisor Kennedy is saying about the spaces, the shelter spaces that are set forward in this proposal. We remain concerned about the inadequacy of shelter spaces, and even more so about our record in how quickly we have been able to stand up shelter spaces. We feel pretty frustrated with what went on at the city, and that is pretty much appears to be a failure. And a lot of this contributes to a, to a very intense, community-wide disillusionment with elected officials and their inability to really grapple with a crisis, a serious problem, which affects the trust of the community in this, in this matter. A couple of points. One, we are also suggesting, like other speakers, that we form an advisory committee, a body that includes members with lived experience, and the voices of the advocacy community, and the volunteer, and the support communities, to provide feedback on the implementation of this. We would like to see a continuous improvement model, so that whatever is developed is consistent, is constantly reevaluated. Is it being effective? Are we reaching our goals? Are we reaching the people that we need to? How can we make these changes? Because what we're trying to do is, is pretty difficult. And so, we would like to see refined estimates of what resources are, what more resources are needed, or how to deploy those resources more effectively. The last point is I want to second what Supervisor Serna said about messaging. We have a huge problem with nimbyism in this community that's been developed by the reasons that we've talked about. So we're going to have pushback and, and pressure from the community to not do anything. At the same time, they want us to do things, they want us to not do it in their neighborhood. And so, we have to, we have to address that, we have to have a plan to address that, and people have to see results. So whatever we do, they have to see results that result in individuals getting the help that they need. Thank you.
Thank you, Shereen. Okay, that's our speakers in chambers. Let's go to the phones, please.
Please transfer the first caller. We have about five callers.
Okay, very good.
Hi, caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Good afternoon, Chair and Supervisors. This is Jameson Parker, calling on behalf of the Midtown Association. Thank you for allowing me the time to speak to you this evening. Midtown Association is a property-based improvement district that represents over 1,200 properties in the central city. Our mission is to make Midtown the center for cultural creativity and vibrantcy in Sacramento's urban core. I want to start by thanking you and the county chief executive and the staff for your commitment to bringing forward this meaningful agreement between the city and the county, outlining their roles and responsibilities to really address this homelessness crisis. It's clear that a coordinated and comprehensive approach to addressing homelessness in our region is desperately needed, a plan that ensures the accountability of every agency and serving our most vulnerable population. The binding partnership agreement is a great step in developing that system that's rooted in addressing the underlying causes of homelessness. I want to call out a few fundamental items in the agreement that I believe are foundational to the long-term success of our region. The collaborative protocol, by establishing clear standards that each agency is bound to in this agreement begins to address the accountability needed. The outreach and engagement team. Midtown Association has seen some great preliminary success in working directly with the Department and Community Response and Hope Cooperative in providing outreach in the district, in our district for over six months, connecting over 28 individuals so far in shelter and services. If there was additional support from clinicians at the county of Sacramento, we are certain that number will be even greater. And finally, the shelter capacity and permanent affordable housing. By mandating that at least another 200 beds be identified and delivered in the next 12 months, paired with a focused effort to deliver more affordable housing, will keep the pipeline open and moving. This agreement is by no means addresses every issue which contribute to homelessness, but it provides a very important framework to help connect the people to services and treatment more quickly and more efficiently. We ask that you move this support agreement forward for execution, and thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Jameson. Next caller.
Next caller, please.
Hi, caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes. Good evening, Chair Natolli, County Supervisors, County Executives, and County Staff. Liz Laran Williams calling in on behalf of the Downtown Sacramento Partnership and the 66 blocks we represent in the urban core. The Downtown Partnership applauds the collaborative commitment of the city and county in putting forth a coordinated strategy to address the unhoused crisis. Critical to this strategy is the need for increased services that include outreach teams, shelter capacity, and permanent affordable housing to ensure individuals are being met through a holistic and person-centered approach. As part of the Central Business District, Downtown Partnership recognizes the importance of an urban service center and supports the joint effort to open and maintain a core wellness center that can provide integrated resources to those within the heart of our city. The agreement between city and county leadership is a step towards improving the lives of every Sacramentoan, and I appreciate the work being put forward to outline roles, responsibilities, and provisions of accountability. The Downtown Partnership stands ready to work in concert with the city and county and looks forward to the implementation of the agreement before you today. Thank you for your leadership and the opportunity to comment.
Thank you, caller. Next caller.
Next caller. Next caller, please. Hi, caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Sure. Hi, Board and Staff, Public. My name is Nikki Jones. I am obviously somewhat appalled that the presentation of Ann Edwards today and that it didn't in any way mention the way that this partnership agreement is particularly situated to implement Measure O in the city district. I'm not sure why y'all thought it was appropriate to leave that out, but it's simply, it's simply not appropriate. It's disingenuous. It breaks the trust of whatever type, you know, you can talk about Phil branding in the community, but the fact of the matter is, the county of Sacramento brand is broken. And this is, this is actually an example of how it's about to be further broken, because when you throw your name down on something so awful as Measure O, something as the reimplementation of criminal penalties, which, y'all, I know y'all sometimes try to talk about how criminal penalties fall flat to you with criminalization, but it's simply what it is. When cops come up to you and say, you get criminal penalties, or you get displaced, or both, that's criminalization. And I'm not sure how else to explain it, but that's what Measure O is about, and that's what this city-county partnership is about. Unfortunately, community members, people like folks from SAC Act, people like folks from SAC Regional Coalition, people like the organization I'm with, Sacramento Homeless Organization Committee, people have been asking for a regional comprehensive plan to address homelessness for decades, and unfortunately, what it took was business leaders to say, give us back the power to sweep or else, and here's how you do it. Make this regional plan, and then you get the power back to sweep. And all of a sudden, y'all jump into action, and, and I can't believe that you can't see that this feels disingenuous to people who have been watching, and people who have been engaged in giving the services, literally, service providers, you know, who are doing the work every day, can see that their, their work is just being laundry listed in this agreement in order to allow for criminalization, and they are burnt by it. You are burning out your workforce, you are burning out the community organizations that build trust, and you are certainly burning out the trust you have with the community because you're creating this agreement, this partnership. You're not even saying, Ann, I'm so confused. Why won't you even say that this is about passing Measure O? Dawn, somebody, please bring up, somebody, please say out loud to the public, so it's a real public hearing, that getting this forward is about being able to enact Measure O in the city. And I really, I really need some type of, I mean, please, somebody say something about it, because this has been, like, we have asked for this for years. We need these agreements outlined about whose role is what. We absolutely need that as a community, and the fact that you could only do it under this impetus, this motivation to enact criminalization, is embarrassing. It's morally, it creates moral indignation in the community, and it also is, quite frankly, going to find face for, like, legal challenge, because Measure O displaces protections under Boise, and I think y'all know that, but like, you know, four or more people, you know, you don't even get an offer of shelter. And that's what, y'all, if you vote to enact this partnership agreement, partnership agreement tonight, what you're voting to enact is Measure O, and you need to understand that. This isn't just about the fancy work you want to do together, which we applaud. It's about enforcing Measure O.
Thank you, Nikki.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, you bet. Thank you. Okay. Supervisor Kennedy, bye.
Yeah, I just want to be really, really clear here, and, and say that I'm appalled at some of the comments that are being... of the comments that are being made. This board did not vote on Measure O. This board did not put Measure O on the ballot. This vote, this board has never weighed in on Measure O. It's a city measure. If there's any tie-in, it's because the city decided to tie the partnership agreement to the measure. That was not this board, and, you know, there's a huge disconnect here that we're hearing. What we've done here is, we are working with one-third of our population in the county and 67% of the unhoused population. How that can be seen as anything but a step in the right direction is astonishing to me, and I just think that we've missed the message here. And so, if I'm a little upset about it, it's because a lot of time and effort and very hard work went into this agreement, and it is for the betterment of the people who are unhoused in our community, but to tie this board to Measure O is simply incorrect. It's just wrong. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Supervisor Kennedy. Supervisor Desmond?
And I'm glad Supervisor Kennedy went first, because I know we should not respond to public comment, but I too, I take such issue with these calls because this is the county. This is not the city. This effort to forge a partnership agreement was being done before Measure O was even contemplated. That was not my motivation. I know that was not Supervisor Kennedy's motivation. Our motivation was to create better coordination and help people. And just the fact that certain groups, I probably shouldn't say, certain groups and individuals, because of ideology, are so blinded, they can't even for 10 seconds celebrate something that is a good step. There's a hell of a lot more work to do. Every member on this dais knows that. But for a moment, can you just step back and applaud an effort that is going to make a difference and improve people's lives?
Okay, thank you, Supervisor Desmond. Okay, next caller.
Yeah, okay, next caller. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Hi, Shelley Williams, District 1. And yeah, I just really want to reject the entire premise that brought us here today. This partnership is something that people have been calling for for many years. You all know that, we all know that, because it's been clear for some time that we're in this rapidly accelerating humanitarian crisis, and it requires a concerted effort to address. But everyone sitting on this dais today and everyone sitting at city council as we speak has known that this was required for many years. And the thing that is finally bringing everyone together is this deceptive campaign that even the mayor said in no uncertain terms was brought forth in a grotesquely undemocratic manner, and I will not remind everyone of the words he used, but I think we all know and we remember. So, the bottom line is that Measure O, also known as the Emergency Shelter and Enforcement Act, was a very well-funded effort by the most powerful people in Sacramento with zero input by those who would be impacted or those who work with those who are impacted. And it was all designed to explore how to write legislation with the right loopholes that would allow approximately 10,000 Sacramentoans' constitutional rights to be subverted in order to criminalize their existence. That is what brought us all here today to talk about this partnership. So, don't get that twisted. This crisis is not about behavioral health. It's housing. Housing is the problem. Housing is the issue that needs to be addressed. But if we did entertain that narrative for a moment, like, if behavioral health issues are significant enough right now to have doubled homelessness in the last couple of years, what does that mean? What is the disconnect there? What happened? What happened? Is it housing or is it behavioral health? Has behavioral health literally gotten so bad in a few years that it's doubled homelessness in Sacramento? And what does that mean? So, I don't think the answer to that is adding a few more temporary beds. I think it's been claimed in this meeting that these are supposed to be temporary. We know there's no housing, so you can't actually say that. If you're saying it's temporary, then you know that you're cycling people right back out into the street again. And that is not the answer to even the narrative that it's about behavioral health. That doesn't even address that, much less the housing crisis. So, you know, I don't know. I echo the demands of people who are saying, you know, "We need more impacted voices at the table. They should have been there from the beginning. They weren't there on purpose, and they're not going to be there."
Goodbye.
And even if they are, it will be symbolic. So, I personally think we should reject this agreement altogether. I know that you all did not vote for Measure O, and I recognize all of that. So, I think you all have the ability to reject this agreement that, you know, validates this unconstitutional, cruel, horrible policy that, like, shouldn't be validated. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, caller. Thanks for your comments. Okay, next caller.
Okay, we'll go to the next caller, and that was the department head Zoom. It ended. I think everyone is out of it.
Oh, okay. All right, we were saying goodbye before her time was up.
No, no, no. It was the Zoom for the department heads.
Okay, very good. Thanks.
Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Hi, thank you. My name is Claire. I live in Supervisors District. I really appreciate what both Supervisor Desmond and Supervisor Kennedy said about the relationship between the county and Measure O, because you're both right. The measure is city business, which is why I think that you should refuse to facilitate Measure O. You should not pass this agreement if the housing that is specified in Measure O is all of a sudden going to be housing and resources that the county has to expend. I also think that it sends a really scary message that the county and the city can only work together when the outcome is criminalizing unhoused people. I know that you have the capability to work together for more prevention and actual resources as opposed to just criminalizing people. The last couple of things I wanted to say was just talking about the current state of how unhoused people exist in Sacramento County. Right now, there are not enough places that are affordable or free for people to be, full stop. And so, if you agree to this agreement with the city, you're going to be participating in criminalization of people that is going to create, effectively, if this criminalization happens, the current system for how we support unhoused people will just become a machine that exacerbates homeless people's conditions, because folks are going to cycle in and out of services, in and out of these motels. And we have no, it's my understanding, we don't have any understanding of how many, what the, like, mean time of service is for unhoused people in a motel, for example. We don't know the long-term outcomes of whether or not your services are getting people into housing and ending homelessness or not. And I think it's irresponsible to work in partnership with the city on something that will just create a carousel of desperate people coming through services and going through our jails that are already over-impacted. It's extremely irresponsible, and you should not do it. So, that's what I have to say. And if the creation of housing outlined in this agreement is just saying, "Oh, wait, we don't have the motels, but now we do, so we just added another 200 or X amount of shelter," that's not exactly enacting what the voters wanted in good faith, A, but B, there's just no way that you're not going to end up with the same artificial scarcity that just creates this, like, carousel of further suffering, because you're adding carceral elements to these people's lives that are already extremely desperate. So, I urge you not to agree to this county-city agreement. You're right, it shouldn't be on you to help the city enforce their ballot measure. And I want to see the county and city work together. Don't get me wrong, but they shouldn't be working together to criminalize homeless people.
Thank you. Thank you, Claire. Okay, next speaker. Caller.
Do we have any more callers? The queue is showing empty, but I'm not sure if the agent has someone on hold. Yeah, this must be the last caller. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
My name is Tanda Blue Bear. I am the founder of Women with Boes, and I was just really concerned at what's going on. I would like to help and offer a solution which is sustainable living as a step-up program. We have an initiative, we have a pitch deck, and we're ready to go. We need community support, we need county support, and we need the city's support. I've been watching for a long time the homeless crisis in America, and here's what I see. I see a lot of money being spent on temporary solutions that obviously do not work. We are prepared to present a solution that will work, not only for Sacramento or Sacramento County, but all of California, and we hope it sweeps the nation. We have been out to Camp Resolution, the wonderful community, beautiful people, and they want to work this project. We need to start putting in place a program that allows those that want to do the work, that want to reclaim their lives back, to do so. You guys need support from indigenous people. We have long-term solutions. I would love you guys to get ahold of me at womenwithboes.org, please. We have a pitch deck ready, we have an entire plan, and you will see that this will work. We cannot waste time and money on temporary solutions that don't work. We just saw a bunch of tiny houses that are supposedly going for the homeless peoples that look a lot like a concentration camp. That alone is abuse. That alone is setting people up to commit crime. When we talk about our sustainability project, it has to do with getting someone back up on their feet financially stable, financially sustainable, and independent.
Okay, thank you, caller.
I would like to be able to present this to you, and we've already talked to a city council member who also thinks this is a very innovative, very brand-new concept to addressing homelessness in California.
Okay, maybe you can submit that in writing to us, or certainly you're welcome to come down anytime and speak off agenda at our meeting, but certainly you can share that with us. So, we thank you for sharing your comments and your project description here today. Thanks.
Yes, because we want to work with you guys to find a solution that works all the way around the table. It'll work for the city, it'll work for you, it'll work for the unhoused, small businesses, big businesses, and everybody around the table. So, thank you.
We're looking for a miracle. Okay.
There you go. Hey, let's talk.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other callers? Okay, one more caller, please.
Please transfer the caller. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Hi, Mr. Chairman, members. Josh Paney. Congratulations on this movement of collaboration and coordination. I've been listening into your meeting. Just had one question on the number of psych beds that would be developed under this plan. The county, as many of you know, spends about $1 million a day on mental health services, $383 million last year, and wanted to hear from you or the staff on the number of psych beds, because that is a deficiency in the overall problem on our streets for these poor souls who live on our sidewalks. We need inpatient care. Right now, it looks like we have a lot of outpatient care, and it looks like you're continuing to foster that concept, and I think we have to focus on inpatient care. So, I appreciate all that you've done and look forward to helping any way we can. So, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and members.
Thank you, Josh, for calling in for your comments, question.
Yeah, thank you.
We'll try to get an answer in just a moment.
Hey, and that concludes your public comments.
All right, I'm going to close the public hearing then, and I'll bring you back. Let's take the last caller's question, because there's a lot of behavioral health embedded in the partnership agreement, but we're probably going to have more conversation about this tomorrow, so might as well get some of the information out there, if you can, in brief anyway. Uh, Sharon, Ann, please.
Yeah, happy to. So, as Ann indicated, the partnership agreement is just really one aspect of multiple efforts that are underway, and as we've presented to you before with the RAND study, did identify that we don't need any more psychiatric acute beds, but we do need more subacute beds. And so, we are starting the process of building a 64-bed subacute facility. We received $24 million from the state to do so, and we are looking to build out the other parts of our continuum that are inpatient, and this includes mental health rehab centers. It will include sober living facilities. It will include some other types of beds to build out our continuum. The board's made some significant investments, but we're continuing to look for grant funds for that, and it's on our radar. So, thank you.
Siobhan, it might be helpful, not for the immediate moment here, but to maybe have a compilation, so we get an idea of what, either through initiatives that we've, you know, given the green light to and/or things that are already in the pipeline, because I think it's a relevant question, certainly goes back to those folks who would need a higher level of care, and again, I know we're going to hear about this tomorrow, so.
We're happy to put it together and post it on our website as well. Thanks.
And share with board members, if you could.
Will do.
Okay, all right. Let me bring it back to the board then. Before I entertain a motion, just wanted to thank colleagues to my right here for all their work, the hours devoted to working with our colleagues in the city and certainly in the framework in which, you know, we were working on this partnership. Thank Ann, and Siobhan, and Eric, and all the folks who were involved at the county level. And would just note that some of the concerns that we hear as relates to the city measure and how this complements that, I guess, in a way that triggers concerns about criminalization of homelessness, but that was, again, a city measure that went before the city. We certainly have an obligation to provide behavioral health services, and I think what the partnership, at least in my view, does is it memorializes, not just from a standpoint of some progress towards housing, but also the work that we're going to undertake, some of which we're already doing, but also entertain over time in, you know, outreach into significant segment of the homeless population that is residing in the city of Sacramento. So, again, I think that, you know, like any other agreement, it's not perfect, but it's been, you know, it's a result of a lot of hard work, and I think is a step certainly in the right direction as relates to memorializing what obligations the city and the county have as it relates to housing, sheltering, behavioral health, and other important social services. And again, I trust this is going to be, not just the reports back every six months, but over time will be an evolving relationship, hopefully in a positive vein, in that we're able to help some of the unhoused and unsheltered, but also help people with their issues. And granted, housing costs and the skyrocketing rents and so forth make it very difficult for folks alongside, obviously, with some of the other issues that people are, you know, coping with in their lives. But again, I intend to support the partnership agreement here today. So, with that, I'll turn to my colleagues. Got a motion?
Well, with that, I'll move support of the partnership agreement.
Second. Okay, so we have a motion, a second, to approve the agreement as outlined in the recommendation. Please vote.
Anonymous vote.
Okay, all right. Thank you. So, bring it back to board members. Let me ask any county.
We have one more item I need to have you guys drop, item 66.
Okay.
Please.
The Climate Action Plan will be coming down.
Yeah, adoption of the countywide climate action plan. If we could drop this item.
I'll move.
Okay, just move a second to drop that item. It's anticipated it'll come back first quarter, first quarter of 2023, I think. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, I know there's some urgency around that matter, too.
It better.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, was that Mr. Desmond or Mr. Kennedy who seconded? Thank you.
All right, so we have a motion, a second, to drop item 66, and bring it back at a date soon after the first of the year. Please vote.
The unanimous vote.
Okay, all right. Let me go to county exec comments. Ann?
Again, I just want to thank Supervisors Kennedy and Desmond and all of you for supporting the partnership agreement. I agree, is, for us, it's not related to Measure O. We've been working on this for a couple of years, actually. And, and I think it's going to make a difference, and so I thank you.
Next, Ann. Okay, board members, any comments? No Germans today? All right. Oh, I'm sorry, Supervisor Desmond, go ahead.
I'll do it very quick. I, and it's for, for Siobhan, Ethan Dyson. It's all, I think, a spreadsheet with some of the, the numbers for the weather respite. And I just want to say, you know, obviously, there's a huge need out there in the community. Those are unsheltered neighbors in our communities. But we're doing much better than we've done in years past based on this. And I know it's, it's an inherent challenge, especially in the county where we have, you know, people are, you know, are so spread out in some of these encampments. But can you continue doing what you're doing and continue to look for other opportunities to get people out of the inclement weather and into shelter? And just appreciate you keeping us informed about your efforts.
Okay, thank you. Any other member? All right. If not, then that brings us to the close of business today. We will be back in session, beginning with a closed session tomorrow morning at 10:00. We will reconvene for our Wednesday meeting at 11:00 a.m. and then proceed throughout the, a better course of the day. And we'll certainly see folks, some of the folks we had today and many others back. So, with that, we will adjourn.